Lead us in our invocation and then after that Commissioner Flag will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we humbly come before you this morning, not because we are in a place of ordained government, but Father, because we are in a place, a city and a county that has seen a tremendous display of the power of your nature. And Father, we regret and we pray for the family that lost a loved one in the recent storm, but Father, as you have told us in your word, all things work together for good to them that love the Lord. And so, Father, I do thank you for every opportunity that was taken for people of this city and people of this county and people of this state to show their compassion and to show their love for people that were hurt in the storm, sustained damage to their homes and to their businesses. Father, it gave us a chance to show others the love you have placed in our heart. So, Father, we ask that you guide this county and these people as we restore, rebuild, recover, and we go on from here. And Father, I ask that you bless the time in this room this morning. You have ordained the government in this place. While we are in your presence, may we know we're in your presence and may we show our concern for what is done here to reflect where we live, where we work, where we are, and where we want others to come. So, Father, we very humbly again thank you for all of your blessings that you've bestowed upon us, as undeserving as we are, but Father, we ask and we say all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Citizens, please join us in sacred salute to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Phillips and Commissioner Flag. I'm glad to see this many people in the room this morning after our rather busy weekend, shall we say. I'm going to detour from the agenda a little bit this morning. We'll approve the minutes of the September 27th or disapprove, whatever we do, we'll have action on them. And we'll do the recognition for our employee of the quarter and then I'm going to have a couple of reports from our EOC. Quinn Romey, raise your hand. I think I saw you in the room earlier. If you could give us just an update in a moment along with Press Tompkins from our Public Works Department, it would be appreciated. And I want to do it in front of the meeting instead of the back end in case somebody's viewing on TV that needs this information. All right, Commissioners, in front of you, the September 27th regular meeting minutes. What's your pleasure?
A motion.
Second? Got a motion, a second. All in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign it carries. Thank you. All right, next we'll go to Mr. Leary.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Lori Parker to come forward and join the chairman at the podium.
Lori.
That would be you. And Ms. Allen, would you like to come up as well?
Yeah, you all have chips.
Lori is a senior human resources specialist with the Human Resources Department. Lori is a veteran county employee, having been employed with the county over 25 years. Lori is familiar to all employees in the county as all of our employees are processed through Human Resources and everyone at one time or another comes in contact with Ms. Parker. Lori has been recognized as our employee of the quarter by a committee appointed by the county administrator, a committee of her peers who selected her from among nominations submitted by her peers, and she is being recognized for the excellence of her performance in her job. So, Lori, we congratulate you.
I do. Lori is a very shy, quiet person. Actually, Lori's been with Putnam County for 27 years. Last month was her anniversary, believe it or not. I think she was like five when she started working here, back when we didn't have labor laws about that, way back. But Lori is invaluable to Human Resources and she's also a great resource for other things. I rely on her. She knows Putnam County, born and raised and been here a long time. And her first thing she said, she was so glad that she actually won this award because she sustained some hurricane damage and this award will come in handy for her. So, I'm happy to be able to bestow this great honor on her. We only have four every year. So, Lori, congratulations and thank you for all you do. It is appreciated.
Let's get a cutback, ma'am. I'd like to have a sassaian most opinionated employee. She would win it. Let's get this cutback moment here. Speech.
Speech, Lori.
Okay, we're ready, Scott.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lori.
I just want to say thank you to everybody. I enjoy working with all of you and I hope to continue this service to you. And you have really good employees in the county and I'm glad you recognize it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That's the kindest thing you ever said. Very nice. Okay, we have our friends, Mr. Bill Henderson. Wait, wait, wait. What's that?
Yeah, you're going to go, Quinn.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have somebody between you, Quinn, and Heather. We have our friends from FDOT up. Are you guys ready? Come on up.
Yeah, we kind of wanted to hear how y'all did the storm.
How'd you do? That's the question.
We did Columbia County, we did fine. I know we were in Nassau County yesterday and they appeared to do fairly well, but St. John's and Duval, I think they had a little bit of problems there. But all in all, I think the District Two did very well. We had a good response team and they did a good, really good job.
That's good news. Other than A-1A, we'll be a while on that one.
Oh, that's down in Flagler County. That's District Five though, so we don't, as Deland has to worry about that one.
Well, you build a road on a sand dune.
Oh, yeah. But anyway, my name is Bill Henderson. I'm with the Florida Department of Transportation. We try to come to the commission a couple of times a year, just kind of give you a touch base with y'all and what's going on. And Barney's with me. Barney Bennett works out at Lake City Office with me as well. Just a couple of things I want to touch on. First of all, on the solicitations, when I was here back in May, we talked about having an online application process.
Right.
Well, unfortunately, that's not here yet. We're real close to it, but this cycle, we're going to do it the old fashioned way with letters, and I think the letters have gone out. And just as a note, the transportation alternatives solicitation, those priorities are due December 9th. The Scrap, SCOP, SIGP trip projects are due December 30th. And the safety routes to school are also due December 30th to our safety office. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the work program. As you know, every year we present the work program. We have public meetings. We have one in Lake City. We used to have one in Live Oak and Jacksonville. We're going to do it a little different this year. It's going to be a web-based. And I've got the website shown here as D2WorkProgramPublicHearing.com. If you go to that website, you can look at the work program. It's not quite up yet, but it's going to be going and we'll be getting some notice on that. But we're going to be doing a web-based, so you can put your comments directly on that website about the work program. They've done this in other districts very successfully and we're going to do it here. However, if you do want to talk to somebody face to face about the work program, we will be in Lake City on November 8th from 4:00 to 6:00 to specifically talk about the work program and we will be in Jacksonville on November 10th from 4:00 to 6:00. So, if anybody wants to talk personally about the work, we'll have people available. However, we're doing this web-based and, you know, put your comments right on the website. One other thing, we have the local program workshop. We had two of them. We had one in Live Oak Tuesday and had a very good attendance. And then we had one scheduled in Palatka at the Water Management District for Thursday. We canceled that because of the hurricane. That is now being rescheduled for December 5th, which is a Monday, at 9:00 at the Water Management District here in Palatka. So, I didn't attend. I know Barney went. It was very well attended. And before I finish on the tentative work program that Barney, I just wanted to, I was looking at you, there's a lot going, we got a lot going on in Putnam County, so I want to touch on a couple of things real quick. The State Road 20, that's still onboard from Interlaken to Hawthorne to be constructed in 2019, about $80 million project. We are in the middle of buying the right of way. That seems to be going pretty good, so we're going to see that happen. Of course, US 17 from San Mateo down to the bridge is well under construction. That next piece that includes the bridge, if you look on it, we got it scheduled in 2022. However, that's on our advanced production list and there's a chance that may get moved in. But it is funny, it will happen in 2022, but that next piece, if we can, we've pretty much got it ready to go. If we can get some money early, it might go early. And a couple of other things I want to point out, we do have some PD&amp;E studies we talked about in May that are coming up in 18. We're going to be looking at continuing the four lane on 17 from Satsuma down to Panoma Park. We'll be looking at a study there. And also on 100 from where the four lane ends at the airport up to State Road 26. And those studies will be beginning in 18. And the last thing I just want to touch on is the roundabout. I mentioned that back in May. We haven't really got going on that, but they still want to put a roundabout there and once we get some more details, we'll be touching back. We'll be having some public meetings and all that good stuff on that one. And that is really all I have.
Okay. Questions, Commissioners? I'll, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, I'm so happy about Highway 20 and we have worked on that for a long time, you and I have. I think back to 1999 when Huey Hawkins was the secretary. Bill, the only thing, if you could, and we talk about this all the time, Interlaken West, if we can, that would be the ideal starting point, is to move that road, get it out through the town of Interlaken, and then we're wide open out there. So, you know.
Well, right now, the letting, they're going to do it all pretty much at the same time. It's from, we're going to do the little piece in Alachua County this year.
Right.
And then in 2018, from that point up to Interlaken, all going to go at the same time, is what the plan is now.
Good. We're so excited about that. Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Flag?
Yes, sir. Breathe through.
One last thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, it was my fault. On this list right here, it doesn't include our Scrap and SCOP programs. That's correct? Because I think that's, we're dealing with that internally at.
I'm going to.
Did you see that, Mr. Tomp? Yeah, I think we're dealing with that on our level, not yours, so don't worry. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Flag?
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to reiterate our appreciation for District Two and how, you know, you all working with us so harmoniously and that has been the case all along. Our Public Works Director is on top of the priorities for us and we will certainly be complying and ahead of time for the applications. And we appreciate even the 216 project where Georgia Pacific Road is. Thank you for what you're doing.
Okay. That's right. Okay. Commissioner Harris, good morning.
Good morning. And I'll just amen what Reverend Flag just said.
Mr. Bennett, I'd like to ask, if I could, any update on the trail gaps? Have we made any progress there? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but it's most important to a lot of folks here in this community.
Actually, it's interesting you bring that up. 15 minutes ago, we were given the word that the project that from the Water Management District, where the trail ends now up to the St. John's River Water Management District, was approved for funding for construction in 2017 for $5 million. So, that includes the trail, 300-foot bridge.
Oh, you guys are being guests this morning. This is great.
Now, I think the governor's office really wanted to announce that, so y'all didn't hear it from us.
Okay. Well, that's good news for our economy. We've got quite a few events that are happening on that portion of the trail now, the Iron Man, and there are many people anticipating the completion of it so the rest, you know, our sea loop to rail trail can hook up and it's a little economic engine for Palatka and Putnam County and very important to us and we appreciate you. Barney, I know you've been on the forefront of that and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I really do appreciate it. Okay, anything else from, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate the.
You know where we are if you never need us for anything.
Yes, sir. Why, know where you're at.
Thank you.
All right, very good news there, Commissioners.
Yes.
Put this up. Okay, next, I'd like to call up, let's go ahead with Quinn. Do you want to go first? If we could, then we'll have Press and then Linda Myers and then public comment for quite a few people.
That was good information, but I'm sorry, I'm not bearing good information. As y'all know, we.
Quinn, could you introduce the fellow on your right?
This is Jerry. He's with the Red Cross. He's our regional, I'll let him give you his title because, but he's going to talk about some of the things that Red Cross have been doing and are doing and will continue to do to help our citizens. We've, they've been a very good partner in the fact of having IRVs, those emergency response vehicles out there with hot meals. We initially, the day they arrived, they served, they had 3,000 meals, comfort kits for, you know, cleaning and things like that, and then the water kits with brooms and mops and all, and they've been going door to door to door. So, I want to steal this thunder, but I'll let him in just a minute talk about that.
All needed. Thank you, Jerry.
One of the business things I'm recommending is we extend our declaration so, of emergency. So, I have that paperwork here before us, too. One of our, y'all have all been in the EOC throughout this event. We're getting some early raw data in as far as damage assessment. We've got two of the damage assessment teams on boats this morning heading to some other areas that we were not able to get to by land to get those numbers, but we're going to see a significant high number. It's going to be staggering, I'm afraid. So, y'all, I know y'all have been out and, you know, giving us pictures, things like that, so it's going to be, we've taken a significant hit. We're talking tens of millions, not anything less. We're working with FEMA. We've got FEMA on the ground doing damage assessment. We've got all of those, everything's in the process and I'm hoping by the end of the week, we've got good news, so.
That's good.
But one thing I do want to highlight, and I will pass these out.
Want you to, you want me to do that for you? Would you like me to do it? Yeah.
Yeah, we can pass it down.
Yeah, we can do that.
If you would, Larry, that'd be great, just come on down the line with everything.
I want to talk about one of our success stories, and I'm going to put him on the spot. I know he's here for something else, but Mr. Bush, if you would come up, he's, he didn't know I was going to do this, but our power companies have been going above and beyond, in some measures heroic, getting the power back on. If you remember the 2004 timeline or storm, we had power outages for weeks and weeks and weeks. And I'll let, certainly let Jim jump in anytime here, but I'm happy to report, we've got less than 200 this morning without power. They know those. We started it.
Folks, I'll introduce Jim. Jim Bush is with Florida Power and Light and for a lot of people in this room, you don't need an introduction, but go ahead, sir.
Well, no, I just, I'm not prepared and really tired, by the way. So, we've been working throughout, I guess, 24 hours a day since Thursday. Been very aggressive in our response. We brought crews. This was the biggest, from what I'm told, the biggest deployment of utility workforce that's ever been deployed for any natural disaster pre-storm. So, as you know, our entire service territory in the East Coast was impacted and, you know, we've aggressively been collapsing resources into the heavier damaged pocket areas, which include Putnam County. So, as Quinn mentioned, I believe the count I just saw was 130 that are still out today. It's still working very hard to make sure that we're there to restore them. We have an army out that's deploying and we're committed to continue working until every customer is restored. And also like to thank the county for their assistance, the EOC, the, you know, our logistics team, the ability to use the staging site, things like that. We could not do this without the assistance that we have in the county.
Jim, we appreciate you being in the EOC this past weekend and Putnam County is quite proud to be the staging area, using our fairgrounds. These linemen are heroes. I put them right there with the Marine Corps.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I do, too. I do, too.
They're just, I can't believe what they go out in just to get us power back to our homes and it's truly amazing and we thank you so much for it.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Quinn.
Jim's kind of being modest. I want to give you an example of something they did to go above and beyond. As you know, when trees go down, power lines go with them. We put together what I called saw teams, fire departments with chainsaws. We got forestry tractors in there, public works, we had that, but we can't touch those with the power lines wrapped up because we don't know what's going on. Well, Florida Power and Light sent us three trouble crews attached to the EOC and we assigned them to those crews so we could move through those areas and get the roads back open. So, 90% of our roads were back open, you know, late Saturday and into Sunday, so we still are having a few areas here and there, but without that commitment, we'd still be talking about trees today, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Bush.
Thank you.
Quinn, I know the EOC is now at Level Two. That's our Emergency Operating Center, and that's normal business hours, correct?
No, sir.
If someone needs to call.
The Citizen Information Center is 24 hours. The EOC, the core folks are eight to eight. Those are our various functions. We've got others that are there much longer and I'll let the Red Cross talk about their operations and things like that. I've got some maps here. I know y'all, y'all have seen these. I'm going to leave them for the public. These are, this data is for the surge along the river. This data came from the hurricane center, from the scientists down there. They gave it to us early on and our GIS put it on these maps to come up with where we could potentially see water. And in this water, the areas that you see that have color, they shouldn't have color there, other than where the normal blue is for the river. So, I'll leave these here and everybody can go through them and look. I flew the area Saturday and those maps are very accurate. I don't know how high from the air, you know, obviously that it was, but I can tell you, we have water in those areas. So, and as I said, the numbers of homes and businesses are going to be high, so if you have any specific questions.
Why don't we wait till the end? I want Mr. Jerry to come up from the Red Cross and I know the other Commissioners have some comments and questions. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. And so, I'm Jerry Kendall. And so, our region for the Red Cross is 35 counties from here to Pensacola, and I'm actually the executive director for Pensacola here to help with the elected official liaison. And so, I've given each of you my card. If you need, if you have something pop up and you need, you have a question that needs answered or issue needs resolved, I go figure it out for you right away. So, that's what I'm here to help with. And I'm actually just covering Putman and Clay County. There's a team of us here. So, at Red Cross, of course, we came into action ahead of the storm and moved resources and set up shelters and those are rich shelters. And then as the schools opened back up, we would have host shelters where needed. And we do have many emergency response vehicles feeding. Now, our kitchen's set up in St. John's County and so they're going over there to get the food and bringing it over here. We don't have a kitchen set up here. And so, and, but that's pretty efficient in the way, in the way to cover it. We have a kitchen up north in Duval. We are, besides the feeding, we also do water, ice, cleanup kits, which is to clean your house out, comfort kits, kind of toiletry items, toothbrush and stuff. And if tarps are needed or whatever, we'll be doing that as bulk distribution sites and as, on the IRVs as needed in the affected area. So, we work in the EOC and as the county produces incidents where there is, we go do individual damage assessment. But we can pull their data right into our system to send our team straight out to get the addresses and our system ties with FEMA for the individual assistance, not public assistance, but for that individual assistance, we actually, not just, we just, we work with FEMA for verification, but also we help the client register with FEMA and do those kind of things so that they can get that recovery started. So, that's the kind of things that we're busy doing in this region. We've had the five counties affected and it seems like that St. John's pretty bad and Putman got some significant damage and some of the, when you have the rivers, right, that flooding takes a little bit longer to get there and get damage assessment because of access. So, we're not completely done with our damage assessment, but we're still, that's still in progress.
Well, thank you, sir. And to contact you, we go through the EOC.
So, I left a card.
Right.
That's my cell number.
The public, when I say we.
So, the, okay, so, yeah, so I'm not here to change the process. They go through the EOC, then we have hotlines for the public that's being put out for, to contact Red Cross and register. Once they contact Red Cross, their information's going to be collected and the damage assessment teams are going to have them on their list to go take a look at and take care of. The reason I gave you my contact information is so that if you, if you have concerns that pop up, it doesn't look like something's working just right or a question or how did that work, then I can reach in and go try to figure that out for you.
Mr. Kendall, for your organization and yourself, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Could I ask a question before he goes away?
Commissioner Harris.
Okay. Thank you so much. And I was just wondering, in what cases would a member of the public call you for assistance on your hotline? I mean, if they have a tree down in their backyard, is that a reason to call you?
So, there's, so for a, an event such as this, we would go and do damage assessment for all four categories. Affected means they're affected, whether they lost power, whether they got wet, minor damage, which means it's still livable, major damage or destroyed, because we do, we will do that damage assessment for this type of an event for all those areas. Once they get into our system, we will actually collate that data and be able to link our database with FEMA's.
Okay. And what is that number?
I will get it. I mean, I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I have it, so I'll get to you.
Very good.
So, in the meantime, they could call the EOC?
Yes, we're catalog, collecting all of those numbers and they're representative in the EOC. It's going a multitude of different ways and, but everybody's getting the data and we're sharing. Likewise, the data that they see out in the field, you know, we have access to say, hey, we need to do this or that or the other to make sure we're collecting the numbers and the people and the individuals. But to go to answer your question about a tree on private property, that's an issue that we have every storm. We cannot go on private property to do any kind of work on a day-to-day basis nor during a storm. What we've got to do is have everybody move their debris to the edge of the road. I'll let Larry talk about debris, Larry Gass. We've got those folks, the debris teams, collection crews, they're ready to go and he's got the schedule to come pick it up. But on private property, FEMA will not reimburse us for that type of activity. So, they will, when we get to the point of the declaration, we'll have a whole lot more information about the individual assistance and things like that, but private property is an issue, so what we can and can't do.
So, they need to find a private contractor to, there's some enormous trees down. I mean, it's not something a homeowner can just go out and do.
Right.
So, but they need to get it off of their property and out by the side of the road.
Correct.
Not in the road, but in the extra strip of right of way.
Not just to the side of the road, to a county right of way.
Right.
Because if they live on a private road, we're not, the contractor, the debris removal contractor is not going down private roads. So, they need to get it to a county right of way.
Right. I was hoping we could explain that to people and let them know. Would the cities be, they're included in the FEMA and the declaration?
Well, our contractor is going into the municipality, so he is not recognizing jurisdictional boundaries. He's going in there now. He's going in there now. They're going to account for that debris separately. Larry's taking care of that as the contractor comes in, that debris will be accounted for separately, but the contractor is just going, is going into the municipalities as well.
Okay, so right now, because this is being televised, what phone number could people call to go ahead and get registered or get instructions as to who they should call?
We've got to get declared yet. The president has not declared Putnam County for individual assistance. That's where we're at and what we're working on. The FEMA teams are on the way to do their side of our damage assessment, verify our numbers. And as soon as we get that, it'll be the FEMA eight-hundred disaster number. We'll certainly.
Put that in the newspaper and?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be all mass media will have.
Radio, social media.
Everything, certainly.
Good job, Quinn.
But we're working on that piece. Just so you know, the storm has affected from Miami all the way through to Nassau County. We're number four as far as every county in between to get that damage assessment folks here. So we're the fourth one out of the entire state. So we're ahead of the game in that avenue. I'm trying to do everything we can do to paint the picture so that FEMA knows, I can tell you they're already on the ground. We've had FEMA representation in and come through the EOC. They rode out in the storm in our region, so they know what we're dealing with and the local folks that we have availability to have been very, very, very interested in passing up the information. So we're well ahead of the game. It takes time to go through that process and the paperwork.
I got Mr. Flag. Before we do that, Mr. Greenwood, we found Commissioner Palisir. You can call that, Sir Shaw. Commissioner Flag and Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you so much.
I think he found us.
Yeah, he did.
My concern, obviously, is for everyone, but especially our seniors. And many times we, once we do the internet blast and we kind of use modern communication techniques, we feel like, you know what, we've covered it all. And I just think that, you know, the seniors', old-school methods still need to be employed. We need to also protect the most vulnerable of our population because unfortunately, these after-storm events do create, I would say, something in the hearts of people who take advantage of people. And they come from here, there, and everywhere. And so everybody that's approaching these homes need to have proper identification. And we also need a way and means to get contractors who are legitimate, they need to have a certain way of presenting themselves so that we can separate the weak from the tear to minimize any of the individuals who have ulterior motives that's there. And I'm not saying that it's not done, but I do want us to make doubly sure that communication-wise, because we do have some seniors who have hunkered down, they are not listening to the television, the radio, they don't have internet. And so when the individual contacts are made, I certainly pray that we can really take care of them. I visited a ninety-year-old yesterday and, you know, hat on the boots and doing all the work and don't know who to call and all of those kinds of things. So we really need to do that.
To follow up, I appreciate you bringing that up because I did remiss in telling you that I have implemented what I'm calling our community paramedicine. We've got medical folks on the Humvees and they're going to be going door-to-door in all of the impacted areas, not only for looking, see what damage and that kind of thing, but to identify those folks that may have oxygen issues, medicine issues, elderly, all of those. And we're going to keep doing that until all the power's back on and they are getting restored to where they, whatever normalcy we can get them back to. But those, the paramedics are going to be actually looking for any kind of medical issues they may have. If they needed oxygen, then we're going to, they're going to call the in-home medical or the oxygen supplier and set it up for them. So we're working that door-to-door and if we need to expand crews or, you know, we'll certainly do all of those things that we need to do. But that's been happening for the last several days and the crews are going out as we speak.
Thank you. And two other things. One is, I think that there's many people that are miscalculating and underestimating the storm surge. The areas that you're pointing out on that map is very crucial, that some of us feel that the storm is over. To those people, the storm is not over. It's still raging, although we don't have the winds and the things of that nature. And those individuals really need a higher concentration, you know, of assistance and attention that's there. And so, again, we can't thank you all enough for the logistics and how, you know, all of these things are working. And then the other point I wanted to raise is that the tree situation, as long as this ground is saturated, individuals need to be mindful there of the potential of their trees falling. And you can't take anything for granted. And I think that assessment by the homeowners need to be, you know, they need to be vigilant on that as well.
Absolutely. Safety, safety, safety. As the power crews are, you know, re-energizing lines and all of that, there may be a line that, you know, they haven't been able to get to. We've got to make sure that they're watching out for lines, they're watching out for creatures, snakes and all that have come out and/or trees. Trees, falling trees is why we have a fatality, you know, right now. And it's a tragic event that occurred, but we've got to make sure that, you know, as we move forward, we've got, the Department of Health has a massive amount, which is why Mary's not here, she's working in the EOC right now with her group. We've got many, many teams coming in to look at the local health and making sure we're tracking. We don't want any disease outbreaks now from either mosquitoes or water or whatever the case may be.
Don't forget spiders, right there.
Or spiders. So we've already got teams on the ground going into these affected areas to make sure that we are, we know if there's an issue cropping up and we've got surveillance in place so we can see if there's a trend or anything like. I say we, the Health Department and Mary and her crew are doing an outstanding job. We're implementing training with EMS, starting in the morning to help, you know, heighten their awareness to that. So we don't want to go, like you said, let our guard down because we think the sun's shining. We are just getting into this. And also the nor'easter's starting today, so we'll see what that impact has to us.
So I've been playing on my phone and I'm not texting, but I got the eight-hundred number. So the eight-hundred number for Red Cross for Matthew is one-eight-hundred-seven-six-eight-eight-zero-four-eight.
Jerry, thank you.
I do want to say, add one other thing if I can. Our chamber has been working with our businesses. Our main goal besides life safety and those kinds of things was to help get our businesses open, getting power back on, getting roads cleared, and they have been doing a tremendous job. Press with Public Works and his folks have been out there with us, you know, doing the, those moving trees, doing those kinds of things. And I know he's kind of shy, but.
Commissioner Harvey has a question, but while he's delivering his question, I'd like to get Larry Gass, our landfill director, and also Press Tompkins, our public works director, to come. And Quinn, please stay in case we have some questions to give reports after. Larry, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say something real quick. Florida Power and Light, thank you very much for all the hard work that you did. I know Clay Electric was out in my area and they had people up within about twenty-five hours also. And I met with Jim Beeler Saturday night, who said, "My goal is to have everybody power eyes by Sunday evening." And I tell you, what I told people at church, stay off the road, let these power trucks get to where they're going, don't bother them, don't go up there and offer them, they got things they need, maybe give them a glass of water. But I tell you, with the tree trimmers and the power lines, and Quinn, without you, I don't know how we would survive this storm. And I'm going to be honest with you about that. I know you don't want to take that, but your group and everybody else was amazing to me.
It's a team effort.
I know it is.
I cannot take credit for the team, you know, individually, it's a team effort.
I know.
And it's not just emergency service, it's in the entire county and municipalities. The cities have folks in there helping us, you know, answer phones and do all of those sorts of things. We had staff, HR, you know, we had everybody, all hands on deck and a lot of lessons learned. Every time we do this, you know, we always work to get better, so. But I appreciate it, but it's the team, the sheriff's office. One thing I do, and I'm remiss in not even saying it earlier, they were sitting right there and I would say, hey, what about, I don't know, you know, whatever the issue may be. They said, "We got it. It's done." So those kinds of things are, you know.
You know, during the storm, I saw Clay Electric and Florida Power and Light go out during the storm and look at situations when it was safe to do that. It was amazing what was taking place throughout Putnam County. And we spared a couple people in our neighborhood who, just like Commissioner Leibel said, one tree fell and the ground was so saturated that a twenty-foot root ball was going four feet up in the air every time. We, I mean, during the storm, a tree trimmer got up there, climbed a tree, we had it come along, we had it, but we had elderly people, we couldn't get out of the house. And I mean, they would have been smashed. So thank God for that. Mr. Gass, I'm glad you came up and Mr. Chairman, thank you. When we were talking about putting the debris out by the right of way, the questions that I'm getting is, I know that the project starts tomorrow and you and I spoke a little yesterday, but could you elaborate on how long they'll be here and the routes? And my question, another question is, Waste Pro is not going to be picking up any type of normal debris, are they, or is this just going to be the contractor at that point?
The contractor will be picking up storm debris.
Right.
If you have, you know, stuff you pulled out of your garden and it's in the bags and sitting out, Waste Pro will be picking that stuff up, the small amount. Waste Pro is not going to be picking up the storm debris, the big piles of stuff that are out. But if you've got bagged leaves or bagged lawn clippings or stuff like that, Waste Pro will still be pulling those up. Waste Pro will be running, I think it's the West End, which they weren't able to do last Friday because of the storm, they'll be running that this Saturday.
Okay.
To pick up that kind of debris. Because with them picking up debris only once every two weeks, that would be a month before they did that. So Daniel's got his crew coming in Saturday to make that makeup day for last Friday for the yard waste on the West End.
Just yard waste. Garbage pickup will be Friday as normal.
Garbage will be Friday as normal.
Okay, good. Now be patient, public, I'm going to be honest with you. I know people are watching, but be patient because there's two weeks of garbage sitting there and they're going to have a lot to do, double the work that they normally do.
They're going to be putting extra crews on that day because they know it's going to be heavy. The debris contractor is here, the manager is here. We had our monitoring training yesterday. Today, the trucks will be brought in. We will measure to verify the quantity that the trucks will hold. And they will be starting in the south end of the county, which is the, where the major amount of material is down. And then they will be working their way through the county. If we get everything up within thirty days of the incident of the declaration of landfall, we should be able to get close to a hundred percent reimbursement.
Are they going to go back? Are they starting there and then just moving?
They'll start, they'll do what they call their first push.
Okay.
They'll go through, get everything that they can, and then some people will be bringing more stuff out after they've gone through, then they'll come back through a second time and hopefully have everything picked up then. I have extended the hours at the landfill because I know everybody's got jobs they have to take care of. You know, they got to still make money to pay the electric bill to put food on the table. So we're open from eight to six-thirty now. And that way they would have time to come in.
Let me drive home the importance, though. If a person doesn't want to make the trip to that landfill.
All they do is put it out.
This debris contractor, if you're on a county right of way with this debris, that's as far as you got to take it.
That is the best way to do it.
That's right.
The best way to handle it is to put it out on a county right of way or the city right of way, if you're in the city. Place it there and that will be picked up. That is the easiest way to account for it. You've got a contractor that's been recognized by FEMA that knows the regulations that have to be done. There's a lot of ebbs and flow in the regulations that FEMA has. Over the years, it's gotten tighter and tighter and tighter to try to keep people from taking advantage of the federal dollars. Back in two thousand and four, I can remember several instances of things like that happening. People would collect brush and they would stand it in the trailers, bottom down, top up, so it looks like the trailer is completely full when really they, you know, they picked up two houses. Those kinds of things are, that's why we have to monitor the contractor. My entire staff of support personnel at the landfill will be out on the roads or in the towers, monitoring what these people are doing and what they're picking up to make sure they're not doing something that FEMA would determine is not eligible. If FEMA determines we're doing stuff that isn't eligible, they start taking percentages right off the top of everything that we're asking for reimbursement. So we have to be very, very diligent and careful on the way we do this. That's why it is best for them to put it at the curbside and let the contractor pick it up. Then it's all accounted for, all the proper paperwork is there. If they bring it to the landfill and FEMA happens to be there, follows somebody back and finds out they're taking down a perfectly good tree, that's not storm debris.
Let's get it right. We want that hundred percent reimbursement.
We want that hundred percent back because we can't afford to have to pay.
We can't afford not to. That's right. Mr. Gass, Commissioner Harris has a question.
Okay. When we're talking about storm debris in the right, put it in the right of way on the side of the road, are you talking about not just trees and brush and moss and all that, but you're talking about pieces of roof and what we call construction debris, pieces of wood, porch swings, whatever's damaged?
The first thing that they'll be doing is picking up the brush. That's the, you know, people got to be able to get out of their driveways, those kinds of things. They will make another round strictly for construction demolition debris. Because when they, when you pick up brush, there can be no construction demolition debris in the loads per FEMA regulations. Now, when they pick up construction demolition debris, since they're picking it up with a clamshell, picking it up, putting it in, they're allowed five percent vegetative matter because you're going to pick up some stuff when you're picking that up. But those two have to be separated.
Okay.
You can't pile your construction demolition debris with your storm vegetative debris because that won't be picked up. If you keep it separated, they'll pick up the brush first, then after everybody in the county has their brush picked up, then they'll come back through for the construction demolition debris.
And my other part of the question is, how are we letting people know this?
We, we've got a whole team of messaging, PO, folks in the EOC, working with Larry and his folks. We're putting it on Facebook, Twitter, any avenue, radio stations, all of that. We're sending out press releases and situation, our actual situation reports to every media outlet. So it'll get out there, plus we have a number of other things that we can, Larry and I can look at, you know, if we have areas that it looks like they're not getting the message, we can do some other things, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Flag.
My concern would be for the.
My concern would be for the citizen who desire to be compliant, but they are not compliant, and the truck passed by. Is there a tagging system, or is there something that will indicate to the person so that they're not calling one of the five as to why they passed me by? How are we dealing with an individual who had volunteer help to come by, and they just did the best they could do, they got it out there? Is there a way for anybody to know that this was not, nobody's playing games with you, and how this can be resolved? Because we will get those calls.
My staff will be following the crews as they go through, and they will be able to identify those areas, they will try to contact those personnel. If necessary, they'll leave the card for them to call our office. We're trying to bring in some retired people, some temp help to answer phones in the office so we can get that, because basically my whole office is gonna be gone. They're gonna be out in the field, looking at everything, watching the contractor. But our people will be there, we will know directly, not relying on the contractor, if there's an issue, and to what that issue is, and we will try to contact that resident. And if we're unable to contact that resident, we'll leave cards, we'll leave a flyer or something at the house for them to contact us, so we can personally explain to them what the issue is. If you just leave a note, you know, your, your storm debris doesn't meet the specifications for collection, you know, what happened, you know? So, we want to try to have that face-to-face with them, so that we, we've got them clear in what they can and cannot do.
Second question, Mr. Chairman. The rules and regulation about the size and the length and all of that, that's out the window for now.
It's out the window.
Thank you, I just wanted to confirm.
These are self-loading trucks, unlike where Waste Pro comes by, these guys gotta pick it up, put it in the, you know, in the hopper of the back of the truck, so it's gotta be small enough to put in. These guys got the clamshells, they're 40 cubic yard generally trucks, that they'll just pick the stuff up, drop it in the truck, they can pack it down, and they can get more stuff in.
It's just as important for the citizens to get that information, because it's a whole lot more work.
We have been, we've been getting numerous calls on that, and it is not, you know, you can't hook a tractor to a, you know, 30-foot tree and bring it out there, and they, you know, they can't pick that up and put it in the truck. But, you know, it doesn't have to be six foot, you can put your 20-foot limbs out there or whatever, with a clamshell, they'll be able to, to break that stuff up as they place it in the vehicle.
Sounds like a great plan, Mr. Gass. I have a couple for you out of Jacksonville, retired, that will come volunteer if they, I didn't know what I was gonna do with them until now, so there we go. Good deal, all right.
Let me add one thing further, and I was just thinking of this, or not thinking of, but what we're also gonna do with the information is, each of those teams that I spoke of earlier will have flyers that says, this is, this is the thing, whether it's our teams, Red Cross folks, the health folks, you know, when they're going door-to-door, they're gonna have flyers to be, help get the word out also.
This segment of storm management is most important, is, you know, there's money on the line, and to get our county back orderly, it's, it's most important.
Well, one of the other issues that we've been having that we need to get the word out is, we've got citizens saying, well, I've got a tree company that took my tree down, I want them to bring it to the landfill at no charge. We cannot do that, that is not reimbursable. If a commercial entity is involved in the removal, we have to charge the entity for...
And it also jeopardizes our FEMA reimbursement.
That's exactly why we have to charge them, because it jeopardizes our FEMA reimbursement.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Tompkins, we're waiting on you. Give us the status report.
It's been a long weekend.
Yes, it has, you look pretty good.
Yeah, and we survived. I do want to thank everybody, the Sheriff's Office, Quinn's Group, EOC, and particularly my staff, Engineering and Public Works, they did a yeoman's job out there, they were out all hours of the day and night. We cleared over 150 roads in the county in little over three days, with the help of the Sheriff's Department. FPNL had crews out telling us that the lines were dead, so we could cut and push and get the roads open. I think that was a heck of a job, to get that many roads cleared in this, and I think right now, we're still doing some that, some of the problem ones that we had to wait for FPNL to clear the lines for us, and we're coming back and doing them, but the majority of the roads, I'm gonna say over 90% of the roads in county are open now. We are doing storm-related work, which is like Larry, we make sure that we're not doing any routine maintenance work, a routine work we normally do, everything we're doing right now is FEMA reimbursable, and we're keeping very close track of that, and make sure we get reimbursed on it. But overall, from the infrastructure, we survived pretty good, we had some minor damages, we did not have any real washouts of roads that we lost, we had done some repair work around some culverts. We did lose one utility, Buena Vista went down, it was flooded, we finally got the power back onto that, we're getting that cleaned up. We lost power at the RO plant, but we did not lose pressure. So, as soon as we got power back up, we made about 30,000 more gallons of water, so we were able to keep all the water, people in service on that. Our utilities came out very well on this. We had some damage to our RO building, wind and rain damage to the roof, and, but, other than that, I think everybody did a very good job, and I'm extremely proud of our road and bridge crews and their attitudes and their can-do, and I didn't hear any grumbling, they, they just went to work, and I can't thank them enough.
That was a reflection on your leadership, Mr. Tompkins, and we appreciate that.
I don't know if it was me, but they, they did a good job, and I just want them to get the credit for it. And like I said, Quinn's Group, they were phenomenal in giving us information to do, the Sheriff's Department, FPNL, everybody, as Quinn said, this was a tremendous team effort on everybody's part, and I can't thank everybody enough.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I could take one other?
Yes, it would, and I would like to call on, so I don't get them a call, Mr. Greenwood?
That's who I was just gonna call.
Yeah, situation report, thank you, I'm sorry.
Alicia was, is the 911, Sheriff's Office 911 manager, she's the captain in charge. She's got, she's got some statistics.
Very good, I didn't see you, ma'am, come on.
She's got some statistics that are just astronomical, the number of calls, the number of things that were going on during that time, and I'd be remiss, these ladies and guys in the 911 center are sitting there taking those calls 24 hours, you know, throughout the storm and all that, and, you know, getting the right people. We were talking, you know, throughout the entire time, and she says, we may need to look at, you know, this, that, or the other, and, you know, it's a great, great partnership and a wealth of knowledge here, so.
And I know the department.
Major?
She's actually got our numbers.
She works for him, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We, what we did was, we, with our help of our 911 vendor, we have already pulled our call stats for the last, for the three days that were included in the storm, and what we did was, we compared those to the same timeframe in October of 2015. And just as an example, our 911 calls increased by 122%. Our calls, our staffing in the communication center is low, lower than normal, so what we did was, basically, we doubled up our shifts, and we had two shifts working, 12-hour shifts around the clock without a day off for three days. They did a fantastic job there, as, as with the rest of the county staff, there was not a lot of complaining, you know, they wanted to be home with their families, but we sheltered them there at the Sheriff's Office, we fed them, and so, things went really well, better I think than in 2004, but we, we just have a great staff of people and things went really well. Our total CAD, the CAD is the call, the computer system we use to actually create dispatch calls, and the, over the three-day period, we had 150% increase from October of 2015, so. So, we processed a lot of calls in that three-day period. We didn't include Thursday in that, these were actually from Friday, and, but Thursday, we were taking a lot of calls from, are the bridges closed, are they gonna close the bridges? You know, we, we took a lot of those storm-related calls for people trying to get prepared on what they needed to do, and are those shelters gonna be open? And a lot of those questions, we just didn't have answers to, and we did the best we could to direct them where they needed to go. But, does he, am I have any specific questions?
Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
You know, I want to thank you, and I tell you, that's the biggest calls I was getting was bridges, and I was texting Quinn, you know, thank God for communications, but the news was reporting bridges, and we only got one bridge. I even had a guy in Crescent City say, I'll just take that other bridge down there by Pomona Park, I said, what other bridge are you talking about? There is no other bridge. You know, I said, you're talking about the railroad trussel, you can't get across that. So, but, you know, that was the calls I was getting, was the bridges, and, you know, and, and I said, no, probably when it gets over 40 miles, but Quinn was right on top of it, and, you know, I just really want to thank you. I mean, this is my first rodeo as far as coming through as an elected official, I've done it on an insurance agent, but never in this part, and amazing, amazing to me what y'all are going through, and, and the men and women that answer the call, that leave their families to protect us, overwhelming, overwhelming for me. Thank you.
Let me add one thing to that point, and I'm glad you brought that up. We had folks staying in the EOC 24 hours and sleeping and rotating, and I know the Sheriff's Office did too, we had those, many of those folks were impacted themselves, and whether it was just power outage or they had damage. We've got, you know, folks that live in, you know, many of the areas that were impacted, and we're working to categorize, you know, make sure we capture those numbers so we can make sure they get the information too on how to get help, but they worked right on through, you know, 24 hours, you know, kept right on going and never wavered, and I'd say, hey, why don't you go home and lay down, if I don't have power, can I stay here, or this or that, so, they, they never even, even mentioned.
The one number the public knows, 911. And that voice of uncertainty, they meet yours, and your department is most important, it's that front line that sets the stage for the rest of the response, and we do appreciate you. I feel like giving her and her department a round of applause.
Certainly not me, it's the people that work with me. We do still have some elevated staffing numbers, we don't, we're not doing double shifts, but just kind of what Quinn alluded to earlier, we know the storm's not over, we're still getting those phone calls, trees falling, people who are just now coming home and finding damage in their homes and things like that, so we're, our call volumes are not as bad as they were earlier in the week, or, you know, over the weekend, but definitely, there's still more than what's normal for us, so.
Like I said, bless your department.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
I just, I wanted to say something. Back when Hurricane Andrew, the first really bad one that we had, and they had speakers of some of the small towns that were just wiped out, and one was the mayor of one of those towns, and she talked about what they did to put everything together when there wasn't much to put together. And the one thing that she said is, they had to locate all their employees and bring them in, and they had to work. She said her biggest regret was, and when, in hindsight, was that they brought the employees in and they worked their hearts out, but they did not take good enough care of the families. That, that's so important that we realize that, and when the main person of the house is taken out to work for the rest of the county, that we look after the families, and I was so glad to hear what you said about you brought the families in, and that's very important. Good.
Commissioner Flag, then Mr. Greenwood.
Let him go.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Greenwood.
As far as the rest of the department, we actually had to activate our communications, our corrections and law enforcement, all, we made it mandatory work, and actually had everybody doubled up shifts all the way through the storm. We came into a unique part at the very beginning, that St. Johns County had to evacuate their jail, which had 580 inmates in it. So, then, them knowing we had a new jail that was hurricane-rated, asked for our assistance. Well, through logistics, they found some other agencies to take those inmates, but they did call us back and say, any new arrests we make through the storm, can we book them into your jail? So, we did help with St. Johns County with bringing in any dual arrests through the storm into our jail, and they were gonna also use flagler counties. But as of today, we're back down to regular manpower, we do have officers still in the EOC, staff in the EOC, and we've got crews on the river today, taking some of the assessment teams to some of the places.
That's good news.
Dunge Creek and places like that, where we can't get to by car. So, that's really where we're at right now, is just, we're back, pretty much back to business as usual, but we do have a few teams out there doing some extra.
Mr. Greenwood, stay right there, I think we've got some questions and comments. Mr. Flag?
Well, Mr. Chairman, hearing everything that I'm hearing, I know that it's going to be crucial that we extend the local state of emergency, and I was just wondering, is there a date associated with us taking that action as it relates to how long of an extension is recommended, or?
I have a proclamation in front of me that takes it out to October 18th, 2016, and it is an action item, and I'll ask my colleagues.
But is that adequate enough time?
Statutorily, we can only do it in seven-day increments, which is, the first one was seven days ago, so we'll, we'll continue on as long as we need to, but this, today is the seventh day.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion on the floor, and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, I shouldn't even have to say that likewise, thank you. What a great team, again, let's give them a round of applause. Very proud.
And I just want to make sure the citizens, the team is together, the team is moving forward, and in early on, while the storm was going on, a lot of folks were, were asking, when you think, you know, how long and all that, and I kept saying Christmas. I think we're gonna be past Christmas going day-to-day now. Hopefully, I want to get as many people back to normal as possible, which, we've gotta focus, you know, though, a lot of resources on the areas that are flooded, you know, power outage, and I got a message just a minute ago from, from one in the audience about cable, cable TV, telephone and all that. A lot of those agencies rely on power also, so that to get the power restored means they can get their services restored. So, they, they've been out working, they're doing, you know, a diligent job also, and also just to comment on this, Ms. Harris's, about going to a meeting and, or a conference and, and hearing the folks talk about that, I really enjoy going to hear about talking about that, but I'm afraid our team is gonna be a speaker at one, the next one.
I'm not sure what to do with your team, but I, I want to tell y'all something, I have to give a shout-out to Internet technology, they brought a set of tools to this situation that I've never seen before. Anybody that resided by a body of water, they knew the name of that family who was in the house, their likelihood that they left or not. I was so impressed with that team, and then your team, Debbie and Gee in the office, we had a lot of people to feed. It started off with a grocery list this size, and as the different departments, there was nowhere to eat at all, and it was us, and it grew, and they got out and they found food, and we cooked food, and it was just a great effort that I'll never forget, and I thank you, Quinn, you've got a really, really good staff.
Our, we have an excellent staff, but Ms. Leary helped tremendously with, with the feeding, and I know Walton came in and, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bellis here, all came in to help, and each one of y'all, you know, we've been communicating, sorry, back and forth and trying to work the issues, I know y'all have been in the field, y'all have been in the EOC, y'all have been very, very focused, and I truly appreciate it, because it's real easy to know, I can turn to somebody and ask a question and not, you know, they're, they're there to help, so.
I've got a question of you, though, I have to ask, how many days can you stay up?
I went home last night about, about 11:00, and actually got some sleep, so.
You looked pretty good today, got a way to go. This guy was up, y'all, for days and days, and you stayed calm and cool and made the correct decisions for, I saw three days in a row, and it just, most humans can't do that, and we appreciate you, Quinn.
Fortunate or unfortunate, we've, we've gone to help others over the years, Hugo, Andrew, Katrina and all that, you all, every time we send folks over there, it's a learning experience. We've got folks in from all over the southeast in the EOC right now, Polk County has their Emergency Management Director helping us, and it's a neighbor helping neighbor, not only internally, but, but externally, and, but having said all of that, to learn and to see and to take nuggets of what others do, you know, that we can bring back, is, is tremendous, and.
Well, it really showed.
But I, I can't take credit myself, this has, it's a team effort, because if I was there by myself, I would have already pulled my hair out and done everything else, but...
All right, let's give them one more.
The team you see here, and the others that are still out there are, are in the field, and I'm sure I missed many of them, but, you know, I have to say, it's a true team effort.
That's what I, we need to get that list somehow. That's what I, we need to get that list somehow because it's just amazing, everyone. Commissioner Harris.
Impossible to do probably, but Quinn, I just, I know that you're always praising others and, in what you do and it does take everybody to make that work, but I think that in the state of Florida, that Putnam County EOC and your leadership is well known and the more that we can share what we learn from each one, I've watched that grow for a long time and the organization and putting it together and the sharing the things that you need is so significant and I want to thank you personally for your leadership and that organization, for EOC leaders and what they can do and, and all your staff. It's just, the whole thing is amazing, like Larry said, it's.
It really is. Commissioner Pellis here.
It's all been said, but I've got to throw my two cents in here and I'll shrink it down as much as I possibly can. Your entire team, everyone along that wall, Sheriff's Office, Communications, Sanitation, Public Works, everyone that I can possibly think of.
The power companies.
Such a well-oiled machine that you pull off out there and the way things were working, as Larry said earlier, it just seemed to all fall in place. A question would come up, I got that. Who does this? We do that. You know, everybody had a place and a time and everything worked. I thought, I'm, I'm sure there's some bugs that we don't know anything about, but everything I saw was just about flawless. I know after being elected, I asked you one time after I went to one of my classes about FEMA, you remember me talking to you about that? Are we prepared? Do we have, how do you do all this? He said, "Got that covered." I didn't want to ever have to use that, but thank God it's in place. Thank God everything is like it ought to be and we're prepared for this and you're, again, your team, every Putnam County employee in every facet is to be commended for their can-do attitude up early and out late, just, I can't say enough. I was, I was amazed. I stayed, you know, as you know, two nights down there with y'all and I was just amazed at how everything came together and at those situation meetings that we would have, it was just, it was just, when I got up from left, leaving that, I was like, "We got this." Every, every time I was like, "That's not a mountain we can't climb." But as, as Commissioner Flag said earlier, this storm's not over for a lot of folks. A lot of folks are still in harm's way. The flooding in the Dunes Creek area that I observed down there was just, I, you know, I've been all over that area all my life and I would never believe I'd seen things that I saw. It's phenomenal, but again, tip of the hat to all of y'all.
And the power companies, I can't say enough about, you know, those folks. They, FPNL had folks that rode the storm out with us. They got there early, stayed there, they helped out with other things, you know, making coffees, do this, do that, because when the storm's going on, there's not a whole lot that, you know, restoration that they can do during the height of the storm, but they were getting the information, you know, taking that and helping bring resources in and, and all of that, but it's, it's a team effort, like I said, and, you know, we're, we're in it for the long haul. FEMA's on the way and as soon as we get that information, we're, we'll get that out.
Commissioner Harvey.
May I also, I want to thank Larry, the landfill road, the washout out there, had that not been fixed by your department, nothing, we would be in a mess right now and your, your crew went out there and fixed it. I mean, I know it's not permanent, but it's workable and it's, it's happening right now, so I, I really thank you for that. Quinn, I also want to ask you, is there any way we can possibly know all these crews that have come in from all over the country? Because I tell you, all I want to do is say thank you, send them a card, do something because these people left their families, drove down in a storm, huddled in their trucks in a lot of cases and were ready to go wherever they were sent and.
We, everybody that we know about, we've captured.
Okay.
Not captured, but captured their names. We're capturing everybody, so.
They are captured at the fairgrounds.
And, and to that end, Florida Power and Light brought in.
What first?
Hundreds, thousands of crews, some are at the fairgrounds and we're there for the storm.
Okay.
But those, that pre-positioning and the learning from the 2004 storm made this storm go as best as we can make it. A lot of the things that, that we saw in, in '04, you know, you can see the difference today and just, just the story, the sergeant from the National Guard that was here with us as our liaison was in our EOC in 2004, so he made the comment about, "Wow."
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Let's give those guys a round of applause. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
It's not over, but I can tell you if we have a flat tar along the way, we're going to fix it.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to have from the tax collector's office, the boss, Linda Myers. How are you this morning?
I'm very good, thank you very much. I'm especially very good after listening to the last hour of, of how we work as a team in our community. We all know that, but when it actually happens and it works, as you said, a well-oiled machine, we ought to be proud and I know we are. Two things, one, I just want to thank you, I believe in the consent agenda, you're going to approve the extension of the tax rule. More critical this year than normal because the Value Adjustment Board meeting would have been last Friday and of course it did not occur and is, is already set to occur in the future. And so we ask you to allow us to go ahead and send the tax notice out without that being defined yet. The good news is less than 3% of the taxable value is under question, so it won't have a huge impact whichever way that ends up. So I hope you will, of course, extend that for us on your consent agenda and I'm here if there should be any questions. The second thing is, as you know, we do, we highlight a license plate every single month. Those license plates that actually bring money into Putnam County, as you know, they all have some charitable purpose for the state of Florida, but not all of them actually reach into Putnam County. This month, of course, is, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and there is a license plate that brings that of visibility as well as cash dollars into our community to support our citizens who are in that scenario of breast cancer. So we're selling buddy bucks. I think perhaps, Mr. Chairman, you might have a few of them that you can grab a couple of bucks from each of your commissioners. We would be glad to post that with your name on it with a contribution that also will go right here in Putnam County.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the contribution for myself and the Finance Department.
Well, thank you very much.
There's our first one.
To the clerk. Thank you. Small charge. But anyways, that is it, just to bring to your mind that right now we are highlighting that plate. That plate does bring money into Putnam County and so we always want to make sure that our citizens are aware of that. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for that and also I will be here if there's a question on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Appreciate it.
And I will be collecting money later. Actually, Mr. Chairman, could you collect money for us?
I will.
Thank you.
Each of you get ready.
I'll put it in your box, Mr. Chairman, and bring any cash.
Okay. Very important. All right, next on the public comment, we have Fay Sparkman is our first speaker and then we'll have Rhonda Masters will be next and then we'll take them from the folks.
Good morning. We're going to have something good for today after having such a, a bad weekend, but everything's coming out good. This time I need the clerk of court to come and help me. I also need Commissioner Carl Flag, Commissioner Larry Harvey and Quinn Romey.
Quinn didn't know.
And Mr.
He's out in the lobby, I think.
Mr. Smith's going to read and Wanda's going to pin you.
Well, you know, Fay and her group started the Best Huggers in Putnam County, so we're trying to bring more people into the group here and I have been designated President of the Association. So I always wear my little badge and I have actually ribbons on mine which designates me as President. Right, so they have an award for Commissioner Carl Flag, Outstanding Achievement goes to Carl Flag on this day, October 11th, 2016, is proclaimed first runner-up in Putnam County as tallest. Okay, so, okay, so you are the runner-up to that award that you'll see next.
You're number one.
Oh, so he's number one.
Thank you.
And this one, Most Elevated Hugger. Achievement Tallest Hugger Larry Harvey on this day, 10/11/2016, is proclaimed Top Notch Hugger in Putnam County, Florida.
Thank you.
That's not going to be good.
Here.
And I think Quinn is.
The next one was for Quinn Romey, but we'll go ahead and give it to him.
Okay, this is awarded to Quinn Romey, Huggers Club of Putnam County, Florida. Welcome to the new member of Quinn Romey and we'll make sure he gets this. And I just do want to make a little comment about, we, this seems to be silly, but the reality is, is it's a way for citizens to interact with our elected officials in some way and help build better friendships and relationships so that that communication line gets easier. And so I know we make jest of this sometimes, but there are benefits that get paid by having good communications and a little levity sometimes and especially after last week, so we thank you.
One other quick thing, I would like to, we had a great big tree limb come down the trees, about 60 feet tall, 30 feet up, the tree limb came down top of the roof. And the only person that came to our help was Lee Ashley, he does trees and lawn service. In the meantime, there were other people came like you were just talking about with cards and if you call the county, you'll find out if they're licensed or not and some of them are not. The other thing with the VA when they're on oxygen, that company came to Putnam County on Wednesday and made sure every person in our county had extra oxygen and checked all our supplies, so a big hand to the VA. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Quinn is back.
Quinn is back. Quinn's in the room.
Make the award.
I want to see a demonstration of it though. Can I see a demonstra, there you go.
And I really appreciate the, this, I've been working on the hug award for a while since I saw.
Make good friends that way.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Quinn.
I have some updated information.
Please.
Not good news, but news. As of right now, we have 614 homes impacted, 313 are destroyed, 227 are major, which means 50% or more and the total of all of that in damage is $46 million, so. Businesses, we have six that are, have been affected or, and all of that, we're quantifying those now. I expect this number to, to rise as, because this is prior to having the folks that we've got out now, so I just wanted to give you the.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Masters. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Rhonda Masters. I live at 567 Federal Point Road, East Palaco. So I'm here for a big thank you to everyone. First of all, thank God that we were at least spared what we were spared. I still have my home, I have, all my property was underwater, my barn, my garage, my cars, so, you know, but I have my home, so that's more than a lot of people at Federal Point have today. So the first thing I wanted to do is to tell you all, we surveyed and we looked and we looked at the maps and, you know, we were trying to decide, should we evacuate, not evacuate? Of course, we were under mandatory evacuation, but did we evacuate? Uh, no. We felt like the river could never come that high. We are so far off the river, it could never reach us. It not just reached us, it went beyond us, probably by, I don't know, 150, 250 yards past our home. We have sections of docks that have, that are now resting on dry land, somewhat, mucky land, that are now with probably 700 yards from the river. So it's pretty devastating and of course now we're waiting for the surge to come again with the full moon, so we're, we've got some concerns there. But my thank yous go out, first of all, the first things we heard after the storm, of course, are generators and chainsaws and a lot of work and then we hear these noises and it comes, of course, it makes us all try and figure out what's going on. So the first noise we heard were the National Guard and they came through checking on people, giving out water. A huge thank you to the National Guard, so, to them. The second noise we heard above everything was this blaring noise, blaring, 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 it wouldn't go away. Group of us rushed to try and figure out above all of the other noises what that was. It was the Red Cross. It was the first time I broke down and cried because I realized I was standing in line to get hot meal along with everybody in my neighborhood. So we can't thank them enough for coming to our aid and being there for us. Within 24 hours, Public Works was out there repairing huge holes in the roads that were dangerous for us, so we thank them. I thank you, Commissioner Flag and you, Commissioner Harvey, for coming out and visiting us yesterday and seeing what's going on and what's still going on and that it's not over for us. We saw the Coast Guard going by, they're looking. The river is very dangerous. There's not one dock left standing in our entire area and I'm sure in most parts of the county. We have 10-foot sections of docks covering our lawn, we're not sure how we're going to get them out of there, along with everyone else. Florida Power and Light, can't thank you guys enough. To say that they were ready is an understatement. We didn't get power back on till last night, but we know we're at the end of the power grid in our area and the guys that came, it was a group from Kennett, Missouri and to imagine that people came from Missouri last Thursday, stationed themselves and waited until the storm was over to come and work for us and work to get our power back on is commendable, thank you. We know where they were from, we, because we took them water, we took them cokes, we took them fruit, we took them whatever we could because we wanted to keep them nice and hydrated and healthy so they could do their jobs. A couple of suggestions that I would have for you guys, maybe we can consider some exceptions in cases of disasters in rural communities. I think rural is very different than urban and we could talk about that maybe at some kind of a roundtable meeting. One of my examples was the power guys could not really check all the lines that they needed to check because they crossed on private property because we are rural and there's not roads, so the, the power grid doesn't follow the roads, it goes into fields, it goes across private property. So we actually put the supervisor in one of our buggies and we took him through private property in order to check the lines because his truck wouldn't have gotten there even if he wanted to get there. So that's one thing. The other is, I would like to suggest that maybe there be some community meetings and some of these communities are the more heavily impacted. Maybe we can hold it at a church, we could hold it, we could do it at St. Paul's, but we're, what we're doing is kind of unique, so those are my two suggestions and I just can't thank everyone enough.
Can I ask her a question?
Good luck on your recovery. Go ahead. Yes, Commissioner Harris.
I, I'm glad to meet you. My daughter told me about your case and I didn't know that I would ever see you, but I think that you had horses?
No ma'am, I, I don't, but my neighbors do.
Your neighbors do?
Uh huh.
I was just wondering what they did about the horses when the flooding came in?
Everyone who had horses took their horses and trailered them into Ocala before the storm.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. We don't always run into that, I just wondered how it was solved.
We don't always run into that, I just wondered how it was solved. Good. Thank you for your suggestions, I think that's a great idea.
Thanks.
Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, touring that with the unofficial mayor of Federal Point yesterday, Rhonda, and it was just, it was incredible to see that the river, in some cases, probably three hundred yards moved inland, and four feet upon a, on a chain-linked fence. I mean, it was just awesome, and you, you look at that and think, that's not gonna happen, but it did happen. And boats are in neighbor's yards down the road, and docks are out there on our road, and it's just, you know, it was incredible. I, I witnessed a new house being built down there, and I told Rhonda, Ms. Masters, I said, you wonder if they didn't want to go up another two feet up in the air, because even that property was flooded. The river was just, it was incredible what was taking place, and, and yesterday, there was a big spirit of cooperation, neighbor helping neighbor out there. People were so, so easily accommodating, no one was complaining, and, and I tell you, I just really saw Putnam County at its finest in Federal Point yesterday, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was the last of my blue cards. Anybody from the public wishing to come up, now's the time for public comment. Morning?
Morning. Good morning, John Spells 106, Citrus Lane. I got a situation, I brung it to you all about a year or two ago, and it still hadn't really anything been done about it, so I'm here to address it again, because I'm glad this gentleman's here with Florida Power and Light. We have a problem in East Palaco, to where the farmers are digging the ditches along the light poles so deep to my power pole, it didn't break the wire, but it was leaning over, and they had to prop the pole up with a board to keep it from falling. It don't make sense to put a pole forty-five foot in the ground, and then the farmer go there and dig three and a half foot right at the base of it. And I wish y'all would do something about that, because now this morning, I got up, I went, I survived the storm with no lights out. This morning, my lights out, so I don't know what in the world could have possibly happened. I listened to my neighbors from the beginning of the storm until this morning, right across the railroad bed, they've been running generators to full-time, all the way down Putnam County Boulevard, but then you get right there by the road department, and they got lights. And you know, it really made me realize, I was blessed that I didn't lose my power, because I'd have been in the same situation. But I wish y'all would maintain your own ditches, so these farmers will stop digging these ditches so deep, because if you go down majority of the roads through East Palaco area, you'll see a lot of the power poles leaning, and it don't make sense for them to continue to dig those ditches that deep. And as far as water damages on the road, y'all need to ride down Cracker Swamp Dirt Road, and look just how those roads are washed out, because they got all those dike pipes in some of those dishes restricting the flow of the water. You go down Dog Branch Road, y'all just put four covets down there, I guess maybe about two or three weeks ago, in which those pipes are too small, and it don't make sense installing covets in ditches and won't clean the ditches, because the water actually is running along the rim of the roadway, the grader constantly gets gray dirt, but never put no dirt back, and then they put two covets in one ditch, well, one crossing, and they got it in the middle of the ditch, the butt end of the covert is all the way in the center of the ditch. I rode through there the other night, the water coming from both directions, passing each other, and crossing the road where they made a ridge going over the covert, but why would you put two covets instead of using one large enough covert? And then they got one of them, the water running straight into the base of a tree root. It was unnecessary to even put the covert there if you're gonna run it into the, um, tree root. You go down Cracker Swamp Dirt Road, that ditch ran along on the right-hand side, coming off of the main road, you can't even see none of the houses, they're so growed up with vegetation, the water come on the road, go off the road, on the road, and all the way down that road is just tore, and it's gonna take quite a bit of dirt to cover all of those pipes back up and bring that road back up to, um, standard.
Thank you, Mr. Spill.
And I wish y'all would take a little time and ride around and look what's going on instead of just sticking these covets under the, under the roads, but yet the water still can't even make it down it, because it's on the road.
All right, anybody else for public comment? This is the time. Good morning.
Good morning. Leroy Kaymore, 117 Gladys Avenue, East Palaco, Florida. We had the same problem, only it increased it. As of last Wednesday, all of the water come down cross from out of the potato fields over there, where the canals is wide open. Wednesday, the bridge there on 207, it was, water was buffing, shooting out the other side, and it was out of the bank on the Dog Branch Canal on our side. Pole lady, and they had to wade out in water again, all out in the field, that field on the, on the east side of the road there, it water all out in that potato field. The road over there on Walling Road, the covert coming down in there, it is washed out hole in there, tall as you is, Mr. Harvey, you get down that hole, they can't see you. Go all around Cracker Swamp Road, they got holes there, water go all over the road, and it's just, it don't make sense. And I've been coming up here now for the last about seven years, asking you all about, and you open up everything over there, and when you get right down to 207 and Dog Branch, y'all won't open it up. So, I don't care how much you got up there, I don't care how much you pour in a funnel, how big it is, if you got an outlet like that, it's gonna back up and flow up. All you got to do is ride over there and look, you can't even get through some of them road this morning. And it just, we can't say that it was the storm. This was a problem before the storm, y'all know that, you've been riding out there with us, these people here, we've been constantly at y'all, and you come, you always need the money. You got the money, you still didn't do nothing. Now, I seen in the paper the other day, we need to get another grant. What did you do with other money? We, we need something done over there, and y'all, y'all just don't do nothing for us. You come right up to the highway, and you quit. You need to come over there and look. You been there, you been there, you know what I'm talking about. I'm not lying to you, but nobody cares. Nobody do nothing for us over there, but send us a tax bill late. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment this morning? Mr. Tompkins, you want to speak?
If you would mind, I'd like to address that issue.
Come forward to the podium, please, sir. Well, there you go, that's fine, yeah. Make sure that mic is live, Mr. Tompkins, thank you.
Turn the on button on.
Got a button on it.
We're integrated, you can use this one.
This is working now, okay.
That one, that one is designed for staff, that's the reason you went over there.
No, I, I want to address, we, we are very much aware of Dog Branch Creek, we, we're top that, we sent letters out, we do have money, grant money to do it, and everybody's aware that is private property, we do not have an easement to go on that property. We sent letters out to approximately nine property owners over there, asking them to sign a easement to us to give us the right to clean that out. To date, we have received no response from any of the residents on those letters we sent out. Mrs. Curry, we did talk to her, her daughter is on her deed, and she was gonna get in touch with her daughter when she was in town next to help sign that deed. Other than that, we have not received any response. We have done everything we know to do to be able to clean this facility out, but we cannot go on private property. And I want to just let everybody know that, that we're not sitting here doing nothing, we're not ignoring you, but we can't do it without that easement.
Sir. How could the county clean that beforehand? All of these years, they cleaned that canal, the reason is, in 1967, I cared the necessary papers to the Board of County Commissioners, giving them the right and the authority to go from 207 to 2078. They've been cleaning that canal until 1982, and 1982, they quit. Now, if they was in there then, why they can't go down the same trail they was used? I understand that.
Sir, we cannot find those records anywhere, they're not recorded anywhere, nobody has any record of it, and under the laws that, the data I have to work under, I cannot do work on private property. We have checked with our county attorney on this, we, there's nothing we can do until we have those easements signed, and, and we, we've done everything we know to do.
Mr. Tompkins?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kaymore, look in the, on that podium, there's Mr. Tompkins' card in the right front, and I want you three to get together, discuss this in the lieu of time, we're not gonna air this out this morning, if that's okay.
Okay, I just wanted to...
We've been over it and over it, we have a path that we are currently going down to correct this.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for your leadership there, and progress is being made, Mr. Kaymore, and that's it.
Can I ask one question real quick?
No, sir, you can't. Sit down, Mr. Spell, please.
You sure?
This is it.
Thank you.
Mr. Tompkins, same thing, thank you. Okay, anybody else on another subject, public comment? Okay, here are none. Commissioners, we are going to take a ten-minute recess, we will be back at 10:24. Thank you.
Ten what?
Ten fifty-four.
Ten fifty-four, sorry.
I would like to reemphasize what Mr. Woodward just said, we are not anti-solar, we're not anti-FPL. We're trying to make a living out on property that we bought about twenty-five years ago. My wife and I own property on both the north and the south side of this project. The legal term is abut, we, our property abuts their property, and so therefore, we are neighbors. And as we all know, what we do on our individual properties affect and can impact our neighbors' properties. We are very cognizant of that fact, we put a great deal of effort into being a good neighbor, considerate neighbor, and we appreciate the good neighbors that we have. Along those lines, we never intended to, to, to not support this solar farm activity. We wanted to totally support this solar farm activity. Where we're having great difficulty is that we are now hearing that we must provide a right-of-way across our land in order for their project to be successful. Now, let me remind you that they have negotiated this piece of property, five hundred and eighty-six acres or there and abouts. They closed on it in February, the first time we heard that we played any role whatsoever was about the middle of May. We get a call, and FPL would like to meet with us, and we're saying, that's nice, our neighbors would like to come over and have a glass of tea and say hello. And we said, well, we're pretty busy right now, and so if you don't mind, we'll just take a rain check on that. And they, and, and about a week, they called and they said, you really do need to talk to us. And we said, why do we need to talk? We didn't realize you're there, you know we're here, we're all good neighbors and so forth. They said, no, you're gonna play a role in this, you, you're gonna provide a right-of-way across the property. And we're saying, maybe we do need to talk, because we had no idea that we were critical to their success. We, when we met with them on September the second, we explained in great detail to the FPL representatives that our land to the north has a lease purchase contract signed about a year and a half ago, coupled with a five-year plan to intensely grow irrigated corn and corn silage to feed a rapidly expanding local family dairy. Our business transaction with the dairy was made necessary because, in effect, Call Farms was put up for sale, and we understood it was up for sale, we saw it advertised, and FPL bought the, the feed-producing fields where the dairy had been for years, purchasing their feed supply for their dairy. So naturally, we've known Jim and Ellie for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and so they came to us and they said, you know, we have no idea who's gonna buy this property, but chances are pretty good that we're not gonna be able to get our, our, our dairy feed locally. And being able to get dairy feed locally is a prime, prime need, because there's so much water content in it, it's so heavy. The equipment that you use to collect it and bring it in and, and store it is not really roadworthy, so it's ideal to have your fill somewhere close by. So, it made sense, because Debbie and I are getting to the point where we're wanting to retire, and so naturally, we sat down and talked very seriously with Jim, we did a deal with him and, and, and his financial people, and, and we came up with a deal. We're a year and a half into our transaction, and everything was going good. When he started this thing, we, he had about five hundred head of cattle. The idea here is that he needs to rebreed his cattle annually in order to, to refresh the milk flow, and in the process, you get a calf, half of them logically would be heifers, which he would keep, he then plows those back into his milking herd. He's already up to eleven hundred head on his way to eighteen hundred head. Now, I don't think I'm talking out of class by saying Jim's in his mid-fifties, I'm, I just turned seventy-five, and so he has a couple of kids, one, one's in college, one's in the way, on the way into college, he's looking, needing to work another twenty, twenty-five years. I'm looking at drinks with, with umbrellas in them, I do not want to do that anymore. So, anyway, it was a wonderful process for him, it was an opportunity for me, we got together, everything is good. So, we're going along, and the, and, and he now has enough property under contract to grow and to feed his growing herd, but the only way you can do that with the kind of land we have, muck land, it's either dust or, or it's soup, there's no in-between, and if you can't control the, the liquid content in it, you go out there one day and, and you can't drive through it the next day, you know, it's, it's wilted over because it needs water. He is going to be putting in pivots for irrigation. Those pivots can be anywhere from a quarter mile to a half a mile long, and they travel, they're on wheels, and they travel. And so, that being the case, you can, they can, they can go across ditches, you can set it up where they can go through fence systems, everything's fine, you can't go around power poles. These folks are talking about putting a power poles in every five to seven hundred feet across our property. So naturally, we got a little excited about that. We have been told that the requirements for these power poles would be right-of-ways, large and tall power poles, land clearing, heavy equipment usage, twenty-four hour a day access and availability, all of which is incompatible with our developed plans of growing irrigated feed for dairy and grazing cattle. The FPL preferred right-of-way traveled through our pastures, our cattle pens, our alleyways, our watering stations, our gates, our fences, not to, not to mention taking out the trees along Coal Farms Road, which I know most people look at that as being beautiful, and it is. We look at it as being, keeping the, you know, the unwanted out, because that's all a privacy break for us. Needless to say, this is a signed lease purchase agreement on this land. We spent three years developing our plan, and the past year and a half implementing the plan. Without this land, this man cannot keep his business going. The dairy has systematically increased from five to six hundred head to currently eleven hundred head, his goal is eighteen hundred head. His goal is 1,800 head. He employs 15 people today. He's going to employ 50 people when it's completed. The thing that absolutely flabbergasts me is our Chamber of Commerce, he heard the same presentation the last time. We're talking about employing 50 families, 50 people in northwest Putnam County, and you show me anybody within 10 miles of us that employs 50 people. This is a family-operated dairy that has not asked for any kind of aid from anybody. They're paying their own tab. They're working to word of goal. We're assisting them because we're neighbors. And all of a sudden, this giant walks into the room and says, "Time out. What you need to do is to put your needs on hold and listen to what we've got for you." Now, this hasn't come up just, you know, this is not something I just thought about last night. I've been studying the FPL 10-year site plan dated 2016 through 2025. Coral Farms isn't even mentioned in it. Neither is Melrose, even mentioned in it, okay? And it says in that plan that they're so far ahead on all of their projections that none of the sites that they're talking about will even be necessary until the end of the planned period, which is 2025. Yet they're about to put us out of business in order to get some more of these fossil credits, you know? And we're trying to put employment here for 50 people, and the chamber's not even getting up here speaking for us. I mean, our tax money is going into his outfit. I'm bitter about that. I don't mind telling you, and I've told him, and I'll tell him again. As you know, this thing has really gotten us cranked. Our problem is that the crux of this whole problem is the fact that we can't grow, feed with the kind of quality and the kind of quantity that we need to feed 1,800 head. Each one of these cows will eat up to 100, 150 pounds a day, and they sit right there and wait for you to feed them. This is a big deal. And in all fairness, Meyer Wise and Dan Veronic of FPL have been dedicated to helping us, and I would never, never, never denigrate what they've done for us. They have worked long and hard. They met with us last, they called yesterday to help us resolve this, because it looks very much like we may be heading for an imminent domain situation. Their attorney stood at this very table and told the planning committee that, "Oh, yeah, we'll talk with the homeowner, with the landowners, but yeah, we will use eminent domain if we need to." We've owned this property. This came right out of our wallets. This didn't come down through the family. And all of a sudden, you know, these people are walking in and saying, "You didn't know it, but you had a partner." I don't have a partner. I may spend my last dollar, but that won't be my partner. But anyway, they called yesterday and said, "We realize this is on short notice, but we'd like to meet with you to talk about an alternative plan." We said, "We're all ears, because, brother, we are interested in an alternative plan, because if you bring, if you use either your preferred or your secondarily preferred route for your above-ground power lines, it's going to put us out of business. Jim's going to lose his dairy cattle. I don't know what we're going to do. I mean, it's a big deal. This is a big deal." So both of these gentlemen, we met with them. Jim's right there with us, too, naturally. We met with them last night, and the idea here is that they may, they can, they think. This needs to be proved, but it appears as though they'll be able to move the substation from down in a very low mucky area to an area on our property, which is right absolutely underneath their transmission lines and to the side. They can't build right in the right-of-way, but they can certainly build off to the side, run low whatevers lines from down there underground, which would suit our needs 100%. Come up within the substation with their transformers, jack up the whatevers, and put it right on their lines. It would be a win-win for everybody. It would be a win-win for everybody. We've said we'll work with them in every way possible in order to do that. They're going to have an issue down on the Coral Farms property, because there's one entranceway down there. The only way for them to get up to their proposed substation is coming along the canal. That canal bank is totally 100% unstable. There's all sorts of culverts under it. They will have nothing but headaches. We've told them that we'll help them resolve those issues. One is to move that power substation down onto this high ground that we went down and walked, which I'm going to mow, and I'm going to have it looking like a golf course, in order for these people to be impressed, hopefully. But if we can make that work, that's our solution. But I've talked to them this morning, and I said, "Why don't you folks ask to make your whole presentation, but make it contingent upon this new plan working? It's not my plan, it's their plan. I don't need to bet on whether their plan will work. They proposed it, but they need time to check it out, make sure it all works right." I'm just saying, don't turn these people loose on us as local farmers and have us to spend our last dollar in an eminent domain case whenever they've already promised us. That's where it'll go, because we can't allow these lines to come across the property. We're more than happy to let them go underneath the ground. That was one of our first proposals. I bet we've hit them with six or eight proposals. We can never get an answer immediately, but, you know, the one where we're talking about going and putting it out on some other transmission lines, it took us six weeks to get an answer. But again, time's on their side. It's not on our side. It's our property, you know? We paid for it. It's not their property. And so I'm just, I'm here to ask you folks to put a little sanity in this process, you know? They come into Putnam County, and all of a sudden, you know, everybody's, you know, they're all in a flutter about this being solar. I like solar, too, but I also like to eat, and I also like to see my neighbors be successful. And you know, this solar project that they're working on doesn't make a hill of beans to FPL in the bigger picture. There is not one volt of that power that's going to be coming and used here into Putnam County unless it goes out on the grid and comes back. This is an unmanned installation versus a dairy over here, it's going to be employing 50 people. In short, what we're saying, we would like for you to take control of this madness and say, "We would approve this based upon your proposal working in the way that these folks here can survive." We're going to be reasonable, but we're also, we're going to survive, too, and it's our property. You know, it's already spoken for. We know exactly where that property needs to go in order to feed a family and feed a dairy. And the last thing I want to do is to just, we have transmission lines east and west on two ends of our ranch. Now they're wanting to go north and south. We're going to look, you know, we're going to look like a checkerboard. And so I'm just saying, folks, this is your chance to stand up for us. We're the citizens here. I don't have an issue whatsoever with solar power. I don't have an issue with Florida Power and Light. Both Meyer and Dan are wonderful people. We've really gotten to like them, and I think that they've got the right answer. But don't give these people the right today to come in and kick us through the curb, because they've already said that they would. It's not, it's not an if. They've already said they'll use eminent domain. They will talk to the landowners. It's on the record. They can't deny it. Said, "We will talk to the landowners, but we will use eminent domain, and they have the right to do that." They won't win it, I can assure you. My last dollar says they won't. But nevertheless, why should I have to spend my money to protect what I own? I'm just asking you folks to make them play by the rules. Sit down with us and work with us, and these two gentlemen have been wonderful to work with, and I want to praise them. But let me just tell you, all of a sudden, the game's changed. What you're looking at on these nice flip charts are not what's really going to work out to be the answer. So tell them to go back, relax. If it takes them overnight to okay the plan that they came forward with, that's great. We're ready to sign off. Jim, Debbie, myself, we're all ready to sign off. If it takes them a day, if it takes them a week, if it takes them a month, the ball's in their court. So if they want to hurry up the process, the only thing they got to do is sharpen their pencil and get busy instead of sitting over here and asking for special favors. And so with that, folks, I'll shut up. Thank you so much. Any questions for me?
Yes.
Any questions? Yes, go ahead. Ms. Harris?
We have a map that shows the property. Could you show me? Let's see, you're trying to help Jim, who has cattle. Are you going to grow the feed on your land?
No, ma'am. I have a lease purchase agreement on 1,037 acres with Jim and his financial folks. My property jams totally up to his. I'm in his back, yes, ma'am. I'm in his backyard. And let's see.
If you could, Mr. Griffin, please take that to the microphone so we get you on the recording. You can take that with you. Yes, sir.
Okay. This, this, I'm sorry. This map does not show our, well, it shows only a portion of our property. Our property that we have a contract, a three-year lease purchase agreement on, 1,037 acres, fits totally against his whole back of his operation. So therefore, he doesn't even have to go out on the road. He can go, just drive from his property, take the fence down, and he's already growing corn, running cattle on our property. You know, he's had it for a year and a half, and he's managing it. I'm not doing one thing. And it's all working out great for him.
Mr. Griffin, look on page 136 of that and see, is that a better map to help us understand? I'm seeing a bigger map there. Maybe there's one even better in the packet, but that's one.
Yes, sir, but it's further to the north.
I'm looking to see if there's a better one. How about 139?
I think I went the wrong direction. See, on 137, where that point comes down along Coral Farms Road, that's our property. Thank you, sir. Yeah, this is, this, let me bring this over to you. And if you will look, this is our property here. It comes here and widens out. It comes up here. This is Jim's operation. This is his cattle barns and milking parlors and so forth. Those are our woods. This is Jim's property down in here. We also own property to the south of this.
And they want to go, Florida Power and Light wants to go north.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly, because the FPL lines, the transmission lines are right through here somewhere.
Can we get that up so everybody can see that?
Is there a way to put it on the screens?
Page 135, maybe?
So we know what everybody's looking at?
Yeah, maybe we'll talk from the TV. But yes, our, I'm sorry, our property runs along Coral Farms Road, and it adjoins the Coral Farms property, which is now the FPL property. So both of us share Coral Farms Road entry, you know, access. And then our property goes further, about a mile or so, along Coral Farms Road. We have an FPL transmission line that cuts right across Coral Farms Road and goes east and west. And so what they'd like to do is to be able to get from their facility, which they need to get from their facility, to put it out on the grid. Now, there is a grid on the property just absolutely to the south of them, but that's Seminole Grid. We've talked many times about the possibility of them tapping into that, because the grid is a grid. It's like, you may be getting power here that's generated in Los Angeles. You have no idea. It's like the internet. But the grid is all interconnected, and if you can measure the input, take the same amount of output, then it's a zero factor as far as the effect on the grid. So everybody uses the grid. Florida Power and Light sells on the grid. In fact, their letter to Mr. Hammond from Mr. Long said that, "You know, we have no idea of what we're going to use this power for, but one of the options is to sell it on the grid. We may use it for our client base or our user base, but, you know, they'll put it on the grid, and it's just like anything else, you know? They bid it off and people use it." I mean, there's people like Clay Electric that doesn't generate power. They buy from these big conglomerate situations. I can't see that. Yes, ma'am. To answer your question, we own the property to the north. Jim owns the property to the west of us.
Hold up for Mr. Griffin. We're changing tapes in the media room. Go ahead, Diane.
A two-minute break.
Three. Yeah, let's take a 10-minute break right now.
Okay, thank you.
A Board of County Commission meeting, October 11th, 2016. We're in the hearing that's been continued for lunch, and we'll reconvene right now with Howard Griffin, finishing his statements and taking questions from the commissioners, if we have any. I'll start with my left. Commissioner Harris?
Mr. Griffin, I'm still a little bit confused about the location of the property. Did you recognize this map? Could I just go ahead and finish asking you about it?
Okay, we can speak in this.
Okay, good.
So everybody can hear us.
Yep.
So this is the Florida Power and Light-proposed property.
That's true.
And we're going north this way.
That's exactly right.
All right, so where are you, and where does Jim own?
Okay.
And where is the property that you have the option to purchase?
Okay. The property, my property, comes along here, comes over here, comes into the woods, and goes up. FPL's power transmission lines cross somewhere in the vicinity of right about here. What they're trying to do, they, currently, they have their substation located about here, and they need to get the power to the transmission lines, which would be right there. And what we, what they're proposing is one line that would go directly up Coral Farms Road on the west side. The other, we've discussed, would be coming up this canal system and tying in up here. The latest possibility is the fact, instead of having the substation right here, they may be able to run the cable since they're not handling, you know, high-intensity type voltages apparently. They could put those underground. This up here is our property, right inside of here, in this line here. The FPL line comes across right about here. The FPL line comes across right about here, and we've talked about maybe relocating that substation up here. And then, and then we wouldn't have a problem with putting it underground and feeding it up there because we'd be able to use, the, the fields that we're concerned about growing would be all of these fields through here, and also these fields over here.
Okay. So you own right now all of this, all the way up to the transmission?
I do, and also along up here to the transmission line and beyond.
Okay, and that's the area that you want to grow things in?
That's exactly right. And that's the 1,037 acres that the, that the dairy has the lease purchase on.
And that's to the north of the subject property?
I'm, I'm, I can't.
It's to the north of the subject property?
Right. Yes, sir. Exactly right. That would be north.
Okay, where, okay, but the property that we're talking about is here, and you own all of this now?
I do.
Okay. And the 1,000 acres is?
Is, is this property.
Oh, so you don't own all the way up here? This is what?
No, they only have a lease purchase on it. They don't own the property. It has not changed hands yet. They're leasing it for a period of three years. We have agreed on the price. We've agreed on the terms. If they want us to hold the paper, everything. So it's really, it's sold, except they haven't, they haven't finalized the deal on it.
I see, so you are going to sell to them?
Yes.
It's not something you have a lease option on?
No, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify that, and I wanted to know where it all's at.
We, and, and already the dairy owns this section of property over here, on this, this edge of the same property. So we adjoin with the dairy here and the dairy back over here. And so it, this is their, this is their milking and parlors and so forth back here. So that's the reason this is so strategically located, is the fact that you really don't have to go out on any kind of public access in order to get their crops here and over here where they'll be consumed.
Okay, so this is the area they're gonna grow in? This looks like swamp, is that so?
Yeah, a lot of it is swamp, a lot, but most of it is just old virgin forest. The county forestry agent said there's a tree here that was an old tree during, during the Civil War. So therefore, yeah, a lot of this is big oaks.
And this is the growing area, all right?
Yes, ma'am.
The part that I really didn't understand, do you all want to see this?
You might want to put your microphone up.
Do you know it?
I do know it, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so you said that when they grow, they need lots of water?
That's right.
And you have this portable watering thing that you move from place to place?
Well, it, when, they, they haven't installed it yet, but this is an irrigation system that runs from a central well, and the, the power of the water powers the, the arm on the irrigation, and it sweeps very slowly.
I think I've seen that on my way to Seville, in the farms down there.
That's right. It's the same deal.
That's what I was thinking.
But it can be a quarter, half mile long, and so if, if they put, if they put their line, if they put their poles in, that's where it gives us real headaches.
Well, what I was thinking is, why couldn't you have, if you got enough money, different wells instead of having them that far so that the posts could fit? I mean, that's just wandering in my head, it seems.
And that's, and it's a good question. There will be multiple wells. But, but again, whenever you start cutting it up in 500-foot lengths, they're saying that their poles are 500 to 700 feet apart.
Right.
And instead of it being 2,800 feet to 3,800 feet, the, the economy is having one well that feeds a long sweeping arm. But if you, you could do it, yeah, you could do it with enough wells and enough small things, but it creates a mechanical nightmare to have all these little circles out there when you could have a much larger, you can, you know, you can water a couple hundred acres very easily.
So it could be done if you had, it's a matter of money?
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
We could use the podium again, it would help Diane's.
Do you all understand that map? Okay.
All right, you're good. Commissioner Harris had to Tony at some point.
It's not, you can keep it for reference right now, but at some point, Tony will need that for the record.
I'll be sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sure.
Just a point of observation. It sounds to me that everybody concerned does not have an issue with the project. The issue is the connectivity from the, uh, project site to get to the transmission lines. Am I on point?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so it also appears to me that since there's no opposition to the project, that one or two things need to happen. They need to continue the negotiations so that both sides reach a consensus and have, after reaching that consensus, then everything else to me becomes a mute point, as it, a mute point, if, if that is resolved. So my question is, if that is something that we are not to resolve, the FPL and, and the Griffins are gonna have to resolve, what kind of time constraints do either party have, and do we give them an opportunity to sort through that, and then we come back with the proper public hearing or whatever else we need to have, and we can move forward? That's my question.
Let me offer my two cents there, if I could. As a quasi-judicial board today with planning and zoning, we are charged with okaying or not okaying the zoning. Does it match our comprehensive plan and flume? Nothing else. All this discussion about transmission lines, really, we're being very liberal in letting them discuss that, but as a board, we commissioners right here, that is not our charge today. And Mr. Manning, I think, will agree with that, and that's, but I'm willing to do whatever the board wishes to do because I, we all want this to work. I want Mr. Frisell's dairy to work. I want Florida Power and Light to have a solar field, but at the end of the day, that is your charge as commissioners today. And then the trend, anything outside of that is not, we're not making any decisions on.
Yeah, I will just chime in slightly, that the issue for the board to decide is whether or not the criteria are met for them to, to be allowed the PUD. Now, um, those in opposition, I think, have some further discussion on that topic, and I believe the applicant.
They do, we're not through with that.
Applicant's gonna have some rebuttal on that topic as well, so I don't want to step on any toes in that regard.
Okay, so let's, let's continue the process as we're going and listen to all parties considered. Let's go to you, Commissioner Palasir. Any questions for Mr. Griffin?
I think you've answered all mine so far.
Mr. Harvey.
You know, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, one concern of mine has always been, since the start of this process, is the transmission lines, and, and I've made that clear to Florida Power and Light, I've made it clear to everybody. If this was a, if this was a warehouse, you would be concerned about the ingress and egress and how they move the product out. Just because it wasn't listed in the PUD doesn't mean they're not moving a product out. And I even called Latshaw County about the Melrose one, and they said, "Well, it's really not our issue because the moving out is in Putnam County." So I think we do need to go a little bit beyond our scope of what's on there, and that was a concern for the Planning Commission too, when I listened to the tape, was how do you get your product out?
Mr. Harvey, let me remind you, open yourself up, or us up, to a civil suit if you go outside of your scope.
I get.
I'm sorry, we're discussing it. This is as far as we can go, though, and I'm being fair, but we're, we're not gonna get ourselves in a liability.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, if you built a building in the middle of a piece of property.
I understand.
There has to be some expectation of getting to and from, and I think that's what our community is asking us to look at today.
I, I, and I went to the PSC because the PSC is the one who usually typically controls the utilities. And I asked them to discuss the right-ofways, and they said, "That is the responsibility of your county, Board of County Commissioners." They said, "You have an issue that they have ever need to resolve for you." Now, I'm not telling you your business, but I'm just saying that I don't think it's fair for you to turn your back on your citizens when you've got someone the size of FPL that have already told us.
I'm not, we're not turning our back, Mr. Griffin.
Okay.
Today's hearing has, is specific, and I have to, as a chairman, guide along those lines, with all due respect.
And, and, but I think we disagree with that position.
Well, you might, that's fine.
And that's the reason we have our attorney here, is to be able to discuss with that on a different level than I'm certainly capable of doing. I'm just saying that I, I expect you folks to be in our count when it comes to standing up against an outside group that's bringing no employment into this county.
Well, that's, wait a minute, that's, let's hear from all parties before we jump to those conclusions, because I don't know that.
I've read, I have read the document, and it says it's an unmanned facility.
It sure is, but it needs maintenance, doesn't it?
They're saying once a month, maybe, somebody will come in. It's not 50 jobs, is the point.
I feel like you're trying to lead me, and I really want to hear from you.
Nope, nope. You, they've had their chance.
Well, no, they haven't. If you, we, we'll move on, I will.
I thought they gave a presentation, I'm sorry.
No, sir. They get a chance to rebuttal.
Do we?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
We can go on all day, that's fine.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I thought Mike still had the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Woodward still.
We can't rebut now. I, I just wanted to address the transmission lines.
Yeah, we're gonna, I think, Mr. Woodward, Mrs. Griffin was next, and then I was gonna call, um, Mr. Jim Frisell, and then Mary Lynn.
And Tana. Where's Solana? Can I say Solana? All right, thanks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today. I came here to say that I think we have an opportunity for you to grant us a win-win situation for FPL, for my husband and I, for our neighbor, and for the citizens of Putnam County. We have a situation that we need to get resolved. I just heard you say that you thought that might be beyond your purview, but what I would like to say today is that if you look at this strictly from a zoning issue, one of the statements that I read that was in the resolution that's already been prepared for you to consider is that it says, the prepared ordinance says, "That amending the county zoning for the PUD as proposed by the applicant will not adversely affect the orderly development of the zoning district or the adjacent and surrounding properties." That is absolutely not true, depending on the route that they take. If they take the route that goes and intersects and bisects our farm as they have proposed to us, it greatly diminishes our ability to do with our land our plan, and it is harmful to us, and it is adversarial, and it will dramatically change our plans and Mr. Frisell's plans. To Commissioner Harris's question earlier to my husband, it's not only a matter of irrigating and pivotal pivots that irrigate the farmland for the crops that are being raised for the dairy, but it's also a matter of land value, it's also a matter of farm vehicles being able to pull out on the solid ground to be able to make turns, there's radiuses. We, we own this property, and we've been here for 25 years, and we never envisioned that some neighbor would come in and start to tell us what is acceptable and not acceptable for our property. That's why we're here before you today, is to ask you to put us on the same level as they are, because if they're granted the PUD, before we work out these terms, our ability to sit down and in good faith and negotiate with them becomes greatly diminished. That's the crux of the whole problem here. We're just asking for a fair hearing. We, they obviously are a corporate giant, they've been very good to this community, we're not here to dispute that. We're not here to dispel any of the good things that have been said about FPL. When we first found out they were coming into our neighborhood, we welcomed them with open arms. We think it's a great idea to have less energy dependence coming from other sources. We're not opposed to the solar farm itself, but we are opposed to them dramatically affecting our operation and hampering our ability to make a living and affecting our retirement, which is what we've put a large portion of the value of this land into. That's the only thing we're here today. If, if we are at the point where you feel as though you can't delay it, that that's not part of your purview, then we obviously have to ask that you decline the zoning request, period, because we think this will definitely adverse our property, and we think that we can, can convey that if we need to as we go further, and we can show that. So we came here hoping that we could work together on a solution. We met with two representatives last night. They put forth a very good proposal that we're very open to, and we'd like to explore that opportunity. But in good faith, we asked this morning if FPL would consider working out those terms and delaying their proposal, and they were not agreeable to do that. So we wonder how much good faith they will show to us whenever we sit down to really negotiate. So with all that being said, I would ask that you respectfully either reject the zoning request outright, if that is the limit of what you're able to do today, or you, at the very least, you delay the decision on this until we can meet with them and work out the terms. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, look, Mr. Woodward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will anything bad happen if I close this laptop?
I don't think it'll.
I think the alarm is passed. Yeah. Close it.
Ah, nothing happened.
Okay, good, good. I want to follow up on something Mrs. Griffin said. Really, I want to go back to the discussion that has involved discussions of negotiations between FPL and my clients. One of the things that was discussed in those negotiations, if you want to call them that, very, very recently, was this idea of relocating the substation, burying some wires, then going up in the air in a place where it would not interfere with anything. There may be a temptation on, on your part naturally to say, "Well, they're having some good talks, they're probably gonna work something out, we don't need to worry about this." Well, here's the thing. The PUD that you have in front of you today, that FPL is asking you to approve, would be inconsistent with the scenario that was suggested by FPL to my clients in that negotiation, because it would involve moving the substation that appears on the site plan of the PUD to another location that is actually not just another location on that site, but is actually off-site. So the PUD you're being asked to approve would lock in a scenario that would be detrimental and would not, in all likelihood, be the best scenario for either my clients or the future development of the community. I want to bring the focus now to the relevant criterion, and I'm just gonna stick to one, from the Land Development Code. This is in the record because staff recited it earlier, and it's part of the staff report. Need to get out my reading glasses, you'd think by now I'd realize I can't see without Land Development Code, Section 4.02.02B, as in boy, two. The land, this, this is a criterion that has to be met in order for a PUD to merit approval. The land uses proposed within a PUD are compatible with existing and planned uses of properties surrounding the PUD. An evaluation of the external compatibility of a PUD should be based on the following factors: adjacent, existing, and proposed uses, design of the development, traffic circulation, and density and intensity. The single greatest external impact of this PUD will not be from those solar panels or the substation. The single greatest external impact to the existing and planned future uses of surrounding properties will be the transmission lines. And yet, and yet, the analysis does not, the analysis that was done by staff does not present an analysis of what that impact would be. FPL has not identified what of what that impact would be. FPL has not identified what route or alternate routes it would be using for those transmission lines. We don't know. The problem with that is I'm going to have to disagree with staff. I have enormous respect for Mike Brown. I've known Mike often on 25 years, and you could not ask for a better planner than Mr. Brown. You are so lucky to have him working for you.
Thank you.
But every once in a while, anybody can be wrong. I'm told it even happens with me. The decision to exclude from consideration the impact of the absolutely essential transmission lines was an artificial circumscribing of the scope. If you want to say it's outside the scope, it's because the scope wasn't as big as it should have been and needs to You don't... That never happens with any other PUD or rezoning or any other particular project. That sort of thing doesn't happen. The external infrastructure that is absolutely necessary for the PUD to operate is always considered in conjunction with the PUD. You cannot assess the impacts otherwise. You cannot pretend that there will be no traffic impacts on other roads. In a situation where an industrial facility might require a railroad spur line or the building of a dedicated road for heavy truck traffic to connect the site of that industrial facility with an arterial road, what you always have to look at and what will that impact be? The impact of the route that the transmission lines will take cannot be known at this time because that route has not been identified. It was not identified to staff, so far as we know, and staff did not have the opportunity to consider what that impact might be. Where that route is going to be is still up in the air. We are still in pig-in-a-poke territory. Depending on the precise location where that transmission line ends up being, its impact to the future and existing... The existing and future development of surrounding lands may be small or may be great. That needs to be analyzed. It needs to be known, analyzed, thought about, and become part of your decision-making process, just as the infrastructure needed to carry a product to market, as Commissioner Harvey said, would be a necessary part of the consideration if this were any other type of industrial facility producing a product. Only this product isn't going to go out on a railroad spur line. It's not going to go out on a dedicated road that heavy trucks will use to access an arterial. It's going to go out on big transmission lines, and they will have some impact, and we cannot pretend it away. We have to come to understand it, and at this point, we have not received the knowledge and the analysis to know, to be able to reliably assess, make an intelligent decision about whether that impact is great or whether it is small. It could be negligible. It could be so great that as wonderful as this PUD project is, it might be turned down. I hope that doesn't happen. My clients hope that doesn't happen. We hope it goes through. But we have a problem with not having any assessment of the most severe potential impact that this facility is likely to generate. So, that's the problem. Here's a suggested solution to the problem, which is similar to what Commissioner Flag was alluding to earlier. We would ask that this matter be continued, that FPL be requested to, by whatever process, identify a route for that transmission line, or maybe alternate routes, maybe A and B. Provide that to staff, so it would be available for staff to analyze. You can direct staff to look at that. It would be available for the public to look at before the next meeting. So, we can come back at another meeting, and we will have some actual, not hypothetical just talking, but actual on-the-map transmission line routes where we can talk about whether or not the impact they will have on the existing and planned future uses of the surrounding properties would be a terrible impact or a negligible one. And you might want to end up amending the PUD development agreement to reflect that the transmission lines will go down Route A and not Route B. You may not want to do that, but we don't have enough information to even know that at this point until those routes have been identified and vetted, and that's what we're asking at this point. In the meantime, if FPL is sincere in its efforts to try to find a better way, then there's a very good likelihood we would all be coming back here with a route the impact of which would be negligible and everybody be happy. But my concern is that if you approve the PUD as it is today, you are locking in something very problematic and that would actually be inconsistent with the directions that these apparently productive discussions are taking.
Question from Mr. Woodward. Nancy, call.
Yes, sir. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Jim Frisell. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Chairman, Commissioner? Jim Frisell, 157 Mallard Road, Melrose, 32666. I don't have a whole lot of new information to add, other than what Howard and Mr. Woodward and Debbie have very well presented, but again, we don't want to deny access. We just want the access to be compatible with our operation, and that's all we're asking, is that this thing gets delayed or postponed until we can work out these details, because it's very important to my livelihood. I've been a Putnam County resident for 24 years. My wife and I started with 30 cows back then, and now we're up to 1,100, and we... Economics have required us to grow, and this was our opportunity, and now we've come across this obstacle, and, you know, we don't want it to affect us. We want to move forward, and we want to continue to contribute to the community and to Putnam County. As Mr. Griffin spoke, we have 15 employees currently, and this operation will grow to over 50. That it will all be Putnam County residents and taxpayers, and we just want to be a part of good things that happen, but we want good things to happen with FPNL, too. But I think we can work this out if we have the, you know, proper tools in place to get these access lines communicated properly. Any questions?
None. Thank you, Mr. Frisell. Okay, Mary Lynn Pantanada. I got it.
I have a question.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else that opposes the PUD as it is proposed? Seeing none, we will go to rebuttals with my correct counsel. And... Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Stacy Ruas, 225 Water Street, 1750 Jacksonville. I am a land use attorney here with Gunster Law Firm on behalf of FPNL. First of all, I want to reiterate that FPNL is going to continue to work with the Griffins. Regardless of what happens here today, they will continue to work with the Griffins. What you have before you, as your chairman has put forth, is a PUD rezoning that we would like to be heard today, which is being heard and voted on with an approval. There's a reason why the transmission lines are not in or referenced in our application, and that is because it's very clear under state statutory law, case law, as well as an opinion from the former Florida Department of Community Affairs, which is now known as the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, big mouthful, that the establishment by a utility company of a right-of-way for transmission lines, as well as the construction of transmission lines within an established right-of-way, is not development as that is defined under Chapter 163, which is the Comprehensive Plan Regulations of the State of Florida, as well as deals with land development regulations. It is the same definition as well in Chapter 380 of Florida statutes. Both of those chapters say that if it is not development, which has been held in the statutes as well as case law and by DCA and now DEO, that it cannot be right transmission... The establishment of a transmission line and the construction of a transmission line cannot be regulated by local land use regulations within the state of Florida. The policy reason is very simple with regard to that, because if each local government could regulate transmission lines, there would be a hodgepodge of different types of regulations about how tall a transmission line could be, where it could go, and the utility companies would be stuck, possibly not being able to breach county lines to provide utility and transmission lines. We've provided this legal research that we have to your county attorney, Mr. Manning, as an FYI prior to this hearing, and it is our opinion as well as the case law that's out there that this is a very well-held opinion in state law, both in Chapter 163 and 380. So that is why the transmission lines are not subject to this PUD. They are not in the PUD because the transmission line location, as well as the actual construction, is not development, which is regulated at the local level through land use zoning regulations. Secondly, as I reiterated, and your chairman did as well, you have before you a PUD with a defined parcel ID numbers, as well as a legal description. That is what is before you today, not what could or possibly be put forth on Mr. Griffin's piece of property, but a PUD. And our code specifically says that the Board of County Commissioners shall determine whether the rezoning is consistent with the comp plan, as well as whether it applies with the applicable procedures of the Land Development Code. We have a staff report with a recommendation of approval that has gone through line by line in Section 402 of your Land Development Code that proves up with substantial competent evidence that this PUD is consistent with your comp plan, as well as the Land Development Code. And the application that was drafted by Josh Long, our planning expert with over 15 years of experience, also demonstrates that. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff West with FPNL, who will respond to certain rebuttals, but...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask her a question?
Absolutely.
Would you mind reading that part of the law again that you quoted earlier?
Sure. Specifically, Section 38004 of the Florida statutes defines what development is, and they also go through and say what development is not for the purposes of regulating land use and zoning-type matters. So, in subsection 3804.3H, it specifically says "The creation or termination of rights of access," which has been... Which is a right-of-way, "repairing rights, easements, covenants concerning development of land or other rights and land is not development." And then in subsection B, "Worked by any utility, i.e. FPL, and any other persons engaged in the distribution or transmission of gas, electricity, or water for the purpose of inspecting, repairing, renewing, or constructing on established rights-of-way any sewers, mains, pipes, cables, utility tunnels, power lines, towers, poles, tracks, or the like is not development." And based on that statutory language and the definition for development is the same as in Section 163.3164, it actually just references to 380. But not only is it in the statute, there is case law that reiterates this, and there is a former DCA Gulf Power... I can't remember if it's a declaratory opinion, but an opinion, that says that the establishment of rights-of-way by a utility company and then the construction of rights-of-way with transmission lines is not development as set forth in... This is one of those instances where there's actually plain language in the statute, is not development that is regulated by the local government from a land use and zoning perspective.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So basically, what you're saying is we lose all of home rule effect on this case, and we allow people in Tallahassee to dictate to us what we're going to see in our neighborhood. I'm not against solar power at all whatsoever, but I'm against somebody telling us that if just because you bought some property in downtown Palaca and you wanted to run your power lines across the bridge, we can't say a darn thing about it, and that bothers me. Now, you might say, "Well, it doesn't matter. It's state statute, and you've got to deal with it," but it takes away. But we hold true and fast this home rule authority, and that does bother me.
Through the chair, it's Commissioner Harvey, if I may respond.
Yes.
You... This county has the ability to approve or deny this rezoning for a solar facility based on the provisions in your comp plan, as well as your Land Development Code. We have no argument about that. That is what it is. However, as you know, and I'm not going to... You know, we're not going to argue or debate what the state should and shouldn't do, but the state has come out and preempted this aspect of the law, just like it's preempted numerous other aspects of the law, and the policy is such that they felt it was in the state's importance to do this in order to provide a uniform service of utility to customers across jurisdictional boundaries. But we completely understand what is before you today, which is this PUD, is subject to your land use regulations, as well as your comp plan, and that's what we are asking you to review as our PUD for a solar farm. Thank you.
Jeff, your last name, please, I didn't hear.
West. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Just, I'm going to make a couple rebuttal comments, but I just wanted to add to Stacy's comment. You know, similarly to our transmission line, I mean, the pivot sprinklers that I think Mr. Griffin is proposing on his... For future land use, I think if you have to get a consumptive use permit for that, are you locally also going to look at the visual impact and the issues of those pivot sprinklers on the community as well? So I think it opens up a myriad of questions when you start looking at, you know, linear facilities that aren't associated with the rezoning. So I just wanted to make that quick point while it was in my head. I want to thank Mr. Griffin for demonstrating that we've been working very closely with him, and I think you've heard that today. We've been working very hard. Six months ago, we first contacted him, and we've been working on a number of options with him. And, you know, I think, as he's pointed out in his testimony, he said, you know, he's proposed six to eight different options for us. We've run down those options. We've vetted those options internally. We've spent a number of resources looking at those options. So, we've been working with him, you know, in the last month, we've met with him four different times. We've had a public open house for this project on September 27th at the Q. I. Roberts School. He came out to that. He discussed, talked with us. Our concern is... This is just, you know, we've provided another option last night. Our concern is just another option he's going to propose and then shoot down and propose another option, you know, to delay the project as much as possible. So that's one of our concerns. We are going to continue to work with him, and we think this option that we proposed to him last night is a viable option. It's not a preferred option. You know, our preferred option, as you saw, Commissioner Harris runs up the west side of Coral Farms Road. There's very little impact. It's not going to impact a pivot sprinkler unless he plans on watering Coral Farms Road. We are... We would... Our proposition would be to move that a little bit off the road so we're not impacting the trees. It is a beautiful canopy on Coral Farms Road. We don't want to impact that canopy, and we don't want to trim those trees. So, yes, you would be moving it a little bit off the county right-of-way to reduce that impact. that impact. Ours is a culture of community and the environment. You know, when we're citing transmission lines, we have to balance those things. And this is not our first rodeo, we're, we're a utility company, we've cited lots of transmission lines. And, and I think we've done a pretty good job at that, balancing the impact with the community, as well as the environment. Now, on the community, we are a partner in Putnam County. Um, we're the third largest taxpayer in Putnam County. We serve over 20,000 customers in this county. Uh, we're proposing to invest in over a hundred million dollar capital investment into this county with this project. You know, depending on how Amendment 4 gets written, that's, at a minimum, our projections are $6 million over the life of the project, up to $30 million, depending on how the legislature writes in Amendment 4. And we understand that legislation won't, that enabling legislation won't occur until 2018. So there's a possibility to get this project built in 2017, that'd be a substantial tangible benefit to the county. We currently maintain 30 full-time jobs. That doesn't count Jim and I constantly over here in Putnam County lately. So, um, and we'll add 200 jobs, construction jobs, temporary construction jobs over the 12-month building period, that are going to use, uh, local resources, uh, food, lodging, not to mention local labor, day labor, and, um, and contractors. These are on-the-job training skills that people can be trained on. So we can train local residents to install panels. That's a great benefit, we see. And we're not removing the 50 jobs that Mr. Frisell's talking about. We're adding, we are incremental to his 50 jobs that he's proposing. We believe our transmission line can work and is compatible with existing land use. You know, if his pivot sprinkler is going to be a quarter mile long, he's probably going to have to remove a lot of that virgin force that, that Mr. Griffin just talked to us about. That's a large area, and a pivot sprinkler rotates on a pivot. That would tell you that there's probably only one tangential point where a pole could come in contact with that pivot sprinkler. So we can cite that to avoid any kind of impact from that pivot sprinkler, and we would like to do that. Ultimately, we've proposed an underground option with, with a shorter or lower circuit. That's not preferred, it costs a little bit more for the project and for our customers. But that is an option that we provided. We have to look at, the reason we can't commit to that right now is because we have to look, as I said, it's a balancing between the community and the environment. We have to look at the environment. We have to get out there and do our studies, our surveys, that takes time. And without approval of a project, I can guarantee you that it's going to be hard for me to direct resources to do that survey. And those studies. And we are a part of the community, and I think I've demonstrated that. Therefore, all the onus is on us, after we leave here today with our approval, to work with Mr. Griffin in the best way possible and, and come up with a solution. We don't want to take his land, we, that's not what we're here for. We're here to promote a clean renewable solar project. I had a, I was working this weekend on storm duty at the EOC, and this lady got ahold of my desk phone, and she called me and she said, and she was desperate, she was without power. And there's not much I can do, I'm there working the EOC, working emergency operations for the county, you know, focused on, on, on big issues. But I liked listening to her, and, and she said, "I just, you know, I keep hearing this recording over and over," and she's like, "I under, you know, I know there's not much you can do, but everybody around me has power and I don't have any trees down." And I said, "Well, you know, you have to report to the 1-800 number, but let me see what I can do." And, and as, as you heard earlier, we have special crews that designated to the EOCs to clear the lines, and we had one in the area, and I had them go over there and, and take a look at it. And she said, well, before that, she said, "Well, how do I know you're going to do it?" She's like, "I, I, all I hear is, I hear the, the, the pre-recording." And I said, "Well, I'm telling you I'm going to do it, and you're, you know it's going to happen when that crew shows up." And that crew showed up, and it turned out to be a simple fuse that they were able to get power onto her. So I'm telling you, I'm going to work with Mr. Griffin. I'm going to be out there, even after approval, and I will work with him to make us come up with a solution that works and does not impact his future land use. We don't want to impact Mr. Frisell, we definitely don't want to impact the dairy. You know, that is the surrounding land use in this area, agriculture. We want to be partners in communities with the agricultural community. We also want to bring tangible benefits to the county. But we need the approval to move forward so we can work with him, and work with him on these options. We leave here and, and we don't, and he's worried about bait and switch, if we leave here today and, 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 you know, throw that whole option out the window, that looks bad on us. That looks bad on us as the community. We're not going to do that. I'm not going to do that. And so we have to, we have to focus on the environment as well when we're citing. We're looking at eight poles going from our project up to the transmission, about 500 to 600, 700-foot spans. We can reposition those, we can, we can look at it, we can work with him, sit down on maps, if that's, if we'll go the over-ground route. We can do that, and we can make sure it's compatible with his future land use. I guarantee you, we do it all over the country, right? There's pivot sprinklers in the Midwest, in cornfields, there's transmission, it can be done. If not, you heard him say that, he likes the underground option. And we're willing to look at that. That option's going to take a little bit longer, and, uh, but if we can get approval today, we can move forward, we can dedicate the resources, my team and I, to move forward on that option.
I don't want to be Donald Trump and loom over him. I just want to let everybody know, we're available for any questions you have, and that'll, and our rebuttal portion of that, thanks.
Let's see if my commissioners have any for you, Mr. West. Start on my right this time, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. West, you and I have spent quite a bit of time going over some things, and, and maybe state statute does say, and I'm sure it does, that we can't regulate the transmission lines. But you bought that property, Florida Power and Light bought that property, with the idea that that transmission line is north of there. And I think you're, what you said earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong, but your first idea was to go down Coral Farms, but our Public Works Director wasn't too keen on that idea. So that wasn't your preferred option, your preferred option was to go down Coral Farms. And I've always maintained by talking to you and Mr. Bush, that the south project, going south would be a whole lot easier for the community because it wouldn't tear up the tree canopy. But now you're back over to your property going north on there. Am I correct in saying that, or have I missed the?
No, I think, I think there's been, you know, misunderstanding there, our preferred, we've been looking at many options, I, you know, to look at with the Griffins and, and the county. You know, in terms of going across to the county, the road right-of-way, um, you know, we had early discussions, and that was clearly not an option.
Right, Mr. Tompkins did not like that idea.
Right, correct.
Okay, so I'm not too far, I'm right there in the ballpark.
Yeah, but it wasn't a preferred, it was just one of the options.
Okay, it was one of the first opt, or just an option.
It was an option.
Okay, good deal. Where we're at now, though, why would we not wait, and like Commissioner Flag said, why wouldn't we wait, get all, everything tidied up, cleaned up, put a bow on it, bring it back to us with a, this is what we've worked out, or we didn't work out, we couldn't work it out? And then we have to go for it. Why do we have to pit the neighbor that's owned the property for 25 years against the big giant that comes into the area? Why can't we, you know, I listened to the planning commission tape, and had the chairman recognize your attorney, and I couldn't, the tape I listened to was doubled. It was a real bad version of it. But he tried to time out, he tried to time the whole process out and, and take a delay at that point. But the chairman wouldn't call upon him. So I guess my point is why, I know you said, you mentioned today it was a rush to go ahead, we like to go ahead and prove this today, but what's another week, or two weeks, or, or four weeks? Why couldn't we wait till November and get this process right? And everybody wins, we all walk out going, "Solar's good, jobs are good, we got jobs here for 200 people for a year, we got jobs for 50 people at a dairy, we got crops growing, the rainbows out there." Why, why can't we do that? I just don't understand why we can't.
Well, we've, we've been planning this project for a while, like I said, and we, we did reach out back in May to, and been having those discussions before the planning process. You know, we're in the planning process, uh, we need some certainty moving forward as this is a large capital investment for us. We need to start working on, uh, you know, looking at detailed engineering design. Those things take time. So that's why we need to, we can't delay, you know, delaying another month or two months is not really an option for us at this point because of all the, the detailed engineering and design work that's still left to be done and, and getting out on the property and doing some work, so we could potentially get this project ready, uh, to go to construction in the next year or two.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Pell, sir.
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Flag. Commissioner Harris.
I don't really have questions, but I'm, um, I think I have my mind wrapped around a way to go. Are we through, listening to everyone, or is there still rebuttal going on?
Rebuttal's going on.
Okay.
I do believe. I don't know that, but I need to ask. Florida Power and Light, any more rebuttal? Any commentary from you guys?
No, sir. No, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it, Mr. Woodward, you look like you have some comments.
At least the microphone's the right height for me. Council for FPL made a valid point, and that is that you don't have the right to tell FPL where their right-of-way has to be. You can't order them to put it in a certain place, you can't order them to build their transmission line in a certain way. And that's not what we're asking this board to do. But what we're asking this board to do that is proper to do under the Land Development Code, is to be aware that there's gonna be a transmission line that in all likelihood will have an impact, and what this board does is determine whether the PUD will be compatible with existing and planned uses of properties surrounding the PUD. There's going to be an impact, we don't know what it's going to be. We don't want to tell them what to do, where to put it, so much as we want them to come back and tell us where they are going to put it. And, and in the meantime, we hope we can have some productive discussions that will bring everyone together. But it just makes no sense to approve a PUD today that has a site plan that is an essential part of that PUD, that in all likelihood would need to be changed and amended in order to accommodate one of the likely alternatives that's now being discussed. This is a problem that can be solved, and it looks like it's in the process of being solved. It just isn't solved yet.
Ms. Chairman? Yes?
Mr. Woodward, I have a question for you. Concerning the transmission lines, you, you're an attorney, and I'm sure we're sitting here as judge and you're arguing your points to us. Do you believe state statute dictates that we cannot regulate transmission lines?
Council for FPL did not do me the courtesy of sharing the same case law, so I cannot comment on that specifically. Uh, I am aware of the statutes that council cited. As I said a few moments ago, you can't dictate to FPL, you have to put your transmission lines here, on this, you can't tell them this is the right-of-way you're going to use, and this is how you're going to do your transmission lines. But that doesn't mean they can't tell you, and that you can't take into consideration the impact that this PUD will have on surrounding properties. And a large part of that impact will be that a transmission line is an absolute necessary, inevitable part of making this PUD work. They're not going to truck that stuff out of there on flatbeds, it's going to go on wires.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Woodward, Commissioner Flag?
Mr. Chairman, my question is not to Mr. Woodward. Thank you so very much. My question goes over to Mike Brown or Brian Hammons. Uh, speak about the relativity of the site layout plan, uh, as it relates to, uh, this project, as if this was approved, what would necessitate a change in the map or an amendment to, uh, the map? If you can just drill down on that for a second.
Well, I, I, the map, as well as the, um, the development agreement lays out the allowable uses. The map places them in those locations. If a use, and I'll go specifically because I, if I heard right, there's a question about the substation. Substation is allowed in that location on the map. If the substation, if you adopted, if the county commission adopted the PUD along with that map and the development agreement, the substation use at that location would be allowed. It's not a requirement that that substation go there, uh, if, if, in the respect of, if it didn't, if there was no substation ever developed on the site, you'd still have the PUD with that location where a substation could locate, could be located. Substation could not go elsewhere within that property, but they could, I heard reference to possibly the substation going off-site somewhere. That wouldn't jeopardize the PUD. But if you wanted to move that substation from the location on the map, as it sits today, somewhere else within that PUD, you'd have to amend, and it would probably be a minor modification to the PUD, um, which I believe our Land Development Code allows for a minor modification to be an administrative, uh, change to the PUD. So you would not see that change if, uh, but it would have to be changed before they could move it with, to another location within that PUD. And I don't know if that is as blurry as clear, or as blurry as my eyes are.
I promise you it was clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
I want to add to it, Mr. Brown, if I could. So if Mr. Frisell were to continue and, and grow his dairy operation, and, well, in the negotiations, let's go to real time right now, if FPNL were to strike a deal with he to build a substation that would accommodate them both, um, the PUD doesn't change, they just run transmission lines or two.
If, if it was moved off, off-site?
So it's another tool in their toolbox, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I mean, if it was moved to someplace not within the PUD boundaries, yeah, the PUD would still stand.
Okay.
If they wanted to move it within the PUD boundaries, they'd have to do a minor modification to the PUD.
Okay, good stuff. Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Brown, could the PUD be amended to reach out and grab that substation, or does it have to be continuous property through there? Or would the transmission line allow that to be continuous?
It's a good question, because our land development codes do not control the transmission lines where they do the physical plant of a station.
Right.
That's a good question, Larry.
We allow subs, we don't review, substations are also, um, allowed within any land use, so you wouldn't need to reach out because it, unless it's a, the only conservation land use, we don't allow substations, but we allow them in any, in any land use so they could develop a substation in an off-site in another land use, it would be allowed.
Brian's got something. Ms. Chairman, while they're doing that, I don't think you can decide, uh, to locate a substation like you would in a house plan, which end of the house the kitchen is going to be on. I think that there has to be some formula that FPL uses to decide which is practical for the substation, because again, the substation plays a specific role, so it's not like you can just move it over to, like a playing chess, you can't just do it.
It's a giant capacitor, I get it completely, so. You have a comment, Mr. Brown?
Just a little clarification I got from Brian, it reminded me, the PUD has a definite legal description, so if you're bringing in additional lands outside, that would be in a, at, you would have to amend the PUD if you, if you wanted to bring it in, but I don't think it would be required to come in. I mean, the substations that's south of this was built there. there without any approvals. I mean, it had approvals, but under, they didn't have to come in, get a special PUD approval for that PU, for that substation or any other substation in the county. So it, it could go either way, but you'd have to amend the PUD if you wanted to bring it in. That would be a requirement.
To bring that legal description of that specific property.
Yeah, if you want to tie it. But I don't think it's necessarily, given that you would have to.
Good, thank you. Okay. Mr. Manning, what else would you like to see from this hearing?
Well, maybe it'd be helpful for you all if I chimed in on a couple of the issues that I've heard today.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm not advocating for one party or another, but I just do wanna provide some clarification on, from my perspective. The, I have looked at the statutes that were referenced, and I, I do believe that regulation of the transmission lines or the establishment of right of way for those transmission lines is something that we cannot regulate. I would agree with that. On the other hand, we have to look at what you all are considering or what you need to consider when, when being asked to approve a rezoning, which a PUD is. One of those things that you're required to consider is the impact on the surrounding lands. And I realize that that, that creates a bit of a catch-22 for you all, and I apologize to you for that, but that's the way it is. So I think we're, I think that there's a bit of a gray area here, because yes, it's, it's, you know, is considering the location of transmission lines, regulating those transition, transmission lines. I don't have the answer for that. That may be some mixed, you know, protracted discussions and potential litigation on that question. I don't have the answer to that. On the other hand, the, what I believe is that, is that the land development code does have that requirement that, that it impacts on the surrounding land uses be considered. Now, do you all feel you have enough information to, to consider that factor? I think that's a question that each, each one of you needs to answer in your own minds. But with that said, that's not the only factor to be considered. And when we're, the code requires that when the board adopt an ordinance establishing a PUD, and, and I'm gonna cite our code, that's section 12.11.03(c). There's six factors. Number two is that the PUD meets the general intent of the county's land development code, even though it differs in one or more respects from the usual application of the standards in the code, and those standards being, one of which being the Article IV consideration of the, on neighboring lands. So my point is that that's one consideration, but it's not the exclusive consideration. So it doesn't keep you from moving forward and approving it, in my opinion. Whether you decide to or not, obviously, it's your choice. And another comment I wanted to make was, the FPL has eminent domain powers. I know that was brought up here today. Whatever happens here today regarding the location of establishment of a right of way for the transmission lines is going to either be negotiated between FPL and the parties, or they're gonna bring an eminent domain action. And as you all know, obviously, a negotiated settlement is much better and is in everybody's best interest. So there is, I believe, some incentive on all parties to come to a negotiated agreement on that. But the second point of that is, as you also know, when there's eminent domain involved, the, the property owner whose property is being taken or given in a settlement is compensated for that property, and part of that compensation is, you know, economic and business losses, which are, you know, obviously, guess what I'm getting to, is that those are gonna be considerations that will be coming down the road, one way or another, if, if this matter is approved. And, you know, they could, as I said, settle it, negotiate a settlement, you know, or it gets to eminent domain and, you know, and it gets worked out that way. But, but there is compensation at least for the fair value of that taking in those proceedings.
As far as that gray area you're talking about, is, would reviewing case law on a break help you in that area?
Um, not, no. I mean, I don't know that unless, I don't know that both the parties can prepare briefs on whether that case law is. Well, extensive process, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I don't know that there's gonna be an answer to that. I think it is a gray area.
You're re-ing gray on the gray area.
It's, it's, yeah, exactly. I mean, you, I think you've got, this is a struggle that many communities deal with. So I don't know that there's a clerk that'll answer for you.
Commissioner Harris.
Okay, we're ready to...
You wanna deliberate?
Yes.
Let's go.
I would like to. I actually was thinking along the same lines that you were. I was thinking, first of all, the solar project is wonderful, and I am so glad that Putnam County is considered as the beginning. And I just thought, when I first started reading it, I thought, man, who would object to this? I mean, it's a quiet industry. It helps everybody, and it's just, you know, sitting there, not a lot of traffic and not a lot of noise. And then I see nothing's ever as simple as, you know, what you think. And I was thinking the best thing, of course, would be if the two parties could get together and reach a settlement and agree on what one is losing and what one is gaining and how to compensate and make that good. That's why I was asking about the watering, because I understood the significance of that. And I was just, I don't know, I'm getting into areas that I don't really know about it, other than I've seen that kind of thing, and I've watched it with great interest. So if the one party could understand the need of the other party and realize the extra cost and maneuvering and a way, and there's lots of brilliant minds here who could figure out how all that works and what extra it would cost to make it happen so that you come out whole, that would be the very best way to do it and compensate you for that, or, and, you know, come up with numbers and figures that make it real, that that would be the best of both worlds. But if it doesn't happen, it would be a case of eminent domain, and a lot of people don't understand that. I think all of you probably do very well, but they take the property, and the judge listens to all of the extenuating circumstances, and the judge decides, well, okay, it's gonna cost them this much for additional wells and this much for what they're losing in their navigation across their property. And, and they come up with the figure and grant you that. So either way, both parties could come out whole, the best one being talking about it and working it out. Our job is to look at this land use about, is it a PUD? Does it follow all the things, the criteria that we have, which the planning department has laid out very nicely and evaluated. And it looks to me like we should consider those things and that we should approve this. But knowing that you both are going to have to get together and come up with a compromise that's gonna work, one way or the other, and we can have both. The one pivotal thing that swayed me was the legislation that Stacy presented to us, the Florida statute. I have the number written down, but it does say what constitutes a land use and changes that we have the power to change. And we do not have the power to do the value of the transmission line or where it would go or consider that in our land use. So on the one hand, Michael Woodberg brings out that he believes the transmission line, you know, is something that should be considered and is very important in our decision-making. Then we have a law that says, you shall not consider this. I think that it leans more toward the legislation that Stacy presented, because it actually specifies what we can and cannot do. So I feel that we should go forward, approve the PUD. It certainly meets the criteria of our comp plan, and it has been spelled out. The other areas where we get into the gray, but it will be settled one way or another, hopefully, with Florida Power and Light and the owners discussing it and working out something that's amenable to both parties, and it means both giving and taking a little. So my suggestion would be that we approve the PUD as it is today and hope that the parties can work it out. And I have found Florida Power and Light always, in my public service, has been very good to work with, and, and they are of their word. And I think that we can trust that they will most probably work it out together without just saying, let's do eminent domain. But one way or the other, both parties, both sides could be whole.
You, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with what Commissioner Harris is saying. Based upon our decision is based upon meeting the general intent. The documentation is here, and also recognizing that the transmission line as a part of FPL's need to get from the solar site to the transmission, the existing transmission line, is not a part of our deliberations and discussion. If this was just a simple rezoning, you know, case, then we certainly would have been gone a long time ago. We cannot regulate the location of the lands. I think that, again, I'm depending on FPL operating in good faith, just as their reputation says so. I do not look at them as being the giant in the room. I think they know that we have to live together and be good neighbors, and I'm, I'm expecting that. So I'm looking for good faith, win-win, consensus, et cetera, there. And so I, I do concur with Commissioner Harris. We need to move this forward.
You want me to go? You wanna go?
Don't worry.
I'll go ahead. As far as the impacts on the surrounding area, if there were ever a footprint that had minimal impact, it certainly is a solar farm. I do like that. The establishment of the lines, we have no jurisdiction over. I'm very interested in our tax base and Amendment Four, and what it will bring, Mr. West, as you spoke of. But that's, I think this project does the best for the most people of this county. But I base that on your goodwill with these folks, especially the future farmer, Mr. Frizzell. Very important to me, very important to me. I can't emphasize that any more than that, that the negotiations go well for him. I know Mr. Griffin is retiring, and Mrs. Griffin and, well, y'all both have been retired, but you've been active in this. But it's important to me that this looks like a win-win setup, if there ever was one. Florida statute allows us so much room to shuck and jive here. I think we've done a good job of it today.
Those of you that know me or know me very well know that I have an agricultural background, and I'm very fond of anybody that takes the soil and tills it and is able to make a living in it, because if they're not gamblers, there's nobody in Vegas that is. There are different types of irrigation systems, other than a pivot type, that can be used in those operations. And I know that you're trying to keep your costs at a bare minimum for that. I understand it, because I know how it is to make a living on a farm. However, the green aspect of what FPL is putting forth here and what it will do for Putnam County as far as putting us on the map is not, you know, we, Commissioner Flag says it a lot, you know, perception's reality. And us being a, to me, a forefront leader in green energy is, is huge. I think this is, you know, I've looked at all the guidelines that Mr. Manning has put forth of where it falls in and what Mr. Brown has said, and I feel like that it meets that criteria. I do feel like that FPL does wanna be good neighbors, as much as the Griffin wants to be good neighbors and Mr. Frizzell wants to be good neighbors. You know, you're judged by how you act in the past. And if FPL wants to prove that they're, the people of their word and do what they say they'll do, I feel certain they will. Because, you know, it wouldn't look favorably upon them of saying one thing and doing something else in another instance. So I'm, I'm gonna have to support them.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I listened to all the comments, and yes, it meets the criteria. It will impact surrounding lands. There's no doubt that that criteria will be, will be hit. I too like green energy. I too wish I could base my opinion solely on what kind of tax base, but we're not charged with that, as our attorney said that. Even with a settlement, does it impact current surrounding agricultural use? Yeah, it does. And even if both sides come back with an agreement, it still impacts the surrounding land. But it's agreeable impact at that point. I would love to say I wholly support the solar farm, and I do on the PUD. But I don't support taking someone's land or doing a transmission line, even though we can't regulate that. I'm understanding that. It just sets wrong with me, and it sets wrong with a lot of me, because it is somebody who's been there for a while, who is currently using the land, and it is on an agricultural basis. And to be affected by any way bothers me. And that's all I'm gonna say about that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Deliberations, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
On the floor. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation and that we rezon the 586.81 acres of land from Ag to planned unit development, subject to the inclusion of the Florida Power and Light solar facility PUD development agreement.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Pelisser. We'll have a roll call vote. Commissioner Harris, District One.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Flag.
Aye.
Commissioner Two, Chip Lival.
Aye.
Commissioner Four, Larry Harvey.
No.
Commissioner Five, Commissioner Pelisser.
I'm now five? Aye.
Wait, I get them backwards? No.
No, you got them right.
Yeah, I got them right.
You just called me five.
All right, five. Go five.
No, I'm four. He called you Mr. Harvey. Okay. Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, it carries. Before we leave this, Brian, our Economic Development Officer from the county, I know you burnt some midnight oil on this, and from this board, up or down, thank you for your extra effort. We appreciate that, and the whole chamber staff. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a two-minute break? I just gotta run back to the...
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break. We'll be back here at 3:45.
Nice gentleman.
We'll reconvene the Board of County Commission in October 11th, 2016, and we're gonna go to a special request by Mr. George D. Tollos Jr. go to a special request by Mr. George D. Toulouse Jr., developer, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thanks so much. George Toulouse Jr., 1280 Whitlock Ridge Drive, Marietta, Georgia. Thanks for having me. Thank you for allowing me to intrude on your meeting and coming with that request very late. We appreciate it.
Of all meetings to ask a favor.
Well, no, actually, it's very, I'd like to commend you. I sit in many of these meetings in states all over the southeast where we try and do business. And I thought it was extremely professional and kind. I think everyone's terrific and really appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you. We're here for really what should be a simple request. We are an affordable housing and a market rate apartment developer. Our company is based in Cincinnati. I work the southeast region out of the Atlanta area in Marietta. We identified Palatka in a very short amount of time, roughly for almost four weeks ago. And Putnam County became a very interesting county for us because the state of Florida sort of categorizes counties in Florida for the purposes of affordable housing as small, medium, and large. And we saw opportunity in the small and medium counties and Putnam falls into that category. As we came in, we found this property that Mr. Schwing owns and what we would like to do is put an application in for tax credits. As part of the application for tax credits to make us competitive within the state's process, we are required to receive some form of local government contribution, can be a local municipality or a county government, and that's why we're here today. There is a minimum requirement that we have to meet and it is stipulated by the state per county. So it varies based on the size of the county and population. Putnam happens to be a minimum requirement of $10,000 that has contributed to the development, specifically for the development, and it can be done in various number of ways. I believe that what's before you today is a request for a waiver of fees, nothing more than the minimum, which is $10,000. The process for this is we will produce an application to the state in mid, excuse me, it'll be due, that's the second one we're working on. This one is due Thursday at 11:00 a.m. So that's, I apologize for the late hour, but that's just where we find ourselves. We will produce the application, put it in with the state. We will know, we hope, we don't have specifics from the state, but we think in March, at the very latest, April 15th, as an outside date, we will know if we've received a tax credit award that would allow us to move this project forward. So without the tax credit award, the project does not move forward. Okay? So what we're asking for is for Putnam County to contribute via a fee waiver, the $10,000 local government contribution, the state of Florida calls it, for the purposes of helping us receive tax credits and move forward with the project. The project will consist of two and three-bedroom apartments. It can be done in two phases. This first phase is all that we're applying for. If we were to receive a tax credit award, we'd be doing a second phase. We would apply for a second phase and hopefully get that. So the maximum number of units would be 120 units. They would be for families, they're two and three bedrooms. The income qualifications for those are 50 and 60% of area median income, which for this area is 53.3. We're able to use a non-metro area median income. So roughly 10% of our units are going to be at 50% of that number and the 90% of the units will be at 60% of that number. So you're going to be as low, income qualifications as low as 17, a little over 17,000, all the way up to roughly 27,000 in that range. That's the target market for these units and it'll be for families.
I want to ask.
I'll start with Mr. Harvey and then Mrs. Harris.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
What's the total cost of the project?
Phase one would be just south of $11 million.
Okay, so say $10 million project, correct?
Correct.
And you're not asking, you're not going to receive tax abatements from us, you're going to pay property taxes on this affordable housing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Not asking for tax abatement at all.
That's the only questions I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Harris.
That was my question. I wanted to know, some of the rent subsidized facilities that come in do not pay taxes.
Right, they could be, have a nonprofit involved. Oftentimes nonprofits don't pay and I know that that's been a large source of discussion in the state of Florida, just in past experience.
It's been really hard. And actually, our county is full of affordable housing because our prices are really pretty low. But we do have a great need. So we qualify for a waiver because we're what used to be a RASIC. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not familiar with the term. You just.
Well, he's talking of federal zone. He represents a zone. And that's the southeast. It's a little different than interstate. When you say RASIC, that's a term used by the legislature to describe a impoverishment.
County of economic concern.
It's the same, one and the same.
Opportunity now, right. So we don't have to match grants or anything? Is that what you're talking about?
You are not forced to do this. No, ma'am, you are not forced to do this. I'm asking for this because we as a developer, if we want to be in the tax credit program in the state of Florida, in order for the application to be competitive, I need to have the cooperation of a local government.
So you do want us to put $10,000 into the project?
I'm asking you to waive building permit fees equal to $10,000 and that can be the form of contribution. You don't have to put actual cash in.
Which has nothing to do with us being a rural area of opportunity.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to get that straight.
And Mr. Toulouse.
Yes, sir.
Let's wait and see if Commissioner Harris.
Well, let's see, is it in the city limits of Palatka?
It is in the county, not currently in the city limits of Palatka. That is correct.
So it is our building department? I just, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
But the intent, if I can chime in here, I like to put everything on the table, is to ask the city of Palatka to annex this property because for your development to move forward, you must have a municipal water and sewer line.
That is correct. And they stop very close to the property, but we would need to tap into those. If we're awarded the project and move forward with construction, we certainly will need to tap into those. Correct.
Okay. So if they're annexed into the city, we still get our taxes and they get their taxes.
That's correct.
That was my question too, sir. So thank you.
Okay.
All right. So, you know, just to make sure we're very clear, they went to the city last night to ask for the same thing, but realized because they weren't yet annexed, that the city could not officially respond to their request. And they have a Thursday deadline to possibly make this all happen and they're asking us to waive these fees so they can go ahead and try for the Thursday deadline. That's what's on the table here.
Okay, let me ask this. What does it cost generally for permit fees for that size of a project?
It will vary by county or city.
Mr. Lee, based on his assertion that it's going to be a $10 million project, the down and dirty estimate provided to me for permit fees by zoning, building and zoning is roughly $68,000. That's going to be give or take based on the actual.
Okay.
And we're only waiving 10.
We will have some money from the fees. And our department is, you know, smaller and we really are having a struggle with all of our money, but is this something that we can afford to do, do you think?
Well, I mean, there's going to be, you know, a net revenue.
That's right.
To us, after all, after all the permits are acquired, even if you do waive the, you know, the $10,000, there's still going to be a net revenue to us.
Okay. So it's probably a good idea to go ahead and do that and have that improvement and have something that's needed and it's not going to kill us because we're still getting some permit fees. I think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Harvey and then Flag.
No, Pelisser was next.
Mr. Pelisser.
I was about to get ready to use this. Some of my questions got answered in the midst of all that, but I'll try to, it's $10,000 per unit that you need or 10,000?
No, sir, total.
Just?
Total.
One time only?
That is correct.
Okay. And you estimated 68,000?
Well, that's the number they gave me, you know, just a quick down and dirty estimate on the assertion that it may be a $10 million construction project, I mean.
And that's 10 million for the entire 120 units?
That's for the phase one.
Phase one?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And so another 10 million.
So you would see that double. If we were, and I pray that we are, if we're fortunate enough to get an award on the first phase, we will then submit for a second phase, which are looked on a little more favorably once you've done one. And so if we could come through with the second phase, you would, if we're, in today's dollars, you'd see a doubling of the numbers you're thinking about. Of course, I can't speculate where construction costs will be down the road, so, you know. Right, and we, well, we wouldn't have.
But you said 68,000, it's 6,800.
No, 1,000.
Now, $6,800 is a permit fees, right?
68,000.
68,000? Okay.
And we're giving up 10.
And we're giving them 10, so we'll read 58.
And if I might chime in?
Yes.
Now, that was the taxes, I'm talking.
No, we're talking permit fees. Okay.
The taxes would be about 90,000, correct? On a $10 million project?
If it's assessed at $10 million.
Mr. Man.
There's some discussion here about the city having to annex. So my point is committing to waive 10,000 in fees if the city annex before and all the building permits and the zoning is pulled through the city, then it's pretty much a moot point.
That's right.
So.
Right.
It helps them move forward.
Correct.
All right, what's your wishes, commissioners? We've been here a long time.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
A motion on the floor.
Second.
I have a second.
Could I have that motion that, that the motion be the county would agree to waive?
Up to $10,000 of permits?
Well, just $10,000 of building and zoning fees.
That's important.
For this project and then authorize the chair to execute certification of that fact.
Correct.
Just make it building fees, just not put zoning.
Building fees?
Yeah, just building fees.
Building permit fees?
Building permit fees.
I mean, we waive the building permits and authorize the chairman to sign for this project.
$10,000.
$10,000.
Not waive them. $10,000 worth of them.
When they do that to me, I say, as stated by council.
Stated by council. As stated by council. How's that, Tony? Did you get that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I had my hand up earlier.
I'm sorry, sir.
I still don't have all the information that you all have, so maybe you can make your decision based on what you know. The city of Palatka has issued a moratorium on this kind of housing in the city already. The Palatka Housing Authority and the city have been going back and forth for the past two years concerning this. We need gated communities. We need a high-end housing in order to bail us out of what we're in. And I don't, I'm not comfortable with us, if the city turned them down last night because ultimately this project would be inside the city limits, why are we coming back behind them and getting engaged and involved in this without having the details? They ultimately, in order to get the water and sewer, they got to come in the city. That's what their current ordinance require. And so my thing is if we know, unless you all know something different from me, I don't quite understand how, number one, we have not decided that this was an emergency issue. So all we can do is discuss stuff until we decide it's an emergency issue. I was stopped by Mr. Schwing a week or two ago and as if I was trying to block a project. I simply don't make decisions based on a verbal exchange of information. And I have not seen before me or before us anything that would cause me to even know what this project is about. I really don't. And I'm confused as to why 48 hours before a deadline, this is being brought to us. I'm confused. If it's a non-issue and the administrator or the chairman can sign it, do it. But I don't understand why we are getting ourselves involved in something that ultimately the city is going to have jurisdiction on if they get water and sewer and ain't no permit fees coming to the county. So what are we talking about?
Well, let's get Mr. Toulouse to further explain what took place at the city of Palatka last night. Did they turn the project down as Commissioner Flag has stated or did they say, go get, you know, more information?
The comments of the city attorney was that because the city did not have jurisdiction over the project, they should not be making an determination that they would waive something that may not ever end up coming into the city. And to kind of put this in perspective, the state's got a certain amount of money and a whole bunch of people make application. In order to make application, you have to have certain boxes checked. One of the boxes that need to be checked is whether or not the, any governmental agency within the county would be willing to make a $10,000 contribution. It's a condition precedent almost, and it's not quite a condition precedent, but in order to make application, the state expects to see that box checked. The actual money being waived, we're talking about, could be a year from now.
More than, more than a year.
Okay, more than a year from now. So all we're talking about is the state wants to see that the community is committed to the project, at least in the amount of being willing to waive this amount of money. If down the road, the project goes to the city, then the county wouldn't even be looking at it and we would be then looking at the city. This is kind of rushed, but the whole process, since Mr. Schwing was initially contacted by MV was less than a month ago. And he and I went to the city with all of the paperwork and basically were told by the city manager that it wasn't going to be a problem. There were certain things that they had to sign off as far as the availability of capacity of water and sewer, and they signed those things off, but it took them over a week to do that. Then it was decided that they needed to take the matter before the commission. Well, then we had a little matter of the storm. We've got this deadline and unfortunately, these things are all going this fast. There are a whole bunch of other procedures which are going to have to take place if the project gets approved. For instance, we are already coming before you for a plat.
Abandonment.
A plat abandon, just so we're familiar with this, this is the property that's between Moody Road and a mall. We're going to go for a plat abandonment and a road abandonment before the county because we need to get that taken care of now. It could develop that the city wouldn't want the project, but the city may extend water and sewer lines to the project and to have it outside of the city because the city does have that right. So the way I look at it is, and the analogy I use is, you're at Las Vegas and there's a roulette wheel and you want to put a number down and it's $10,000 to put a number down. If your number hits, you get a project worth $10 million. If the project doesn't hit, you get to take your money back off the table. So it's basically a no-lose proposition. If later on down the road, if you say no at this point, it affects our ability to go forward. If later on down the road, the city decides they don't want to annex it and you guys don't want to do what you want to do, the fact that you waived the money didn't tie your hands to do anything. It's just a step in the process, which unfortunately has to be taken. It opens a window of opportunity. You want to shut the window off of 100 new units? That's fine. But I believe this is different from the problem that the city is having with the housing authority because the housing authority's property is tax exempt. And I think that's the problem that the city has, is building new tax exempt and you don't generate revenue.
That's why we both asked that question.
That's right.
Right off the bat. The other thing is you have to have a certain amount of income to live here. You have to qualify, you have to make.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so it's not free housing?
No, ma'am, no.
It's people that are working.
That's correct.
That are contributing and paying a more reasonable rate, but it's not.
It's going to be, it's at 50 and 60% of $53,300. So that's who it will cater to, those making anywhere from 17,500 to 27,000.
Is it low-income housing or not?
It is low-income housing. It is affordable housing. That is correct. But it is not Section 8.
A Board of County Commission meeting, October 11th, 2016, we are in the hearing that's been continued for lunch and we'll reconvene right now with Howard Griffin finishing his statements and taking questions from the commissioners if we have any. I'll start with my left, Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Griffin, I'm still a little bit confused about the location of the property. Did you recognize this, Matt? Could I just go ahead and finish asking? Could I just go ahead and finish asking you about it? Okay, we can speak in this.
Okay, good.
So everybody can hear us.
Yep.
So this is the Florida Power and Light proposed property.
That's true.
And we're going north this way.
That's exactly right.
All right, so where are you, and where does Jim own? And where is the property that you have the option to purchase?
Okay, the property, my property, comes along here, comes over here, comes into the woods, and goes, and goes up. FPL's power transmission lines cross somewhere in the vicinity of right about here. What they're trying to do, they, currently, they have their substation located about here, and they need to get the power to the transmission lines, which would be right there. And what we, what they're proposing is one line that would go directly up Coral Farms Road on the west side. The other, we've discussed, would be coming up this canal system and tying in up here. The latest possibility is the fact, instead of having the substation right here, they may be able to run the cable since they're not handling, you know, high-intensity type voltages apparently, they could put those underground. This up here is our property, right inside of here, in this line here. The FPL line comes across right about here, and we've talked about maybe relocating that substation up here. And then, and then we wouldn't have a problem with putting it underground and feeding it up there, because we'd be able to use, the fields that we're concerned about growing would be all of these fields through here, and also these fields over here.
Okay, so you own right now all of this, all the way up to the transmission?
I do, and also along up here to the transmission line and beyond.
Okay, and that's the area that you want to grow things in?
That's exactly right. And that's the 1,037 acres that the dairy has the lease purchase on.
And that's to the north of the subject property?
I'm, I can't.
It's to the north of the subject property?
Right, yes, sir.
Exactly right. That would be north.
Okay, where, okay, but the property that we're talking about is here, and you own all of this now?
I do.
Okay, and the 1,000 acres is?
Is this property.
Oh, so you don't own all the way up here, this is what?
No, they only have a lease purchase on it. They don't own the property, it has not changed hands yet. They're leasing it for a period of three years, we have agreed on the price, we've agreed on the terms, if they want us to hold the paper, everything. So it's really, it's sold, except they haven't finalized the deal on it.
I see, so you are going to sell to them?
Yes.
It's not something you have a lease option on?
No, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify that, and I wanted to know where it all sits.
We, and already the dairy owns this section of property over here, on this edge of the same property. So we are joined with the dairy here and the dairy back over here. And so it, this is their, this is their milking and parlors and so forth back here. So that's the reason this is so strategically located, is the fact that you really don't have to go out on any kind of public access in order to get their crops here and over here where they'll be consumed.
Okay, so this is the area they're going to grow in? This looks like swamp, is that so?
Yeah, a lot of it is swamp, a lot, but most of it is just old virgin forest. The county forestry agent said there's a tree here that was an old tree during the Civil War. So therefore, yeah, a lot of this is big oaks.
And this is the growing area, aren't you?
Yes, ma'am.
The park that I really didn't understand, do you all want to see this?
You might want to put your microphone up.
Do you know it?
I do know it, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so you said that when they grow, they need lots of water?
That's right.
And you have this portable watering thing that you move from place to place?
Well, when, they haven't installed it yet, but this is an irrigation system that runs from a central well, and the power of the water powers the arm on the irrigation, and it sweeps very slowly.
Right, I think I've seen that on my way to Seville, in the farms down there.
That's right, it's the same deal.
That's what I was thinking.
But it can be a quarter, half mile long, and so if they put, if they put their, if they put their poles in, that's where it gives us real headaches.
Well, what I was thinking is, why couldn't you have, if you got enough money, different wells instead of having them that far, so that the posts could fit? I mean, that's just wandering in my head, it seems.
And that's, and it's a good question. There will be multiple wells. But again, whenever you start cutting it up in 500-foot lengths, they're saying that their poles are 500 to 700 feet apart.
Right.
And instead of it being 2,800 feet to 3,800 feet, the economy is having one well that feeds a long sweeping arm. But if you, you could do it, yeah, you could do it with enough wells and enough small things, but it creates a mechanical nightmare to have all these little circles out there when you could have a much larger, you can, you know, you can water a couple hundred acres very easily.
So it could be done if you had, it's a matter of money?
Yeah, right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
All right, guys, if we can use the podium again, it would help Diane's.
Do you all understand that map? Okay.
All right, you're good. Commissioner Harris had to Tony at some point.
It's not, you can keep it for reference right now, but at some point, Tony will need that for the record.
I'll be sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sure.
Just a point of observation, it sounds to me that everybody concerned does not have an issue with the project. The issue is the connectivity from the project site to get to the transmission lines, am I on point?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so it also appears to me that since there's no opposition to the project, that one or two things need to happen. They need to continue the negotiations so that both sides reach a consensus and have, after reaching that consensus, then everything else to me becomes a moot point, as it, a moot point, if that is resolved. So my question is, if that is something that we are not to resolve, the FPL and the Griffins are going to have to resolve, what kind of time constraints do either party have, and do we give them an opportunity to sort through that, and then we come back with the proper public hearing or whatever else we need to have, and we can move forward? That's my question.
Let me offer my two cents there, if I could. As a quasi-judicial board today with planning and zoning, we are charged with okaying or not okaying the zoning. Does it match our comprehensive plan and flume? Nothing else. All this discussion about transmission lines, really, we're being very liberal in letting them discuss that, but as a board, we commissioners right here, that is not our charge today. And Mr. Manning, I think, will agree with that, and that's, but I'm willing to do whatever the board wishes to do, because we all want this to work, I want Mr. Frisell's dairy to work, I want Florida Power and Light to have a solar field, but at the end of the day, that is your charge as commissioners today. And then the, anything outside of that is not, we're not making any decisions on.
Yeah, I will just chime in slightly, that the issue for the board to decide is whether or not the criteria are met for them to be allowed the PUD. Now, those in opposition, I think, have some further discussion on that topic, and I believe the applicant.
They do, we're not through with that.
Applicant's going to have some rebuttal on that topic as well, so I don't want to step on any toes in that regard.
Okay, so let's continue the process as we're going and listen to all parties considered. Let's go to you, Commissioner Palacier, any questions for Mr. Griffin?
I think you've answered all mine so far.
Mr. Harvey?
You know, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, one concern of mine has always been, since the start of this process, is the transmission lines, and I've made that clear to Florida Power and Light, I've made it clear to everybody. If this was a, if this was a warehouse, you would be concerned about the ingress and egress and how they move the product out. Just because it wasn't listed in the PUD doesn't mean they're not moving a product out. And I even called Lachua County about the Melrose one, and they said, well, it's really not our issue, because the moving out is in Putnam County. So I think we do need to go a little bit beyond our scope of what's on there, and that was a concern for the planning commission too, when I listened to the tape, was how do you get your product out?
Mr. Harvey, let me remind you, you open yourself up, or us up, to a civil suit if you go outside of your scope.
I get.
I'm sorry, we're discussing it, this is as far as we can go, though, and I'm being fair, but we're not going to get ourselves in a liability.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, if you built a building in the middle of a piece of property.
I understand.
There has to be some expectation of getting to and from, and I think that's what our community is asking us to look at today.
I, and I went to the PSC, because the PSC is the one who typically controls the utilities. And I asked them to discuss the right-of-ways, and they said, that is the responsibility of your county, Board of County Commissioners. They said, you have an issue that they have ever need to resolve for you. Now, I'm not telling you your business, but I'm just saying that I don't think it's fair for you to turn your back on your citizens when you've got someone the size of FPL that have already told us.
I'm not, we're not turning our back, Mr. Griffin.
Okay.
Today's hearing is specific, and I have to, as a chairman, guide along those lines, with all due respect.
And, but I think we disagree with that position.
Well, you might, that's fine.
And that's the reason we have our attorney here, is to be able to discuss with that on a different level than I'm certainly capable of doing. I'm just saying that I expect you folks to be in our count when it comes to standing up against an outside group that's bringing no employment into this county.
Well, that's, wait a minute, that's, let's hear from all parties before we jump to those conclusions, because I don't know that.
Well, I've read, I have read the document, and it says it's an unmanned facility.
It sure is, but it needs maintenance, doesn't it?
They're saying once a month, maybe, somebody will come in. It's not 50 jobs, is the point.
I feel like you're trying to lead me, and I really want to hear from you.
Nope, nope, they've had their chance.
Well, no, they haven't. We'll move on, I will.
I thought they gave a presentation, I'm sorry.
No, sir. They get a chance to rebuttal.
Do we?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We can go on all day, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I thought Mike still had the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Woodward still.
We can't rebut now, I just wanted to address the transmission lines.
Yeah, we're going to, I think, Mr. Woodward, Mrs. Griffin was next, and then I was going to call Mr. Jim Frisell, and then Mary Lynn.
And Tana, da. Or Solana, can I say Solana? All right, thanks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today. I came here to say that I think we have an opportunity for you to grant us a win-win situation for FPL, for my husband and I, for our neighbor, and for the citizens of Putnam County. We have a situation that we need to get resolved. I just heard you say that you thought that might be beyond your purview, but what I would like to say today is that if you look at this strictly from a zoning issue, one of the statements that I read that was in the resolution that's already been prepared for you to consider, is that it says, the prepared ordinance says, that amending the county zoning for the PUD as proposed by the applicant will not adversely affect the orderly development of the zoning district or the adjacent and surrounding properties. That is absolutely not true, depending on the route that they take. If they take the route that goes and intersects and bisects our farm, as they have proposed to us, it greatly diminishes our ability to do with our land our plant, and it is harmful to us, and it is adversarial, and it will dramatically change our plans and Mr. Frisell's plans. To Commissioner Harris's question earlier, to my husband, it's not only a matter of irrigating and pivots that irrigate the farmland for the crops that are being raised for the dairy, but it's also a matter of land value, it's also a matter of farm vehicles being able to pull out on the solid ground, to be able to make turns, there's radiuses. We own this property, and we've been here for 25 years, and we never envisioned that some neighbor would come in and start to tell us what is acceptable and not acceptable for our property. That's why we're here before you today, is to ask you to put us on the same level as they are, because if they're granted the PUD, before we work out these terms, our ability to sit down and in good faith and negotiate with them becomes greatly diminished. That's the crux of the whole problem here. We're just asking for a fair hearing. They obviously are a corporate giant, they've been very good to this community, we're not here to dispute that. We're not here to dispel any of the good things that have been said about FPL. When we first found out they were coming into our neighborhood, we welcomed them with open arms. We think it's a great idea to have less energy dependence coming from other sources. We're not opposed to the solar farm itself, but we are opposed to them dramatically affecting our operation and hampering our ability to make a living and affecting our retirement, which is what we've put a large portion of the value of this land into. That's the only thing we're here today. If we are at the point where you feel as though you can't delay it, that that's not part of your purview, then we obviously have to ask that you decline the zoning request, period, because we think this will definitely adverse our property, and we think that we can convey that if we need to as we go further, and we can show that. So we came here hoping that we could work together on a solution. We met with two representatives last night. They put forth a very good proposal that we're very open to, and we'd like to explore that opportunity, but in good faith, we asked this morning if FPL would consider working out those terms and delaying their proposal, and they were not agreeable to do that. So we wonder how much good faith they will show to us whenever we sit down to really negotiate. So with all that being said, I would ask that you respectfully either reject the zoning request outright, if that is the limit of what you're able to do today, or at the very least, you delay the decision on this until we can meet with them and work out the terms. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Mr. Woodward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will anything bad happen if I close this laptop?
I don't think it'll.
I think the alarm has passed. Close it.
Nothing happened.
Okay, good, good. I want to follow up on something Mrs. Griffin said. Really, I want to go back to the discussion that has involved discussions of negotiations between FPL and my clients. One of the things that was discussed in those negotiations, if you want to call them that, very, very recently, was this idea of relocating the substation, burying some wires, then going up in the air in a place where it would not interfere with anything. There may be a temptation on your part, naturally, to say, well, they're having some good talks, they're probably going to work something out, we don't need to worry about this. Well, here's the thing. The PUD that you have in front of you today, that FPL is asking you to approve, would be inconsistent with the scenario that was suggested by FPL to my clients in that negotiation, because it would involve moving the substation that appears on the site plan of the PUD to another location that is actually not just another location on that site, but is actually off-site. So the PUD you're being asked to approve would lock in a scenario that would be detrimental, and would not, in all likelihood, be the best scenario for either my clients or the future development of the community. I want to bring the focus now to the relevant criterion, and I'm just going to stick to one, from the Land Development Code. This is in the record, because staff recited it earlier, and it's part of the staff report. Need to get out my reading glasses, you'd think by now I'd realize I can't see without them. Need to get out my reading glasses. You'd think by now I'd realize I can't see without them. Land Development Code, Section 4.02.02B, as in boy, 2. The land, this, this is a criterion that has to be met in order for a PUD to merit approval. The land uses proposed within a PUD are compatible with existing and planned uses of properties surrounding the PUD. An evaluation of the external compatibility of a PUD should be based on the following factors: adjacent, existing, and proposed uses; design of the development; traffic circulation; and density and intensity. The single greatest external impact of this PUD will not be from those solar panels or the substation. The single greatest external impact to the existing and planned future uses of surrounding properties will be the transmission lines. And yet, and yet, the analysis does not, the analysis that was done by staff does not present an analysis of what that impact would be. FPL has not identified what route or alternate routes it would be using for those transmission lines. We don't know. The problem with that is, I'm going to have to disagree with staff. I have enormous respect for Mike Brown. I've known Mike often on 25 years, and you could not ask for a better planner than Mr. Brown. You are so lucky to have him working for you.
Thank you.
But every once in a while, anybody can be wrong. I'm told it even happens with me. The decision to exclude from consideration the impact of the absolutely essential transmission lines was an artificial circumscribing of the scope. If you want to say it's outside the scope, it's because the scope wasn't as big as it should have been and needs to be. You don't, that never happens with any other PUD or rezoning or any, any other particular project. That sort of thing doesn't happen. The external infrastructure that is absolutely necessary for the PUD to operate is always considered in conjunction with the PUD. You cannot assess the impacts otherwise. You cannot pretend that there will be no traffic impacts on other roads. In a situation where an industrial facility might require a railroad spur line or the building of a dedicated road for heavy truck traffic to connect the site of that industrial facility with an arterial road, what you always have to look at, and what will that impact be? The impact of the route that the transmission lines will take cannot be known at this time because that route has not been identified. It was not identified to staff, so far as we know, and staff did not have the opportunity to consider what that impact might be. Where that route is going to be is still up in the air. We are still in pig-in-a-poke territory. Depending on the precise location where that transmission line ends up being, its impact to the future and existing, the existing and future development of surrounding lands may be small or may be great. That needs to be analyzed. It needs to be known, analyzed, thought about, and become part of your decision-making process. Just as the infrastructure needed to carry a product to market, as, as Commissioner Harvey said, would be a necessary part of the consideration if this were any other type of industrial facility producing a product. Only this product isn't going to go out on a railroad spur line. It's not going to go out on a dedicated road that heavy trucks will use to access an arterial. It's going to go out on big transmission lines. And they will have some impact, and we cannot pretend it away. We have to come to understand it. And at this point, we have not received the knowledge and the analysis to know, to be able to reliably assess, make an intelligent decision about whether that impact is great or whether it is small. It could be negligible. It could be so great that as wonderful as this, this PUD project is, it might be turned down. I hope that doesn't happen. My clients hope that doesn't happen. We hope it goes through. But we have a problem with not having any assessment of the most severe potential impact that this facility is likely to generate. So that's the problem. Here's a suggested solution to the problem, which is similar to what Commissioner Flag was alluding to earlier. We would ask that this matter be continued, that FPL be requested to, by whatever process, identify a route for that transmission line. Or maybe alternate routes, maybe A and B. Provide that to staff, so it would be available for staff to analyze. You can direct staff to look at that. It would be available for the public to look at before the next meeting. So we can come back at another meeting, and we will have some actual, not hypothetical, just talking, but actual, on-the-map transmission line routes where we can talk about whether or not the impact they will have on the existing and planned future uses of the surrounding properties would be a terrible impact or a negligible one. And you might want to end up amending the PUD development agreement to reflect that the transmission lines will go down Route A and not Route B. You may not want to do that. But we don't have enough information to even know that at this point until those routes have been identified and vetted. And that's what we're asking at this point. In the meantime, if FPL is sincere in its efforts to try to find a better way, then there's a very good likelihood we would all be coming back here with a route the impact of which would be negligible, and everybody be happy. But my concern is that if you approve the PUD as it is today, you are locking in something very problematic, and it would actually be inconsistent with the directions that these apparently productive discussions are taking.
Question from Mr. Woodward. Nancy, call.
Yes, sir.
I have one. I'm good.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Jim Frisell. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair. Jim Frisell, 157 Mallard Road, Melrose, 32666. I don't, I don't have a whole lot of new information to add other than what Howard and Mr. Woodward and Debbie very well presented. But again, we don't want to deny access. We just want the access to be compatible with our operation. And that's all we're asking, is that this thing gets delayed or postponed until we can work out these details, because it's very important to my livelihood. I've been a Putnam County resident for 24 years. My wife and I started with 30 cows back then, and now we're up to 1,100. And we, economics have required us to grow, and this was our opportunity. And now we've come across this obstacle, and, you know, we don't want it to affect us. We want to move forward, and we want to continue to contribute to the community and to Putnam County. As Mr. Griffin spoke, we have 15 employees currently, and this operation will grow to over 50, that it will all be Putnam County residents and taxpayers. And we just want to be a part of good things that happen, but we want good things to happen with FPL, too. But I think we can work this out if we have the, you know, proper tools in place to get these access lines communicated properly. Any questions?
None. Thank you, Mr. Frisell. Okay, Mary Lynn Pantanada. I got it. Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else that opposes the PUD as it is proposed? Seeing none, we will go to rebuttals, if I'm correct, counsel? And... Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Stacy Ruas, 225 Water Street, 1750 Jacksonville. I am a land use attorney here with Gunster Law Firm on behalf of FPL. First of all, I want to reiterate that FPL is going to continue to work with the Griffins. Regardless of what happens here today, they will continue to work with the Griffins. What you have before you, as your chairman, your chairman has put forth, is a PUD rezoning that we would like to be heard today, which is, is being heard and voted on with an approval. There's a reason why the transmission lines are not in or referenced in our application. And that is because it's very clear under state statutory law, case law, as well as an opinion from the former Florida Department of Community Affairs, which is now known as the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, big mouthful, that the establishment by a utility company of a right-of-way for transmission lines, as well as the construction of transmission lines within an established right-of-way, is not development as that is defined under Chapter 163, which is the Comprehensive Plan Regulations of the State of Florida, as well as deals with land development regulations. It is the same definition as well in Chapter 380 of Florida statutes. Both of those chapters say that if it is not development, which has been held in the statutes as well as case law and by DCA and now DEO, that it cannot be right transmission, the establishment of a transmission line and the construction of a transmission line cannot be regulated by local land use regulations within the state of Florida. The policy reason is very simple with regard to that because if each local government could regulate transmission lines, there would be a hodgepodge of different types of regulations about how tall a transmission line could be, where it could go, and the utility companies would be stuck possibly not being able to breach county lines to provide utility and transmission lines. We've provided this legal research that we have to your county attorney, Mr. Manning, as an FYI prior to this hearing. And it is our opinion, as well as the case law that's out there, that this is a very well-held opinion in state law, both in Chapter 163 and 380. So that is why the transmission lines are not subject to this PUD. They are not in the PUD because the transmission line location, as well as the actual construction, is not development, which is regulated at the local level through land use zoning regulations. Secondly, as I reiterated, and your chairman did as well, you have before you a PUD with a defined parcel ID numbers, as well as a legal description. That is what is before you today, not what could or possibly be put forth on Mr. Griffin's piece of property, but a PUD. And our code specifically says that the Board of County Commissioners shall determine whether the rezoning is consistent with the comp plan as well as whether it applies with the applicable procedures of the Land Development Code. We have a staff report with a recommendation of approval that has gone through line by line in Section 402 of your Land Development Code that proves up with substantial competent evidence that this PUD is consistent with your comp plan, as well as the Land Development Code. And the application that was drafted by Josh Long, our planning expert with over 15 years of experience, also demonstrates that. I'm, now I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff West with FPL, who will respond to certain rebuttals, but, and I'm-
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask her a question?
Absolutely.
Would you mind reading that part of the law again that you quoted earlier?
Sure. Specifically, Section 38004 of the Florida statutes defines what development is. And they also go through and say what development is not for the purposes of regulating land use and zoning-type matters. So in subsection 3804.3H, it specifically says, "The creation or termination of rights of access," which has been, which is a right-of-way, "repairing rights, easements, covenants concerning development of land or other rights in land is not development." And then in subsection B, "Worked by any utility, i.e. FPL, and any other persons engaged in the distribution or transmission of gas, electricity, or water for the purpose of inspecting, repairing, renewing, or constructing on established rights-of-way, any sewers, mains, pipes, cables, utility tunnels, power lines, towers, poles, tracks, or the like, is not development." And based on that statutory language and the definition for development is the same as in Section 163.3164. It actually just references to 380. But not only is it in the statute, there is case law that reiterates this, and there is a former DCA Gulf Power, I can't remember if it's a declaratory opinion, but an opinion that says that the establishment of rights-of-way by a utility company, and then the construction of the rights-of-way with the transmission lines, is not development as, as set forth in, this is one of those instances where there's actually plain language in the statute, is not development that is regulated by the local government from a land use and zoning perspective.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So basically, what you're saying is we lose all of home rule effect on this case. And we allow people in Tallahassee to dictate to us what we're going to see in our neighborhood. I'm not against solar power at all whatsoever. But I'm against somebody telling us that if, just because you bought some property in downtown Palaca and you wanted to run your power lines across the bridge, we can't say a darn thing about it. And that bothers me. Now, you might say, well, it doesn't matter. It's state statute, and you gotta deal with it. But it takes away. But we hold true and fast this home rule authority, and that does bother me.
Through, through the chair, to Commissioner Harvey, if I may respond.
Yes.
You, this county has the ability to approve or deny this rezoning for a solar facility based on the provisions in your comp plan, as well as your Land Development Code. There, we have no argument about that. That is what it is. However, as you know, and I'm not gonna, you know, we're not gonna argue or debate what the state should and shouldn't do. But the state has come out and preempted this aspect of the law, just like it's preempted numerous other aspects of the law. And the policy is such that they felt it was in the state's importance to do this in order to provide a uniform service of utility to customers across jurisdictional boundaries. But we completely understand what is before you today, which is this PUD, is subject to your land use regulations, as well as your comp plan. And that's what we are asking you to review as our PUD for a solar farm. Thank you.
Jeff, your last name, please. I didn't hear.
West.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Just, I'm gonna make a couple rebuttal comments, but I just wanted to add to Stacy's comment. You know, similarly to our, our transmission line, I mean, the, the pivot sprinklers that I think Mr. Griffin is, is proposing on his, for future land use, I think if you have to get a consumptive use permit for that, are you locally also going to look at the visual impact and the issues of those pivot sprinklers on the community as well? So I think it opens up a myriad of, of questions when you start looking at, you know, linear facilities that aren't associated with the rezoning. So I just wanted to make that quick point while it was in my head. I want to thank Mr. Griffin for, for demonstrating that we- I want to thank Mr. Griffin for demonstrating that we've been working very closely with him, and I think you've heard that today. We've been working very hard. Six months ago, we first contacted him, and we've been working on a number of options with him. And, you know, I think, as he's pointed out in his testimony, he said, you know, he's proposed six to eight different options for us. We've run down those options, we've vetted those options internally, we've spent a number of resources looking at those options. So we've been working with him, you know, in the last month, we've met with him four different times. We've had a public open house for this project on September 27th at the QI Roberts School. He came out to that, he discussed, talked with us. Our concern is, this is just, you know, we've provided another option last night, our concern is just another option he's going to propose, and then shoot down and propose another option, you know, to delay the project as much as possible. So that's one of our concerns. We are going to continue to work with him, and we think this option that we proposed to him last night is a viable option. It's not our preferred option. You know, our preferred option, as you saw, Commissioner Harris runs up the west side of Coral Farms Road, there's very little impact, it's not going to impact a pivot sprinkler unless he plans on watering Coral Farms Road. We are, we would, our proposition would be to move that a little bit off the road so we're not impacting the trees. It is a beautiful canopy on Coral Farms Road, we don't want to impact that canopy, and we don't want to trim those trees. So yes, you would be moving it a little bit off the county right-of-way to reduce that impact. Ours is a culture of community and the environment. You know, when we're citing transmission lines, we have to balance those things. And this is not our first rodeo, we're a utility company, we've cited lots of transmission lines. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that, balancing the impact with the community, as well as the environment. Now, on the community, we are a partner in Putnam County. We're the third largest taxpayer in Putnam County. We serve over 20,000 customers in this county. We're proposing to invest in over $100 million capital investment into this county with this project. And depending on how Amendment 4 gets written, that's, at a minimum, our projections are $6 million over the life of the project, up to $30 million, depending on how the legislature writes in Amendment 4. And we understand that legislation won't, that enabling legislation won't occur until 2018. So there's a possibility to get this project built in 2017, that'd be a substantial tangible benefit to the county. We currently maintain 30 full-time jobs. That doesn't count Jim and I constantly over here in Putnam County lately. So, and we'll add 200 jobs, construction jobs, temporary construction jobs over the 12-month building period, that are going to use local resources, food, lodging, not to mention local labor, day labor, and contractors. These are on-the-job training skills that people can be trained on. So we can train local residents to install panels. That's a great benefit, we see. And we're not removing the 50 jobs that Mr. Frisell's talking about. We're adding, we are incremental to his 50 jobs that he's proposing. We believe our transmission line can work and is compatible with existing land use. You know, if his pivot sprinkler is going to be a quarter mile long, he's probably going to have to remove a lot of that virgin forest that Mr. Griffin just talked to us about. That's a large area, and a pivot sprinkler rotates on a pivot. That would tell you that there's probably only one tangential point where a pole could come in contact with that pivot sprinkler. So we can cite that to avoid any kind of impact from that pivot sprinkler, and we would like to do that. Ultimately, we've proposed an underground option with a shorter or lower circuit. That's not preferred, it costs a little bit more for the project and for our customers. But that is an option that we provided. We have to look at, the reason we can't commit to that right now is because we have to look, as I said, it's a balancing between the community and the environment. We have to look at the environment. We have to get out there and do our studies, our surveys, that takes time. And without approval of a project, I can guarantee you that it's going to be hard for me to direct resources to do that survey. And those studies. And we are a part of the community, and I think I've demonstrated that. Therefore, all the onus is on us, after we leave here today with our approval, to work with Mr. Griffin in the best way possible and come up with a solution. We don't want to take his land, that's not what we're here for. We're here to promote a clean renewable solar project. I had, I was working this weekend on storm duty at the EOC, and this lady got ahold of my desk phone, and she called me, and she said, and she was desperate, she was without power. And there's not much I can do, I'm there working the EOC, working emergency operations for the county, you know, focused on big issues. But I liked listening to her, and she said, "I just, you know, I keep hearing this recording over and over," and she's like, "I know, you know, I know there's not much you can do, but everybody around me has power, and I don't have any trees down." And I said, "Well, you know, you have to report to the 1-800 number, but let me see what I can do." And as you heard earlier, we have special crews designated to the EOCs to clear the lines, and we had one in the area, and I had him go over there and take a look at it. And she said, before that, she said, "Well, how do I know you're going to do it?" She's like, "I only hear, I hear the pre-recording." I said, "Well, I'm telling you I'm going to do it, and you know it's going to happen when that crew shows up." And that crew showed up, and it turned out to be a simple fuse that they were able to get power onto her. So I'm telling you, I'm going to work with Mr. Griffin. I'm going to be out there, even after approval, and I will work with him to make us, come up with a solution that works and does not impact his future land use. We don't want to impact Mr. Frisell, we definitely don't want to impact the dairy. You know, that is the surrounding land use in this area, agriculture. We want to be partners in communities with the agricultural community. We also want to bring tangible benefits to the county. But we need the approval to move forward so we can work with him, and work with him on these options. We leave here, and we don't, and you know he's worried about bait and switch, if we leave here today and, you know, throw that whole option out the window, that looks bad on us. That looks bad on us as the community. We're not going to do that. I'm not going to do that. And so we have to, we have to focus on the environment as well when we're citing. We're looking at eight poles going from our project up to the transmission, about 500 to 600, 700-foot spans. We can reposition those, we can, we can look at it, we can work with them, sit down on maps, if that's, if we'll go the overground route. We can do that, and we can make sure it's compatible with his future land use. I guarantee you, we do it all over the country, right? There's pivot sprinklers in the Midwest, in cornfields, there's transmission, it can be done. If not, you heard him say that, he likes the underground option. And we're willing to look at that. That option's going to take a little bit longer, and, but if we can get approval today, we can move forward, we can dedicate the resources, my team and I, to move forward on that option.
I don't want to be Donald Trump and loom over him. I just want to let everybody know, we're available for any questions you have, and that'll, and our rebuttal portion of that. Thanks.
Let's see if my commissioners have any for you, Mr. West. Start on my right this time, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. West, you and I have spent quite a bit of time going over some things, and maybe state statute does say, and I'm sure it does, that we can't regulate the transmission lines. But you bought that property, Florida Power and Light bought that property, with the idea that that transmission line is north of there. And I think you're, what you said earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong, but your first idea was to go down Coral Farms, but our Public Works Director wasn't too keen on that idea. So that wasn't your preferred option, your preferred option was to go down Coral Farms. And I've always maintained, by talking to you and Mr. Bush, that the south project, going south would be a whole lot easier for the community because it wouldn't tear up the tree canopy. But now you're back over to your property going north on there. Am I correct in saying that, or have I missed the?
No, I think, I think there's been, you know, misunderstanding there, our preferred, we've been looking at many options, you know, to look at with the Griffins and the county. You know, in terms of going across to the county, the road right-of-way, you know, we had early discussions, and that was clearly not an option.
Right, Mr. Tompkins did not like that idea, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay, so I'm not too far, I'm right there in the ballpark.
Yeah, but it wasn't a preferred, it was just one of the options.
Okay, it was one of the first options, or just an option.
It was an option.
Okay, good deal. Where we're at now, though, why would we not wait, like Commissioner Flag said, why wouldn't we wait, get all, everything tidied up, cleaned up, put a bow on it, bring it back to us with a, this is what we've worked out, or we didn't work out, we couldn't work it out? And then we have to go for it. Why do we have to pit the neighbor that's honed the property for 25 years against the big giant that comes into the area? Why can't we, you know, I listened to the planning commission tape, and had the chairman recognize your attorney, and I couldn't, the tape I listened to was doubled, it was a real bad version of it. But he tried to time out, he tried to time the whole process out and take a delay at that point. But the chairman wouldn't call upon him. So I guess my point is, why, I know you said, you mentioned today it was a rush to go ahead, we like to go ahead and prove this today, but what's another week, or two weeks, or four weeks? Why couldn't we wait till November and get this process right? And everybody wins, we all walk out going, "Solar's good, jobs are good, we got jobs here for 200 people for a year, we got jobs for 50 people at a dairy, we got crops growing, the rainbows out there." Why can't we do that? I just don't understand why we can't.
Well, we've, we've been planning this project for a while, like I said, and we did reach out back in May to, and been having those discussions before the planning process. You know, we're in the planning process, we need some certainty moving forward, as this is a large capital investment for us, we need to start working on, you know, looking at detailed engineering design. Those things take time. So that's why we need to, we can't delay, you know, delaying another month or two months is not really an option for us at this point, because of all the detailed engineering and design work that's still left to be done, and getting out on the property and doing some work, so we could potentially get this project ready to go to construction in the next year or two.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Pell, sir.
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Flag.
No.
Commissioner Harris.
I don't really have questions, but I'm, I think I have my mind wrapped around a way to go. Are we through, listening to everyone, or is there still rebuttal going on?
Rebuttal's going on.
Okay.
I do believe. I don't know that, but I need to ask. Florida Power and Light, any more rebuttal? Any commentary from you guys?
No, sir. No, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it. Mr. Wilber, you look like you have some comments.
At least the microphone's the right height for me. Counsel for FPL made a valid point, and that is that you don't have the right to tell FPL where their right-of-way has to be, you can't order them to put it in a certain place, you can't order them to build their transmission line in a certain way. And that's not what we're asking this board to do. But what we're asking this board to do, that is proper to do under the Land Development Code, is to be aware that there's gonna be a transmission line that in all likelihood will have an impact, and what this board does is determine whether the PUD will be compatible with existing and planned uses of properties surrounding the PUD. There's going to be an impact, we don't know what it's going to be. We don't want to tell them what to do, where to put it, so much as we want them to come back and tell us where they are going to put it. First, and in the meantime, we hope we can have some productive discussions that will bring everyone together. But it just makes no sense to approve a PUD today that has a site plan that is an essential part of that PUD, that in all likelihood would need to be changed and amended in order to accommodate one of the likely alternatives that's now being discussed. This is a problem that can be solved, and it looks like it's in the process of being solved. It just isn't solved yet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilber, I have a question for you. Concerning the transmission lines, you're an attorney, and I'm sure we're sitting here as judge, and you're arguing your points to us. Do you believe state statute dictates that we cannot regulate transmission lines?
Counsel for FPL did not do me the courtesy of sharing the same case law, so I cannot comment on that specifically. I am aware of the statutes that counsel cited. As I said a few moments ago, you can't dictate to FPL, you have to put your transmission lines here, on this, you can't tell them this is the right-of-way you're going to use, and this is how you're going to do your transmission lines. But that doesn't mean they can't tell you, and that you can't take into consideration the impact that this PUD will have on surrounding properties. And a large part of that impact will be that a transmission line is an absolute necessary, inevitable part of making this PUD work. They're not going to truck that stuff out of there on flatbeds, it's going to go on wires.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Wilber, Commissioner Flag?
Mr. Chairman, my question is not to Mr. Wilber. Thank you so very much. My question goes over to Mike Brown or Brian Hemmings. Speak about the relativity of the site layout plan as it relates to this project. As if this was approved, what would necessitate a change in the map or an amendment to the map? If you can just drill down on that for a second.
Well, I, the map, as well as the development agreement lays out the allowable uses. The map places them in those locations. If a use, and I'll go specifically, because if I heard right, there's a question about the substation. Substation is allowed in that location on the map. If the substation, if you adopted, if the county commission adopted the PUD along with that map and the development agreement, the substation use at that location would be allowed. It's not a requirement that that substation go there, if, in the respect of, if it didn't, if there was no substation ever developed on the site, you'd still have the PUD with that location where a substation could look, could be located. Substation could not go elsewhere within that property, but they could, I heard reference to possibly the substation going off-site somewhere. That wouldn't jeopardize the PUD. But if you wanted to move that substation from the location on the map, as it sits today, somewhere else within that PUD, you'd have to amend, and it would probably be a minor modification, to the PUD, which I believe our Land Development Code allows for a minor modification to be an administrative change to the PUD. So you would not see that change if, but it would have to be changed before they could move it with, to another location within that PUD. And I don't know if that is as blurry as clear, or as blurry as my eyes are.
I promise you it was clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
I want to add to it, Mr. Brown, if I could. So if Mr. Frisell were to continue and grow his dairy operation, and, well, in the negotiations, let's go to real time right now, if FPNL were to strike a deal with he to build a substation that would accommodate them both, the PUD doesn't change. They just run transmission lines or two.
If it was moved off-site?
So it's another tool in their toolbox, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I mean, if it was moved to someplace not within the PUD boundaries, yeah, the PUD would still stand.
Okay.
If they wanted to move it within the PUD boundaries, they'd have to do a minor modification to the PUD.
Okay, good stuff. Yes, Commissioner Harvey.
Mr. Brown, could the PUD be amended to reach out and grab that substation, or does it have to be continuous property through there? Or would the transmission line allow that to be continuous?
I...
It's a good question, because our land development codes do not...
that to be continuous?
Um, I.
It's a good question because our land development codes do not control the transmission lines, but they do the physical plant of a station.
Right.
That's a good question, Larry.
We allow subs, we don't review, substations are also, um, allowed within any land use. So you wouldn't need to reach out because it, unless it's a, the only conservation land use, we don't allow substations. But we allow them in any, in any land use so they could develop a substation in an offsite in another land use and would be allowed.
Thank you.
Brian's got something.
Mr. Chairman, while they're doing that, I don't think you can decide, uh, to locate a substation like you would in a house plan, which end of the house the kitchen is gonna be on. I think that there has to be some formula that FPL uses to decide which is practical for the substation. Because again, the substation plays a specific role. So it's not like you can just move it over to, like a playing chess. You can't just do it.
It's a giant capacitor. I get it completely. So.
You just comment, Mr. Brown.
Just a little clarification I got from Brian. He reminded me, the PUD has a definite legal description. So if you're bringing in additional lands outside, that would be an, at, you would have to amend the PUD if you, if you wanted to bring it in. But I don't think it would be required to come in. I mean, the substations that's south of this was built there without any approvals. I mean, it had approvals, but under, they didn't have to come in and get a special PUD approval for that PU, for that substation or any other substation in, in the county. Um, so it, it could go either way, but you'd have to amend the PUD if you wanted to bring it in. That would be a requirement.
To bring that legal description of that specific property.
Yeah, if you wanted to tie it. But I don't think it's necessarily a given that you would have to. Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Manning, what else would you like to say from this hearing?
Well, maybe it'd be helpful for, for you all if I chimed in on a couple of the issues that I've heard today.
Okay.
Um, and, and I'm, I'm not advocating for one party or another. Um, but I just do wanna provide some clarification on, on, from my perspective. The, um, I, I have looked at the statutes, um, that, that were referenced. Um, and, and I, I do believe that regulation of, of the transmission lines, um, or the establishment of right of way for those transmission lines is something that we cannot regulate. I would agree with that. On the other hand, we have to look at what, what you all are considering or what you need to consider, um, when, when being asked to approve a rezoning which a PUD is. One of those things that you're required to consider is, um, the impact on the surrounding lands. And, and I realize that that, that creates a bit of a catch 22 for you all. And I apologize to you for that. But that's the way it is. So I think we're, I, I think that there's a bit of a gray area here because yes, it's, it's, you know, it is considering the location of transmission lines, regulating those transition, transmission lines. I don't have the answer for that. Um, that may be some mixed, you know, protracted, uh, discussions and potential litigation on that question. Um, I don't have the answer to that. Um, on the other hand, the, yeah, what I believe is that, is that the land development code does have that requirement that, that it impacts on the surrounding land uses be considered. Now, do you all feel you have enough information to, to consider that factor? I think that's a question that each, each one of you needs to answer in your own minds. Um, but with that said, that's not the only factor to be considered. And when we're, the code requires that when the board adopt an ordinance establishing a PUD, and, and I'm gonna cite to our code, that's section 12.11.03(c). There's six factors. Number two is that the PUD meets the general intent of the county's land development code, even though it differs in one or more respects from the usual application of the standards in the code. And those standards being, one of which being the Article Four consideration of the, um, on, on neighboring lands. So my point is that that's one consideration, but it's, it's not the exclusive consideration. So it doesn't keep you from moving forward and approving it, in my opinion. Whether you decide to or not, obviously it's your choice. And another comment I wanted to make was, um, the, uh, FPL has eminent domain powers. I know that was brought up here today. Um, whatever happens here today regarding the location of establishment of a right of way for the transmission lines is going to, um, either be negotiated, um, between FPL and, and the parties, or they're gonna bring in eminent domain action. And as you all know, um, obviously a negotiated settlement is much better and, and is in everybody's best interest. So there is, there's, um, I believe some incentive on all parties to, to come to a negotiated agreement on that. Um, but the second point of that is, um, as you also know, um, when there's eminent domain involved, the, the property owner whose property is being taken or given in a settlement is compensated for that property. And part of that compensation is, you know, economic and business losses, which are, you know, obviously the, the, well, guess what I'm getting to is that those are gonna be considerations that will be coming down the road, one way or another, if, if this matter is approved. And, you know, they could, as I said, settle it, negotiate a settlement, you know, or, or it gets to eminent domain and, you know, and it gets worked out that way. But, but there is compensation at least, um, for the fair value of that taking, um, in those proceedings.
Um, as far as that gray area you're talking about is, would reviewing case law on a break help you in that area?
Um, not, no. I mean, I don't know that unless, I don't know that both the parties can prepare briefs on, on whether that case law is. And, well, it's extensive process, I guess is what I'm saying. And, um, I don't know that there's gonna be an answer to that. I think it is a.
You're reading gray, you're on the gray area.
I think it's, 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 yeah, exactly. I mean, you, I think you've got, this is a struggle that many communities deal with. Um, so I don't know that there's a clerk that'll answer for you.
Commissioner Harris.
Okay. We're ready to.
You wanna deliberate?
Yes.
Let's go.
I would like to. I actually was thinking along the same lines that you were. I was thinking, um, first of all, the solar project is wonderful. And I am so glad that Putnam County is considered as the beginning. And, um, I just thought, when I first started reading it, I thought, man, who would object to this? I mean, it's a quiet industry. It helps everybody and, uh, it's just, you know, sitting there and not a lot of traffic and not a lot of noise. And, and then I see nothing's ever as simple as, you know, what you think. And, um, I was thinking, the best thing, of course, would be if the two parties could get together and reach a settlement, um, and agree on what one is losing and what one is gaining and how to compensate and make that good. That's why I was asking about the watering because I understood the significance of that. And I was just, I don't know, I'm getting into areas that I don't really know about it, other than I've seen that kind of thing. And I've watched it with great interest. So if the one party could understand the need of the other party and realize the extra cost and maneuvering and a way, and there's lots of brilliant minds here who could figure out how all that works and what extra it would cost to make it happen so that you come out whole, that would be the very best way to do it and compensate you for that or, and, you know, come up with numbers and figures that make it real, that that would be the best of both worlds. But if it doesn't happen, it would be a case of eminent domain. And a lot of people don't understand that. I think all of you probably do very well. But, um, they take the property and the judge listens to all of the extenuating circumstances and the judge decides, well, okay, it's gonna cost them this much for additional wells and this much for, um, what they're losing in their navigation across their property. And, and they come up with the figure and grant you that. So either way, both parties could come out whole, the best one being talking about it and, and working it out. Our job is to look at this land use about, is it a PUD? Does it follow all the things, uh, the criteria that we have, which the, um, planning department has laid out very nicely and evaluated. And it looks to me like we should consider those things and that we should approve this. But knowing that you both are going to have to get together and come up with a compromise that's gonna work one way or the other, and we can have both. The one pivotal thing that swayed me was the legislation that Stacy presented to us, the Florida statute. I have the number written down, but it does say what constitutes a land use and changes that we have the power to change. And we do not have the power to do the value of the transmission line or where it would go or consider that in our land use. So on the one hand, Michael Woodburn brings out that he believes the transmission line, you know, is something that should be considered and is very important in our decision-making. Then we have a law that says you shall not consider this. Um, I think that it leans more toward the legislation that Stacy presented because it actually specifies what we can and cannot do. So I feel that we should go forward, approve the PUD. It certainly meets the criteria of our comp plan and it has been spelled out. The other areas where we get into the gray, but it will be settled one way or another, hopefully with Florida Power and Light and the owners discussing it and working out something that's amenable to both parties. And it means both giving and taking a little. So my suggestion would be that we approve the PUD as it is today and hope that the parties can, uh, work it out. And I have found Florida Power and Light always, in my public service, has been very good to work with. And, and they are of their word. And, um, I think that we can trust that they will most probably work it out together without just saying, let's do eminent domain. But one way or the other, both parties, both sides could be whole.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I concur with what Commissioner Harris is saying based upon our decision is based upon meeting the general intent. Um, the documentation is here, um, and also recognizing that the transmission line as a part of FPL's need to get from the solar site to the transmission, the existing transmission line, uh, is not a part of our deliberations and discussion. Uh, if this was just a simple rezoning, um, you know, case, then we certainly would have been gone a long time ago. We cannot regulate the location of the lines. I think that again, I'm depending on FPL operating in good faith, uh, just as their reputation says so. I do not look at them as being the giant in the room. I think they know that we have to live together and be good neighbors. Um, and I'm, I'm expecting that. So I'm looking for good faith, win-win consensus, et cetera, uh, there. And so I, I do concur with, um, Commissioner Harris. So we need to move this forward.
You want me to go? You wanna go?
Don't worry.
Okay. Um, I'll go ahead. Uh, as far as the impacts on the surrounding area, it's, if there were ever a footprint that had minimal impact, it certainly is a solar farm. I do like that. Um, the establishment of the lines, we have no jurisdiction over. Um, I'm very interested in our tax base and Amendment Four and what it will bring, Mr. West, as you spoke of. But that's, I think this project does the best for the most people of this county. But I base that on your goodwill with these folks, especially the future farmer, Mr. Frisell. Very important to me. Very important to me. I can't emphasize that any more than that, that the negotiations go well for him. I know Mr. Griffin and is retiring and Mrs. Griffin and I, well, y'all both have been retired, but you've been active in this. But it's important to me that this looks like a win-win setup if there ever was one. Uh, Florida statute allows us so much room to shuck and jive here. I think we've done a good job of it today.
Um, those of you that, that know me or know me very well, know that I have a agricultural background. And I'm very fond of anybody that, that takes the soil and tills it and, and is able to make a living in it. Cause if they're not gamblers, there's nobody in Vegas that is. Um, there are different types of irrigation systems, um, other than a, a pivot type, um, that, that can be used in those operations. And I know that you're trying to keep your costs at a very bare minimum for that. I understand it because I know how it is to, to make a living on a farm. Um, however, um, the green aspect of, um, what FPL is, is putting forth here and what it will do for Putnam County as far as, uh, um, putting us on the map is not, you know, we, Commissioner Flag says it a lot, you know, perception's reality. And us being a, a, to me, a forefront leader in green energy is, is huge. Um, I think this is, um, you know, I've looked at all the, the guidelines that Mr. Manning has put forth of, of where it falls in and, and what, um, Mr. Brown has said. And, uh, I feel like that, uh, it meets that criteria. I do feel like that, that FPL does wanna be good neighbors as much as a Griffin wants to be good neighbors and Mr. Frisell wants to be good neighbors. Um, you know, you, you judge by how you act in the past. And if, um, FPL wants to, uh, prove that they're the people of their word and do what they say they'll do, I feel certain they will. Um, cause, uh, you know, it wouldn't look favorably upon them, uh, of saying one thing and doing something else in another instance. So, um, I'm, I'm gonna have to support them.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I listened to all the comments and yes, it meets the criteria. It will impact surrounding lands. There's no doubt that that criteria will be, will be hit. I too like green energy. I too wish I could base my opinion solely on what kinda tax base, but we're not charged with that, as our attorney said that. Even with a settlement, does it impact current surrounding agriculture use? Yeah, it does. And even if both sides come back with an agreement, it still impacts the surrounding land. But it's agreeable impact at that point. I would love to say I wholly support the solar farm, and I do on the PUD. But I don't support taking someone's land or, or doing a transmission line, even though we can't regu, regulate that. I'm understanding that. It just sets wrong with me. And it sets wrong with a lot of me because it is somebody who's been there for a while, who is currently using the land. And it is on an agricultural basis. And to be affected by any way bothers me. And that's all I'm gonna say about that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Deliberations, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
On the floor. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation and that we rezon the 586.81 acres of land from ag to planned unit development, subject to the inclusion of the Florida Power and Light Solar Facility PUD Development Agreement.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Pelisser. We'll have a roll call vote. Commissioner Harris, District One.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Flag.
Aye.
Commissioner Two, Chip Lival. Aye. Commissioner Four, Larry Harvey.
No.
Commissioner Five, Commissioner Pelisser.
I'm now five? Aye.
Wait, did I get them backwards? No.
No, you got them right.
Yeah, I got them right.
You just called me five.
All right. Five. Go, five.
No, I'm four. He calls him Mr. Harvey.
Okay. Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, it carries. Before we leave this, Brian, our Economic Development Officer from the county, I know you burnt some midnight oil on this and from this board, up or down, thank you for your extra effort. We appreciate that and the whole chamber staff. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a two-minute break? I just got to run back to the back.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back here at 3:45.
Let me catch gentlemen.
We'll reconvene the Board of County Commission in October 11, 2016, and we're going to go to a special request by Mr. George D. Toulouse Jr., developer, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thanks so much. George Toulouse Jr., 1280 Whitlock Ridge Drive, Marietta, Georgia. Thanks for having me. Thank you for allowing me to intrude on your meeting and coming in without request very late. We appreciate it.
Of all meetings to to ask a favor.
Well, no, actually, it's very, I'd like to commend you. I sit in many of these meetings in states all over the southeast where we try and do business and I thought it was extremely professional and kind. I think everyone's terrific and and really appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you. We're here for really what should be a simple request. We are an affordable housing and a market rate apartment developer. Our company is based in Cincinnati. I work the southeast region out of the Atlanta area in Marietta. We identified Palatka in a very short amount of time, roughly for almost four weeks ago. And Putnam County became a very interesting county for us because the state of Florida sort of categorizes counties in Florida for the purposes of affordable housing as small, medium, and large. And we saw opportunity in the small and medium counties and Putnam falls into that category. As we came in, we found this property that Mr. Schwing owns and what we would like to do is put an application in for tax credits. As part of the application for tax credits to make us competitive within the state's process, we are required to receive some form of local government contribution, can be a local municipality or a county government, and that's why we're here today. There is a minimum requirement that we have to meet and it is stipulated by the state per county, so it varies based on the size of the county and population. Putnam happens to be a minimum requirement of $10,000 that has contributed to the development specifically for the development and it can be done in various number of ways. I believe that what's before you today is a request for a waiver of fees, nothing more than the minimum, which is 10,000. The process for this is we will produce an application to the state in mid, excuse me, it'll be due, that's the second one we're working on. This one is due Thursday at 11:00 a.m. So that's, I apologize for the late hour, but that's just where we find ourselves. We will produce the application, put it in with the state. We will know, we hope, we don't have specific from the state, but we think in March, at the very latest, April 15th, as an outside date, we will know if we've received a tax credit award that would allow us to move this project forward. So without the without the tax credit award, the project does not move forward. Okay? So what we're asking for is for Putnam County to contribute via a fee waiver, the $10,000 local government contribution, the state of Florida calls it, for the purposes of helping us receive tax credits and move forward with the project. The project will consist of two- and three-bedroom apartments. It can be done in two phases. This first phase is all that we're applying for. If we were to receive a tax credit award, we'd be doing a second phase. We would apply for a second phase and hopefully get that. So the maximum number of units would be 120 units. They would be for families. They're two and three bedrooms. The income qualifications for those are 50% and 60% of area median income, which for this area is 53.3. We're able to use a non-metro area median income. So roughly 10% of our units are going to be at 50% of that number and the 90% of the units will be at 60% of that number. So you're going to be as low, income qualifications as low as 17, a little over 17,000, all the way up to roughly 27,000 in that range. That's the target market for these units and it'll be for families.
I want to ask.
I'll start with Mr. Harvey and then Mrs. Harris.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
What's the total cost of the project?
Phase one would be just just south of $11 million.
Okay, so say $10 million project, correct?
Correct.
And you're not asking, you're not going to receive tax abatements from us, you're going to pay property taxes on this affordable housing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're not asking for tax abatement at all.
That's the only questions I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Harris.
That was my question. I wanted to know, some of the rent subsidized facilities that come in do not pay taxes.
Right, they could be, have a nonprofit involved. Oftentimes nonprofits don't pay and I know that that's been a large source of discussion in the state of Florida, just in past experience.
It's been really hard and actually our county is full of affordable housing because our prices are really pretty low, but we do have a great need. So we qualify for a waiver because we're what used to be a RACIC county? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not familiar with the term. You just.
Well, he's talking of federal zone. He represents a zone and that's the southeast. It's a little different than interstate. When you say RACIC, that's a term used by the legislature to describe a impoverished.
County of economic opportunity.
It's the same, wanting to say.
Opportunity now. Right. So we don't have to match grants or anything? Is that what you're talking about?
You are not forced to do this. No, ma'am, you are not forced to do this. I'm asking for this because we as a developer, if we want to be in the tax credit program in the state of Florida, in order for the application to be competitive, I need to have the cooperation of a local government.
So you do want us to put 10,000 into the project?
I'm asking you to waive building permit fees equal to 10,000 and that can be the form of contribution. You don't have to put actual cash in.
Which has nothing to do with us being a rural area of opportunity.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to get that straight.
And Mr. Toulouse.
Yes, sir.
Let's wait and see if Commissioner Harris.
Well, let's see, is it in the city limits of Palatka?
It is in the county, not currently in the city limits of Palatka. That is correct.
So it is our building apartment? I just, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
But the intent, if I can chime in here, I like to put everything on the table, is to ask the city of Palatka to annex this property because for your development to move forward, you must have a municipal water and sewer line.
That is correct and they stop very close to the property, but we would need to tap into those. If we're awarded the project and move forward with construction, we certainly will need to tap into those. Correct.
Okay, so if they're annexed into the city, we still get our taxes and they get their taxes.
That's correct.
That was my question too, sir. So thank you.
Okay.
All right, so, you know, just to make sure we're very clear, they went to the city last night to ask for the same thing, but realized because they weren't yet annexed that the city could not officially respond to their request and they have a Thursday deadline to possibly make this all happen and they're asking us to waive these fees so they can go ahead and try for the Thursday deadline. That's what's on the table here.
Okay, let me ask this. What does it cost generally for permit fees for that size of a project?
It will vary by county or city.
Mr. Lee.
Based on his assertion that it's going to be a $10 million project, the down and dirty estimate provided to me for permit fees by zoning, building and zoning is roughly $68,000. That's going to be give or take based on the actual.
Okay.
And we're only waiving 10.
We won't have some money from the fees and our department is, you know, smaller and we really are having a struggle with all of our money, but is this something that we can afford to do, do you think?
Well, I mean, there's going to be, you know, a net revenue to us after all, after all the permits are acquired, even if you do waive the, you know, the 10,000, there's still going to be a net revenue to us.
Okay, so it's probably a good idea to go ahead and do that and have that improvement and have something that's needed and it's not going to kill us because we're still getting some permit fees. I think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Harvey and then Flag.
No, Pelisser was next.
Mr. Pelisser.
Got the devil.
Uh-oh.
I was about to get ready to use this. Some of my questions got answered amidst all that, but I'll try to, it's $10,000 per unit that you need or 10,000?
No, sir, total.
Just?
Total. And it is the minimum.
One time only.
That is correct.
Okay, and you estimated 68,000?
Well, that's the number they gave me, you know, just a quick down and dirty estimate on the assertion that it may be a $10 million construction project, I mean.
And that's 10 million for the entire 120 units?
That's for the phase one.
Phase one?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And so another 10 million.
So you would see that double if we were, and I pray that we are, if we're fortunate enough to get an award on the first phase, we will then submit for a second phase, which are looked on a little more favorably once you've done one. And so if we could come through with the second phase, you would, if we're, in today's dollars, you'd see a doubling of the numbers you're thinking about. Of course, I can't speculate where construction costs will be down the road, so, you know.
I'm sorry.
Right, and well, we wouldn't have land.
But you said 68,000, it's 6,800.
No, thousand.
Now, 6,800 is the permit fees, right?
68,000.
8,000? Okay.
And we're giving up 10.
And we're giving them 10, so we'll read 58.
If I might chime in.
Yes.
Now, that was the taxes, I'm talking.
No, it was the permit fees.
Permit fees.
How many fees?
The taxes would be about 90,000, correct? On a $10 million project?
If it's assessed at $10 million.
Mr. Man.
There's some discussion here about the city having to annex. So my point is committing to waive 10,000 in fees if the city annex before and all the building permits and the zoning is pulled through the city, then it's pretty much a moot point.
That's right.
So.
Right.
It helps them move forward.
Correct.
All right, what's your wishes, Commissioners? We've been here a long time.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
A motion on the floor.
Second.
I'm going to second.
Could I add that motion that the motion be the county would agree to waive?
Up to $10,000 of permits?
Well, just $10,000 of building and zoning fees.
That's important.
For this project and then authorize the chair to execute certification of that fact.
Correct.
Just make it building fees, just not put zoning.
Building fees.
Yeah, just building fees.
Building permit fees.
Building permit fees.
I mean, we waive the building permits and authorize the chairman to sign for this project.
$10,000.
$10,000.
Not waive them. $10,000 worth of them.
You know what I do when they do that to me? I say, as stated by council.
Stated by council. As stated by council. How's that, Tony? Did you get that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Had my hand up earlier.
I'm sorry, sir.
I still don't have all the information that you all have, so maybe you can make your decision based on what you know. The city of Palatka has issued a moratorium on this kind of housing in the city already. The Palatka Housing Authority and the city have been going back and forth for the past two years concerning this. We need gated communities. We need a high-end housing in order to bail us out of what we're in and I don't, I'm not comfortable with us if the city turned them down last night because ultimately this project would be inside the city limits. Why are we coming back behind them and getting engaged and involved in this without having the details? They ultimately, in order to get the water in the sewer, they got to come in the city. That's what their current ordinance require. And so my thing is if we know, unless you all know something different from me, I don't quite understand how, number one, we have not decided that this was an emergency issue. So all we can do is discuss stuff until we decide it's an emergency issue. I was stopped by Mr. Schwing a week or two ago and as if I was trying to block a project. I simply don't make decisions based on a verbal exchange of information and I have not seen before me or before us anything that would cause me to even know what this project is about. I really don't. And I'm confused as to why 48 hours before a deadline, this is being brought to us. I'm confused. If it's a non-issue and the administrator or the chairman can sign it, do it. But I don't understand why we are getting ourselves involved in something that ultimately the city is going to have jurisdiction on if they get water and sewer and ain't no permit fees coming to the county. So what are we talking about?
Well, let's get Mr. Toulouse to further explain what took place at the city of Palatka last night. Did they turn the project down as Commissioner Flag has stated or did they say, go get, you know, more information?
The comments of the city attorney was that because the city did not have jurisdiction over the project, they should not be making an determination that they would waive something that may not ever end up coming into the city. And to kind of put this in perspective, the state's got a certain amount of money and a whole bunch of people make application. In order to make application, you have to have certain boxes checked. One of the boxes that need to be checked is whether or not the, any governmental agency within the county would be willing to make a $10,000 contribution. It's a condition precedent almost, and it's not quite a condition precedent, but in order to make application, the state expects to see that box checked. The actual money being waived, we're talking about could be a year from now.
More than, more than a year.
Okay, more than a year from now. So all we're talking about is the state wants to see that the community is committed to the project, at least in the amount of being willing to waive this amount of money. If down the road, the project goes to the city, then the county wouldn't even be looking at it and we would be then looking at the city. This is kind of rushed, but the whole process, since Mr. Schwing was initially contacted by MV was less than a month ago and he and I went to the city with all of the paperwork and basically were told by the city manager that it wasn't going to be a problem. There were certain things that they had to sign off as far as the availability of capacity of water and sewer and they signed those things off, but it took them over a week to do that. Then it was decided that they needed to take the matter before the commission. Well, then we had a little matter of the storm. We've got this deadline and unfortunately, this, these things are all going this fast. There are a whole bunch of other procedures which are going to have to take place if the project gets approved. For instance, we are already coming before you for a plat.
Abandonment.
A plat abandon, just so we're familiar with this, this is the property that's between Moody Road and a mall. We're going to go for a plat abandonment and a road abandonment before the county because we need to get that taken care of now. It could develop that the city wouldn't want the project, but the city may extend water and sewer lines to the project and to have it outside of the city because the city does have that right. So the way I look at it is, and analogy I use is, you're at Las Vegas and there's a roulette wheel and you want to put a number down and it's $10,000 to put a number down. If your number hits, you get a project worth $10 million. If the project doesn't hit, you get to take your money back off the table. So it's basically a no-lose proposition. If later on down the road, if you say no at this point, it affects our ability to go forward. If later on down the road, the city decides they don't want to annex it and you guys don't want to do what you want to do, the fact that you waived the money didn't tie your h- wanna do what you wanna do, the fact that you waived the money didn't tie your hands to do anything, it's just a step in the process, which unfortunately has to be taken. It opens a window of opportunity. You wanna shut the window off of a hundred new units? That's fine, but I believe this is different from the problem that the city is having with the housing authority, because the housing authority's property is tax-exempt. And I think that's the problem that the city has, is building new, tax-exempt, and you don't generate revenue.
That's why we both asked that question.
That's right.
Off the bat. The other thing is, you have to have a certain amount of income to live here. You have to qualify, you have to make.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so it's not free housing?
No, ma'am, no, it's, it's not.
It's people that are working, that are contributing and paying a more reasonable rate, but it's not.
It's going to be, it's, it's at fifty and sixty percent of fifty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. So that's who it will cater to, those making anywhere from seventeen-five to twenty-seven thousand.
Is it low-income housing or not?
It is low-income housing, it is affordable housing, that is correct, but it is not Section Eight or voucher housing.
And one of the other, this is the third or fourth people that have come forward over the last ten years about this property. This property actually meets a lot of criterias. One of the criterias is, you stick a pin in a property, you draw a one-mile bubble around it, and what do you have in there? Because a lot of people can't afford to, or you wanna encourage people to walk. And if you put a one-mile bubble from this place, you've got middle school, high school, malls, two malls, hospitals, healthcare, veteran services, shopping, businesses. So, this is, to get that size of a property, we're talking about ten acres, that close to all of those facilities is very hard to do. It is literally the last piece of property that there is in that area that could do that kind of a project.
That's not quite accurate.
Well, I mean, okay, it's one of a few properties. A ten-acre piece of property in that area that's already got the residential zoning, that has that proximity to water and sewer, is very rare.
Is it normal for you not to have at least a portfolio, or conceptual, or something for this board of legislators to look at? I mean, why is this just a verbal conversation?
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a PUD. When this thing actually goes, to get, to get the project approved, if we get the funding to get the project built, somebody is gonna have to approve a PUD. And at that point, everything will be exactly laid out, and y'all will have the opportunity to make the design changes that you would make in anything in the PUD process.
Do you have mixed uses?
Ma'am?
Do you have mixed uses? That's one of the requirements of the PUD.
We do not have mixed uses. Let me first, if I could respond, Commissioner Flag.
Mixed uses is what I said.
We have no mixed uses. We have none. It's strictly multifamily housing. There'd be no commercial aspect to it.
I just think that we have an urban service situation, and we've got to deal with issues with the city of Palaca already, and I'm just not comfortable with, especially last night, they had a special meeting, and it's not like they didn't know that this project was, was in the county, you know, and not in the city, and I'm just not comfortable with it, but whatever the wishes of the board is.
Go ahead, Mr. Tull.
Yeah, I'd just like to, it's a fair question, and I wanna make sure that we, we vet it. We don't require a PUD. The current zoning in the, I want you to be, I, I wanna be clear about this. We can go one of two ways. Yes, at some point, it makes sense to potentially annex this into the city because of the tap into the, the services are there. Okay, that makes sense. The good point is, we don't have to. So long as the city will cooperate, and we can pay for those services and remain in the county, then there is no need for annexation, because zoning exists in both the city and the county to support this type of development. We are not required, nor will we need a PUD. So, that is not something that we're going for. Right now, under the current zoning, in both the city and the county, if this were in the city, we are allowed to build what we are proposing building. So, and the reason that we do not have any further details, and I get that, and at the proper point in the process, you will have all the information you need in terms of site plan, elevations, et cetera, floor plans, everything, is that, that in order to submit to this, to the state in the tax credit program, you're not required to have that level of detail? So they're just a, a few things that we need to have?
And I understand that, and I'm not trying to play hardball here. What I'm trying to say is, due diligence on my part, I need something that indicates that this project is what it is, so that I know what I'm obligating and committing Putnam County to. That's just one of the five that's saying that.
Yes, sir, I understand.
I said it once, and I'm saying it again. That's where I stand. I don't have, you all have not given anything to help me understand, other than, it's a ten million dollar project, and we need the county to, quote, uh, sign off on a document for tax increases and things of that nature. And I don't have, I have not crossed the threshold of comfort with the way you guys are doing this, in the statement.
Okay, let's, uh, end it right there. We had a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second. All right, we had, any further discussion?
Call the questions, sir.
Okay, we call the questions, so, well, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign aye. That was Carl Flag and I, opposed. And I'm a little worried about the airport, the federal aviation guidelines, and schools and residential properties, it's in the flight path, without question.
We have, we have looked at that, and it is correct.
I like, I'm with him. And I said, I was upfront with you out front. I don't like this rush either, and I would like to see all that before, and I welcome any of this that adds to our tax base, I really do, but.
Listen, thank you very much, and I hope that we can continue our relationship, and I apologize for the start.
And thank you, no, it's fine, but y'all, you were so patient today, and for the compliments of this board, we appreciate that, but I can't, you sat a long time today.
Listen, it's, just thank you. You don't, it don't owe me any thanks, I owe you the thanks, I barged in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's go to the rest of the agenda here, folks. Appointments, anything? Nothing? We're down to county administrator, Rick Leary.
Yes, sorry, I'm sorry.
You're good.
I'm having a hard time out in District Four finding anybody for better place oversight. If my fellow commissioners, if you know anybody that lives out there that haven't reached out to me, just let me know.
We'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
And I, let me just restate that I, the at-large employer representative, I did appoint the last one, and Carl Flag decided that I should appoint the next one, and I'm having trouble finding.
Take her name off of that, so we're not holding her accountable.
But I'm, I only have two more meetings, so it's gonna be passed on, but just keep that in mind, whoever's gonna get it next.
You got it. Okay, county administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've, as a result of the storm, we put a couple of practices in place Monday morning that the board may wish to affirm. One of those was that we administratively put the practice in place of waiving county permit fees in planning and development for building permits related to storm-related repairs. So, the board may wish to act to affirm that administrative action that we took, and leave that waiver in place for a period of time, 'cause it will take some time, as you heard Mr. Rumei say, there's a number of structures that are, that have damages, so if you would like to leave that practice in place for.
Do, I was gonna say, do you need a motion?
Well, should we say six months, or put something in there?
I mean, I think you ought to leave it open-ended at this point, we can bring it back to you for you to terminate, because, you know, it, it just, some people, depending on their situation and how long it takes them to, some of them have insurance, and they go, they're gonna get their claims filed, and at some point, they're gonna move forward to pull the appropriate permits. Some people probably don't have insurance, and they're gonna have to go through the disaster recovery center, and it may take some time to get their claims processed, so we don't know how long all that's take, gonna take, but we'll be sure to, you know, vet their permitting when they come in to ensure that it is storm-related, and there'll be some people who'll try to take advantage of that situation, but we'll try to ensure that the permits that they do apply for are storm-related.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Leary, does that reply, I mean, today we heard six hundred and fourteen were impacted and three hundred and thirteen destroyed. That's for new building permits too, if they wanted to rebuild, not just for repairs, like you said, right?
Yeah, I, I did say repairs, but I, I think it's anything that's storm-related, I think.
Okay, good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think we need, as an action item, I'll entertain.
Second.
Oh, we did? Yeah, second, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Okay, and the second item that we put into practice effective yesterday morning was at the landfill to waive fees for the disposal of storm-related yard debris and C and D material. And as you heard Mr. Gass say this morning, our, our debris removal contractor is coming in and starting that work on Wednesday morning, so what I'd like to suggest there is a, a waiver of those fees for a thirty-day period, and then we can ask you to renew those, if that, if that is appropriate at the end of that period of time.
Motion on the floor by Carl Flag? Second, I'm getting tired, yes.
Do we have enough time for our, our people that are up north to come back? Is thirty days enough time for them to come back and clean up their property? Just a question.
Well, I, you know, I, I don't know, there may be some people who won't get back to do that, but, you know, after a period of time, we're not gonna be able to just determine whether or not it's storm-related.
I hear you, I hear you.
Yeah, but that's a good idea, the snowbirds do typically come at the end of the month.
They're coming in October, and they come after Thanksgiving, a lot of them.
Right. But I, I think the importance of getting the FEMA assistance in a hundred percent capacity is, is very important here.
If, if we don't do the thirty days, we take away the incentive for them to get it done.
Right, that's right. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second, I think, you seconded it. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, Mr. Leary, that is.
Thank you, I, I don't have anything else.
Mr. Stacy Manning, county attorney.
I just wanted to apologize for being late after a break.
That's okay, all worked out. It was all right, I was late early this morning.
If you'll forgive us for being late this morning, Walden and I.
Our clerk of court, Tim Smith, has nothing to contribute? I'm pretty sure he's quiet. And we'll go to commissioner comments.
Just, I think we said most of it this morning. What a wonderful staff.
It was an eye-opening weekend, and this was a very vigorous meeting, this hearing this afternoon, I appreciate all of you and your contributions to it. I think that we, there was not a parameter left empty. We went there. We really did.
I agree.
I apologize for not being there, I was trying to do acrobatics off of the recliner, adjusting the TV, and fell, and I was just limping around and no good to anybody, and feeling guilty about it.
That's right.
Sorry.
Okay, folks, I'll call for an adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, just before you adjourn, very quickly, again, I want to echo what was said about our phenomenal professionals. I mean, it is, you know, and once we really get through this, just as was requested this morning, not only county individuals, but all of those support services, first responders, et cetera, we wanna really make sure that we have a day of recognition, you know, for, for all that they've done, including the utility professionals, et cetera. Also, I wanted to, I, I know that the fairgrounds was used as a major staging area there, and I wanted to make sure that if there's a way to capitalize on any FEMA or state EOC enhancements as a result of what we need to make that, what it needs to be for not only these kind of events, but, but other issues that we need the stage in effect. I wanted, you know, when we start doing the troubleshooting, filing out what worked, what didn't work, and how that operation worked, how high was the ground, 'cause I know it's usually not too high during, during rain.
That's right.
So I think if there's a way for us to enhance that, and Mr. Leary, again, who takes a lot of heat from a lot of different people there, he was on his same speed, making sure that things were, were covered there, and we don't say enough about him. Many individuals don't get it when you have an administrator with the competency and the institutional knowledge and leadership that he has, and I want us to publicly recognize our administrator for the great job he does, and it reflects upon, you and his wife, right there, but it reflects upon all of our department heads and their staffing, how the morale is what it is, and how everybody stepped up to the plate, and, and instead of reacting, responded to this crisis.
Flip side of, of the situation we just went through is the morale. It does build it up, and, and it comes from the top, Mr. Leary, I thank you, and.
Thank you very much.
This whole commission. And tell Cynthia at the same time. It was a pleasure working in kitchen with her. We had a good time with it.
She appreciated the help, too.
Well, I did like.
Can I add something?
Yes.
I thought that, I was looking for her name, but the lady from Federal Point that came in.
Mrs. Masters?
Yeah. She wanted to have, she really gave us a talk from the heart, and I think that her suggestion of having meetings of people in those general areas would probably be a good thing to do. It gives them a chance to, well, not necessarily vent, but thank their neighbors and say what a great place we have, and is there anything we can do? And the one thing that she said that rang true is, why is it, when there's an emergency, that we can't go across one person's yard to go get a tree off the house of another? Maybe that's something that we could change our rules about, you know, is there anything the commission can do in a state of emergency? I mean, it seems.
You're talking about private property rights, I mean, you can't.
The liability that goes with it, I think, just as, as a residual catch-all, you have disaster relief teams that are not government disaster relief teams, and I know for sure that the Baptist Association, the State Convention, and all of those have empowered people that are able to do that. And I think that as long as they know what they're doing, and they can be coordinated through EOC, then that'll be the marriage that's needed to accomplish the things that they're talking about.
Were they here and doing anything? They were. Good, so they should be part of EOC and be sitting at that table, so that we know, huh? Were they?
Many of them, many of them were, because the individuals that were at EOC, through their church connections, they made contact, and so a lot of what you're suggesting is happening, but it just can't be led by us from the government perspective.
But those kind of things could come out at the meeting, and we could help finagle some of it. We may not be able to change a rule, but just having volunteers, a head volunteer person at the table at EOC that could reach fingers out to help us.
Yeah, we had, we had detectives with chainsaws, so I mean, it was every scenario that you can imagine that was, that was happening here with the.
That's great. Commissioner Palacere also is wearing a chainsaw on his side.
Yes, I donned one down in the south end, opening up Georgetown Denver Road. I'd like to, if any of you didn't get by there and see the fairgrounds and how it was used as a staging area, and it was like a little city, if you will, the way they had it, they had a tent over there with portable air conditioners in it, where they were keeping those guys, and a place to sit down and cool off, or, you know, when they ate their meal in the evenings. I think this is a golden opportunity to ramp up our ability to, to hit our lobbyist, that if we had that facility over there, that canopied arena, if you will, in all situations, if this thing had have been a direct blow to St. John's County or Flagler, granted, it was, it was a bad, bad blow, but if it had been a direct blow, it would have been, you know, bad on us, but not as bad as on them. It's still a great place that they would prob, because there's so much acreage there for those big trucks and all that equipment, that it, it's just a golden opportunity for us to make something happen there and show them some pictures of, of a tent city, if you will, of how they were operating out there and working out there, and what a valuable asset that would be if we were able to get the funding and get that.
Do we have any pictures?
Ma'am?
Do we have any pictures?
I'm sure we can get some, I'm sure that somebody was snapping them over there, some of those Florida parent light people, they do that for, for their media blitz, but it's just a golden opportunity to show that to Southern Strategies, and let them, they, they always say they need tools in their toolbox, and that would be a big tool in their toolbox, I would think, to show how that's used. And like I said, a place with all that acreage that's pretty centrally located in the county, it, it's, it's pivotal that, that something like that is, is utilized to its most. Certainly us with the, I don't know, have we named that building over there that's got the AC in it, the, the nice building, the facility? I'm sure that was a big asset to them over.